Recording in progress.
Quick overview of Tifa was established in Dearborn Heights in nineteen eighty six under state act, which allowed cities to establish a tax increment finance authority district, which in essence is allowed to capture a portion of the property taxes that would otherwise be sent elsewhere. We capture it with the focus on reinvesting that money back into our local community. It's been very helpful over the years, tens of millions of dollars we've been able to reinvest back in the Dearborn Heights. You know, one year at a time and the it's been something that over the years, you know, that's gone up and down. You know, the amounts because it's based on the property values. So when the property values are better, obviously our capture goes up. When the property values go down, it goes down. So we do what we can each year. Thankfully, you know, we have a great board of dedicated people who are board members that help to oversee Tifa. And it's been, you know, so many years now and we keep going. So of course, the main project that Tifa does is we pay the bonds on the Justice Center each year and also forty two point four percent of the JFK library bond each year. So those are our two main expenses off the top of our budget every year, as you see here in the budget in front of you. So with that being said, each year I always like to do just a quick run through, at least at a study session to go through the budget. So that way, when it comes time for the meeting, you have, you know, beforehand, we have time to, you know, if you have any questions or comments, you know, we can go through that. As you know, Tifa is actually, it's not under the city. It's set up under state act to work with the city. So we have a unique relationship. It's always been a great relationship with the city. So.
Supplement check to add to the budget.
Yeah, yeah, sometimes people don't understand how it works and you but but you know, it's been a great relationship over the years. So as you see in the pack that you have here, our proposed budget, what happens is the each year the Tifa board approves a budget and then submits it to city council for their concurrence. And then only after then is it considered ratified and then was put into effect. We used to do it later in the year, actually. We used to do it like in like June or so. But the administration had asked a couple of years ago, we tried to do it earlier so that way they know what money to expect from Tifa. So they can determine, you know, the city budget then. So so the past few years, we've been doing it early now. The Tifa board approves it in March. So that way we have it now ready to go. So as you seen your packet there, my cover letter kind of ran through some of the the highlights of it. But I can run through the budget if you want really quickly.
Quickly, please.
Sure. Okay. So if you look at the top under the revenues, this year's proposed revenue is three point four million under the the capture amount. That is a significant increase. What we found was last year, the utilities did a significant upgrade of all their lines and poles. And remarkably brought in almost a million dollars more a year into the Tifa income. So.
The utilities?
Yeah.
They're not gonna expect something like this next year then, right?
Well, no, it's on the books now with that high rate. So it'll depreciate slowly over time, but they hadn't they hadn't upgraded their 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 infrastructure in the Tifa district since before Tifa was established, from what I'm told. So now it all goes on the books at full, full rate for them. So.
You expect something like three point four million, forty six, forty seven?
That's what we're that's what we're expecting. Yeah. Yeah, it was kind of a surprise. I didn't quite believe it at first. I kept double checking with the assessor to make, are you sure this is the right number? But yeah, yeah. So so anyway, so that's our anticipated capture. And then for towards the Justice Center bond, there is a cost on each ticket that's issued by the court. There's, I believe it's like ten dollars or something, some small amount that goes towards paying the Justice Center bond, which they reimburse to us as we pay the whole bond. So it's not much anymore. It used to be a lot more. It used to be quarter million dollars a year, but now it's down to like less than a hundred thousand.
Twenty thousand?
Yeah. So this year, we're anticipating maybe even just seventy five. It's kind of hard to determine court revenue.
What's the cause of that?
We don't know. They just they're just not issuing the tickets or they're getting dismissed or something, you know, I don't know how.
Yeah, less crimes? That's not the case.
Yeah, it's just, you know, whenever they issue those tickets, they get paid, they put into account and then it gets transferred to us at the end of the year.
But not writing tickets, then you're not getting that money.
Yeah.
People are driving less.
Yeah, I don't know the.
I know COVID, the numbers were low.
Mm hmm.
But I mean, from what I was told, I thought the numbers were up. The revenue was up this year. This year, revenue, I mean, it was always low revenue. They said it'd be projected two point two. I think we're projected, I'm reading back at like one, one point seven, one point eight, which is double the last year.
Yeah, yeah. And it could be the types of tickets because, you know, different types of tickets, different places get different cuts. So I don't know if this is maybe just.
Maybe that number is directed at seventy five thousand.
I've just been kind of following the trends. So just watching the numbers where they've been going and every year over the past, say, ten years, they've just been going down, down, down. So but it's just, it's kind of.
Isn't just an estimate, you mean?
Yeah, yeah, it's just.
Because the constable chair had mentioned, I think they're. Yeah, I talked to Michelle and Brian this week, yesterday, in one of the conversation was about that. And so she said it's good she can come in.
A little more.
It'll be good for the good revenue.
Oh, great.
Because not because we want to make revenue, that's all it is, tickets.
Yeah.
But it's because people aren't doing what they're supposed to be.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, yeah. So yeah, like anything extra is always great. So.
Yeah, for sure.
Yeah. So and then we have a fund balance appropriation, which is taking money from our savings. We have sizable savings that we want to start to use up. So so I have just under eight hundred thousand in there for a fund balance appropriation towards our our revenue for this year. And then when you move down to the expenses, obviously, those are the the bonds right there off the top. Those are fixed numbers that, you know, we establish. The administration went up slightly only because of the increase in the TIF revenue. When we capture the money, the agreement we had, they had with the city for years is six percent of the capture money we give to the city as a, I probably refer administrative assistance. So because that went up to three point four million, we budgeted the six percent. So that increased the city contribution. So that's where the administration, everything else is staying the same under administration. Then under the projects that we do, Westwood Schools, as you may be aware, we do contribute to Westwood Schools because that's where the Tifa district is located. At the time Tifa was set up in eighty six, they they it was controversial time because they were collecting funds from the schools too, the school millages. So what the city did was they went to each school district and asked them if they would give their blessing for the city to establish Tifa in that area. And Westwood was the only school district that agreed to it. So that's why Tifa is where it's at. So it could have been in the citywide, but Crestwood turned it down and District Seven never replied. So.
Can we?
No, no. In the nineteen nineties, they did away with the school capture, but they also said that no new Tifas could be established and Tifas could not be expanded. They can only either be shrunk or done away with completely. So the counties don't like the fact that we capture their money. So so that's the big resistance in Lansing.
What's the reason that's going down from two hundred to fifty thousand?
Just each year, we kind of try to move the money around as to who, where we kind of put money. There was so with the schools, every so many years, like they have a big project to help with, well, the Tifa board will consider it. Last year, the two hundred thousand was because the Robishaw Gym, they were looking to replace the floor, which had all kind of problems in the floor. And it was about a two hundred thousand dollar job. So so we do that and tell them, you know, we.
I wish we could use the money for like gymnasium right now at D seven.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Because high school, I, you know, I would, I wish.
And the thing is, you know, if we had been in Crestwood, that that would have been just before they built the height shopping center. So most of that money from the height shopping center would have been kept in the city and not gone elsewhere because would have been captured by Tifa. But.
So they built the height shopping center in nineteen eighty six, huh?
Yeah, just after the the Tifa was established. Yeah. So so, yeah, so anyway, so but we're back down to fifty thousand for this year. Because we told them, we said we could do a big project once in a while, but not every year. Industrial park improvements, down at the extreme southwest corner of Dearborn Heights, that's what is actually an industrial area, industrial park. We have some money set aside for there just in case anything comes up. We haven't had anything expected, so we just keep that kind of minimal. Commercial rehab program, that's our grant program for businesses in the Tifa district if anybody comes and applies for it. We like to have money available there. The fire station improvements, that's a.
Can we stop on that for one second? That's a grant, you said?
Mm hmm. A matching grant.
Matching grant. They're opening, what, like a business or?
Yeah, for like facade improvements, things like that.
Can you tell the residents how they can apply for something like that?
Sure. It's a it's a business grant. They can go on our website, tifadh dot com. There's an application packet there. It has all the information and the requirements. It's not a long list of requirements, but basically for like kind of to beautify the city, you know, exterior improvements, things like that. We've had a number of businesses over the years apply and get the help and it's reviewed by the by the Tifa board. And we do have a standard matching grant up to five thousand dollars. And if it's a much larger project, like some of them vested forty, fifty thousand, they can apply to the Tifa board for, they've given it ten thousand dollars on some occasions to help. It's, you know, helps, you know, a little bit helps. So and the the building department's been great about letting people know about that, too. If they come in and say they're doing a project in the Tifa district, they'll usually let them know and sometimes they'll call us. And and sometimes the people decide, well, sometimes they'll say, well, that's only five thousand. I don't want to do the paperwork, but it's, you know, it's free money. So.
Five thousand?
Yeah, yeah. So.
Delicious.
Yeah, fire station, that's a big one for this year. As I mentioned in my cover letter, you know, past few years, we've been working with the administration, the engineer specifically on the capital improvements projects that they have going on. And there's been, it was brought to my attention, there's an issue at the south end fire station, two issues. One is space. They're running out of space. They, the chief said they just had to put a workout room in a file room because they have nowhere else to put it. And then also the other issues, the roof is needing to be replaced. So now seemed like a good time. If you're gonna expand, you can't really go out. The only way to go is up. So I proposed, I said, well, if I can put aside eight hundred thousand towards a second floor, would that work? And engineer said, that would be great. He says they can seek grants for the remainder because there shouldn't be much more than that. And so that should be easy to to accomplish. So so I already talked to him. He says, once they get some direction on the north end station, they have an engineering firm already lined up, I guess, to to work on that. He said they can have them start to draw up the designs for the south end too. So.
So what happened if we don't use this money on time? I know it's for this fiscal year, so whatever. You know, we don't have the plans and all that stuff. Does it go back in the budget and you have to assign it again?
Yeah, yeah. But it's kind of something I really want to see him do, so I'm gonna.
Not to see, definitely.
Push them to get it done because it shouldn't be that too big a project or the second floor, you know, the, you know, you have all the utilities there and everything. Just a matter of, you know, making sure the structure is supportive.
You can't do more than eight hundred thousand, huh?
Well, if at the time it is, if there's a need, we can, we can revisit it. It's just, you know, there's kind of a starting number, you know, and you know, see what the grants can come up with, the state grants. He seemed pretty confident because it would be a, we would be putting in so much of a large part of the share. If it's, say, they need another hundred thousand or something, he said, that seems like something that would be.
That's I'm saying, if we're gonna get a grant, that's gonna take time. That's why I said, what would happen?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, yeah, that's great. Thank you very much.
Yes.
Well, we're talking fire departments. Why are we putting into the Crestwood School District from the Tifa District Eight?
No, no, this is the number one on Telegraph.
The roof. Okay. Well, I thought you were doing something a little more than.
Oh, no, no, nope. No.
Oh, I know that.
Yeah, yeah, this is the south end station.
Okay, I want to mention, okay.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, so the, yeah, south end station number one.
I think what Mr. Roscoe, Councilman, and I think what I was trying to say is, I made is that instead of us just fixing the roof, before we put the money in the new roof, let's build up.
Oh, yeah.
And then fix the.
That makes more sense.
It means it's affordable and we're using that some money and hopefully grant money since you're losing so much space.
We've had sidewalks, we've had lights on Beach Daily, we've had stuff in Daly Park. It's been a great thing. I don't know why the other schools didn't join in.
Okay, so then, let's see, after that, Justice Center improvements, we have fifty thousand set aside for any improvements that may be needed there.
About, how about, I know, I'm sorry to cut you off again. I was looking at the improvements for the Justice Center. I know they needed a boiler, we tried to put it in our budget and we really couldn't afford it.
Yeah.
Is there anything that we can use from the law?
Well, the issue there is it needs to be like an improvement because in the lease agreement we have with the Justice Center is that the city is responsible for maintenance and.
This is an improvement. We need to have a better.
Yeah, we'd have to really look into that.
Better new, better boiler. It's not working. This boiler is not, this boiler is not.
It's not warming enough.
Not warming enough. We want to make some improvements. I think we can find the right, right?
Yeah, like, well, like we upgrade to say, you know, like I I mentioned to the engineer, he says, you know, if we upgrade to some kind of system, it's like a, you know, like a super energy saver kind of thing. It's, you know, it could consider maybe an improvement. So that's something we could, we could look at.
Okay.
And then, let's see, tree trimming.
You mentioned before today, need carpet, didn't they?
Yeah, there's a whole story about the carpet of some type. Half the building is great on carpet. The other half has a problem. There's some reasons there, I think. So. But, yeah, so the, let's see, next item, tree trimming. We put aside money each year for tree trimming, you know, the between the sidewalk and the curb, the city streets. I'm looking into now, we passed year two, we, there's been a slowdown because of the changeover in contractors and then there's some, we have to figure some stuff out there, but we still could put the money aside so that way if we can figure out, you know, how to get it done, we'll be getting it done. Because we tried to be on a five year cycle to get through the Tifa district every each, every five years. So so just, you know, trim up the the bad limbs and stuff on the trees between the sidewalk and curb. Tifa ordinance officer, we were able to pay for the salary for a full time officer in the Tifa district. They're dedicated specifically to the Tifa district. So we have that in there right away in maintenance and repair.
So that that works in audit to problem, but it's getting paid by you guys?
Yep.
We know which employer that is?
Elizabeth Bunker. Mm hmm. Bunker, yeah. Yeah, she specifically only works in the Tifa district. So.
Is that part time or this is part?
He's full time.
Full time?
Full time, yeah.
Does this cover everything?
You know, we, the arrangement we had, it used to be a part timer only. And the administration asked us, they said, if if we would pay for the salary for a full timer, they would cover the benefits. So so that's why we, you know, we're covering the the salary there. And then right away, maintenance and repairs, the next item that has to do with roads and properties that we own. We own some vacant lots, things like that, so maintaining those. We also added money in there to have, I put an extra to have at least fifty thousand dollars for some road repairs. For some like major stuff like in the commercial areas, we're able to cover that according to our plans. So we had some money available there. Daly Park improvements, as you saw this year, we, Tifa paid for the the concrete slab for the the workout equipment. This coming year, we were talking and they said the the courts are in bad shape, the tennis courts. So apparently tennis courts are very expensive to repair. So so we're looking at having money available for that. And also, they're considering maybe converting maybe half of them into pickleball courts. So while we're doing the, you know, replacing them, now would be the time to to do the upgrades. So we have some money set aside for that. Van Born commercial improvements, you know, there's the the Van Born project along Van Born, but together with the city of Taylor. The first phase has been implemented, the overlay district. But we've been planning money, we've been putting money aside in case there's any actual physical work that's going to be done. So Tifa would be ready with some funds to start things like that if if they start moving in that direction. DPW improvements, this year it looks like we'll be getting that break room built. I had a meeting down there with the director and some representatives of the leadership down there and the top councilman Wenzel was there and the engineer, and they discussed putting in, you know, kind of a reasonable area for a break room. So hopefully that will get done this year. So but there's also some big issues over there. There's a sinkhole forming underneath the the facility, we're along some pipes, it's washing away the the ground. Also, the drainage grates like through the building itself where the, you know, like in the, again, in the like the garage area, the drain, they're in, looks like they went through a war. They're they're in very bad shape. So we put aside some extra money to be able to attack those those issues hopefully in the coming year. Beach Daily improvements, we always put aside some money for any kind of upgrades along Beach Daily. Crime prevention, Tifa's always had money set aside for, the police used to have a crime prevention officer. You know, I always want to leave it in there just in case something does get resurrected with that. Library improvements, we have five thousand dollars set aside for some, you know, if they have any kind of small improvements they need there. Sewers, looking to continue our support of that project, the sewer project this year is supposed to be starting. And then putting aside another nine hundred thousand dollars for next year, that combined sewer project. And then contingency, we always have a hundred thousand in there for contingency. So that's, that brings us to the four point two seventy two, three hundred.
You do a very good job at stretching it.
Well, thanks. Well, you know, we want to do everything we can for everybody, but you gotta kind of stretch it out.
Appreciate you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Sorry, the council chair, before you leave director, so it's already all been used, is not, you said you're gonna look into the boiler stuff? Now justice, is there, is there a possibility, like, we can find more money or?
Well, we can, yeah, we have, we have some savings still that we can talk, you know, guys do like a budget amendment or it depends what the cost is. Maybe you could follow into contingency or.
Oh, the one point four?
Yeah.
So the one point four, you took seven ninety seven, so that leaves you with like almost another six hundred? That's why you have been saving?
Oh, no, no, we have more than that. Yeah, yeah.
Hopefully, what do you think is in that?
Five, six million maybe. Yeah, we had it in a situation, it came up under your, when the auditor was here. Apparently, the the city didn't transfer an entire year's worth of capture to us from two years ago. So we just discovered we have another two point four million than we thought we had.
The city owes you?
Well, it's, from my understanding, it's been transferred now. Because that was in October, they discovered it.
That's when did?
Yeah, so.
That was an oversight of the treasurer's office?
I could have been, yeah. From what I understand, it was in the tax account. It was, it was in the tax account and never transferred out of the tax account. So. But, yeah, so anyway, so yeah, moving forward, trying to get some, you know, it just kind of, it just came to our attention this reason because we only just got our, our, the draft of the audit a month ago.
Yeah, all of us.
So I mean, and until a few years ago, we would always get the Tifa draft the first week of November. City always got theirs in October and then, because they can't do Tifa until after the city's done. So now, past few years, it's been February when we get the information. I just today, literally today, just got the audit reports printed out. So.
Sorry about that.
Well, that's, so. So anyway, so that's, yeah, but like I said, we can revisit some things and, you know, like you said, it needs to be like an improvement. It can't just necessarily be like repaired.
No, no, we really, we need
Yeah.
the state of the art and we're gonna find the right wording, right? Whatever it takes, we're gonna find the right wording. We need the state of the art. Gastro, something that sucks and boils and properly does things for economic efficiency and for the ozone layer to be prevented and harmed. So then we can protect the skins of people's lives. Yeah, there's, there's wording there. Five million dollars. I mean, we might get three boilers. I'm not gonna lie to you.
Okay, let's build the three hall and not two.
Well, we always, part of that is, we always do keep, we try to keep at least one to two years worth of bond payments and savings just in case there's like an economic downturn because that that actually saved us back in twenty ten when when they had the economic downturn.
It looks like that could, I mean, Starbucks is down to like sixty bucks right now. Buy.
Yeah, yeah. Well, it depends on the property values. When the property values drop, all that money comes, the city doesn't lose what they're getting. It's Tifa loses what we're getting completely in the Tifa district because it comes off the top. So.
You're actually going back to the justice bond. Do you know how much you still owe on the bond? An idea?
Amount wise, off the top, actually, I can probably tell you. It's until like twenty thirty three, I think we owe.
Twenty thirty three? Wow.
Yeah.
How much was it from the start?
Let's see, outstanding balance is around eight million.
Okay.
So.
We got like about eight more years to go.
Yeah.
And the bond is on on the Tifa?
Yeah, Tifa is actually the, Tifa is actually the owner of the building and we pay the bond and we have the lease agreement with the city.
Budget.
Yep.
So do you have any land in the Tifa district that we can build the city hall on?
Not that I know of.
You're only in East Coast and Van Born.
Yeah.
I mean, who knows? Maybe we can build in addition onto the Justice Center.
The problem there is you're landlocked. You're at your parking maximum right now.
What? Would you buy, would you talk to Home Depot?
Yeah.
They should move.
There's gonna be a good negotiation.
There are, there, I mean, this kind of is an aside, I won't say where there are, there is some, there are some large properties, but there's environmental issues. So I wouldn't even recommend putting a, a city hall with workers and stuff in there. But, yeah.
Probably one of those buildings behind the Justice Center, like the one right on Valley. You can buy one of those. Only we got any money to buy anything. We don't have two corners around.
The Tifa.
Yep.
Um, do you know who owns that property on Beach Daily near Amherst, Hanover and Career? On the west side of Beach Daily?
Oh.
We've got vacancy there, two streets or more.
Oh, well, you know, just south of the old Daleys?
Yes.
Is that where you're talking? Oh, yeah, it's, it's just, yeah, it's one block, but that's not large.
Yeah.
You know, maybe you could fit like a business there or something, but not. Yeah.
All right. Okay, I'm Roscoe. Thank you very much. If you want to have any other questions before I end the study session. We're gonna open it up to public comments now.
My favorite budget is the Tifa budget.
Me too. It's efficient.
It is.
And it's almost positive.
Yeah.
I have to put your number down. I do, ma'am. Please state your name, the city you reside in, the street that you live on. You have three minutes.
Rachel LePointe, Merrick Street, Dearborn Heights. Thank you so much, Mr. Roscoe. I just wanted to say, my family and I went over to Daly Park the other week when it was cooling off again, when it was like warm and then it started getting cool in the evening. That park is amazing. My kids had such a good time, like they enjoyed even the new like workout equipment. They thought it was amazing. We did notice we had brought our tennis rackets with us and we noticed that the, you know, it was in need of repair. I will say my only comment would be to double check before putting in pickleball. I will say, my only comment would be to double check before putting in pickleball. I've heard it can be very noisy to neighbors, so we might want to do like a, um, sound barrier or something, because it is very close to homes right there. And I wouldn't want anybody to, you know, now have pickleball and loud noises and.
You have to pick noise between basketball and pickleball? I think we're taking pickleball.
I would absolutely do it because my kids have learned it at school at O W Best and think it's amazing. So, all in favor of pickleball, just making sure that if we need to put up a noise barrier, that maybe we can fit that in with a little bit of that extra money we've got on hand. And then I would say, uh, when you said the thing about the funds not getting transferred over, um, Mr. Coniston, uh, Councilman Coniston mentioned, would that be on the treasurer's office? I believe that would be the comptroller's office that's in charge of initiating those fund transfers. So, um, that's just something I've learned recently. So, that's all, thank you.
I, I will say, thank you, Rachel. I will, I'd like to just add that pickleball has become the new aura of the world. And so I, you know, when I go to the gym, uh, there's always basketball courts. Shut, they closed on an entire basketball court to create a whole roll of pickleballs and it's like, even LeBron James added a pickleball court in his backyard, like a new thing. And it's like, you know.
Nice car, by the way.
I mean, same, same thing, upper scarce.
Okay, any other questions? Anyone on Zoom? Seeing none, the study session is over. Thank you, uh, uh, Tom Roscoe for all that you do. Next up, we have a special meeting, uh, of the Dearborn Heights City, ma'am clerk, are you ready? Okay, uh, the special meeting of the Dearborn Heights City Council is called to order today at five thirty-two P M. Ma'am clerk, may you please take rope?
Hassan Ahmad.
Present.
Moby Dune.
Here.
Nancy Brier.
Here.
Robert Coniston.
Here.
Denise Malinowski Maxwell.
Here.
Hassan Saab.
Present.
And Tom Wenzel is absent. Mr. Chair, you have a call.
Thank you very much, ma'am clerk, and thank you for all that you do. Uh, next up, we have the pledge of allegiance. We're gonna have our finest police officer from the Dearborn Heights, Mr. Tsar. Lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I would be willing to testify of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Much.
Well.
All right, next up, we have the agenda approval.
Chair.
Councilman Saab.
Look at the Dearborn Heights City Council approved the agenda for the special meeting of April eighth, two thousand five, yes.
Second. Motion made by Councilman Saab, seconded by Councilman Coniston. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please stay at eye.
Eye.
All opposed? The eyes have it, motion carries. Next up is public hearings and public comment. Anyone on Zoom? Anyone on the audience? Seeing none, move on. Next up, we have comments from council members.
Okay, I had a lady last, uh, Thursday, I believe, complain about the upcoming noise and problems with fireworks. Some of her property was destroyed, like fourth of July, drove by her house. And, uh, I told her I would mention it. Her name is Barb Belopowski. She has issues with both fireworks and flooding. She's on Gertrude Street. So, uh, I don't know what rules we're gonna have on fireworks this year, but, uh, she had, like, forty-five people in her yard setting off very large fireworks that ended up two other neighbors' yards and were touching their houses and everything.
I can tell you, I mean.
Yeah.
Uh, it's a state law, state law, so you can do fireworks on July third, July fourth, July fifth, the day before the day, or the day after.
Right.
And not to exceed past midnight is the state law.
Right.
Um, and so that's gonna trump any, anything we put in there.
About the size of the fireworks in neighborhoods.
Well, you need to pick up the phone and call our state legislators, our state.
I've already called one.
Yeah. Aaron Burns?
Yes.
You found limits what we can do, limits what the cities can do. And I agree, my dog hates it, but.
Oh, yeah, I know.
My, my, my cat's crazy.
Any other discussion? Any other councilman? Are you also here, councilman?
Yes, thank you.
Anyone else? We're gonna move it over to announcement.
Okay, uh, just for the audience that's here, our, uh, Recreation Parks and Rec Guy is doing a fantastic job. And we do have, coming up very shortly, the, um, great egg hunt on the twelfth between eleven A M. and three P M. At Canfield Center. And let's see, what else do we have that's close by? Um, Berwin's will be ha- Berwin's having an open house on April seventeenth between ten and two. So if anybody wants to know what's happening at the senior centers, we have bulletins here, we have them in the libraries. And you can come to any senior citizen library and check out all the envelope. Very good deal.
Also, there, councilwoman?
Yes, ma'am.
The other announcements from administration, the city, the none, public comments. Anybody in the audience? Anyone on Zoom? Seeing none, Mohammed Bezi versus the city of Dearborn Heights in the motion.
Councilor.
Councilman.
I moved that the Dearborn Heights City Council moved to a closed session at five thirty-six P M. And as authorized under section eight E. of the O M A, M C L fifteen point two six eight one E. So that the city council may discuss Wayne County Circuit Court Case Number two four zero one six five five three C D. Mohammed Bezi versus the city of Dearborn Heights. Those in attendance should include city council, Mayor Bezi, Chief of Staff Hernandez, Corporation Council, and Andrea Pike from Rosari. Charles Jopich, Jo- Joe Pick.
Jopich.
Jopich. And, um, that's a big one.
Go ahead, Councilman Coniston, hit him with it. The last name, on the bottom.
It's beautiful.
Yeah.
Do we cheat him and how? Okay, whatever he said. Guy of a second.
Motion made by Councilman Ahmad. Seconded by Councilwoman Malinowski Maxwell. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please stay at a. I'm sorry, we're gonna do a roll call.
Hassan Ahmad.
Yes.
Moby Dune.
Yes.
Nancy Brier.
Yes.
Robert Coniston.
Yes.
Denise Malinowski Maxwell.
Yes.
Hassan Saab.
Yes.
Councilman is absent, motion carries.
All right, thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. Now we will step into it, probably, and Saab will be our note taker for the day.
Oh, yeah.
Recording stopped.
Ladies and gentlemen, um, we are now moving out of a closed session. Can I get a motion that the Duba Heights City Council return to open session at six oh six P M?
Council Chair.
Motion made by C- Councilman Ahmad.
I moved that the Duba Heights City Council return to open session at six oh six P M. Support.
Motion made by Councilman Ahmad, seconded by Councilman Constant. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next up, uh, it's a placeholder for any action that may be taken based on the closed session. I believe Councilman, uh, Constant is going to lead us in that recommendation.
Yes.
An amendment will be added by Councilman Saab. So he does want to amend to the, the verbiage that is being stated today for us.
I move that we, uh, concur with the recommendation of, uh, the attorneys, uh, from the Michigan Municipal, uh, Risk League. Uh, Rosati, uh, Schultz Johnson and.
Jopich.
Jopich and Amis and Abe.
Is your microphone on? It is. Amphiller. Okay. Motion made by Councilman Ahmad. I mean, uh, Councilman Constant, seconded by Councilman, uh, Saab.
I'd like to amend that motion.
You second it though?
I do second it and I amend it.
Okay. What do you like to amend?
I'd like to also make a recommendation.
Is your microphone on?
I'd, uh, I'd like to run this motion, make a recommendation to ask that we remove this law firm and, uh, seek another law.
Why is that?
Because walking in the hallway, we were told not to discuss the case, talk to the case or anybody because certain people were supposed to be deposed. The young lady that was here inside the closed session with us was talking to one of the people that is supposed to get deposed. I believe there's a conflict and I believe we should look for another law firm.
Well, that, yeah, I mean, uh, see the other half.
Council Chair, I, I agree. I've seen that half myself.
I saw it too.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, well then, Councilman Ahmad, I mean, Councilman Constant, can you amend your motion to moving forward, use a different, um.
Well, it, that, that.
Well, again, Council Chair.
One second. We, we can, uh, you know, let's, let's concur in the recommendation and we can, that may be a separate matter that we can look into. The MMRMA is going to have something say about that.
Well, that's.
I don't disagree. I just, uh.
So it's, it's just added in the, in the, in the recommendation, recommended motion that we're just, we're going to use a different firm. If some of the council members saying that they seen, uh, the, the young attorney that was, uh, walking alongside, uh, somebody that could potentially be deposed and having those meetings outside of the closed session that wasn't in the closed session, and that, that is alarming.
A highly, uh, confidential matter. I agree.
Council Chair, if I may, it doesn't say exactly what was discussed. And if they have to have contact because that individual is with the law enforcement police department and has to be called and contacted as a witness. That in and of itself is not proof of any, um, uh, uh, pro se determination that there was anything discussed about any closed session or anything that's prejudicial to the city council or the city. So therefore you need to have a hearing and contact MMRMA before you jump to that conclusion.
Well, we stand on our motion. We can contact MMRMA. I believe the city has the duty to choose a law firm that MMRMA, uh, gives you options to pick from.
Yes, but you have not articulated clearly just that you said you saw somebody with somebody does not mean in and of itself that it's pro se or it's, uh, it's, it's, uh, quid pro quo that it's a definite violation of any ethical standards. And that's what you're saying. So I'm saying that how it's, it, it merits determination and an inquiry by MMRMA before you come to that conclusion, bring it up to the next meeting.
Roger, thank you for your opinion.
I'm just, I'm just letting you know, she's not to listen to me, that's fine.
If a council member who was elected by the people wants to make a decision, you don't know, you have to oppose it. Thank you for your opinion, we're moving forward.
Opposing Counselor Chair, I am explaining.
Please, thank you so much for your opinion.
Thank you, Counselor Chair.
Counselor Chair, I just want to put one more thing on the record, when you have, uh, when you have two parties that are suing the city, a party suing the city and the main, main subject of the case, the opposite main subject of the case is here, talking to the attorney that's representing the city, it is a conflict, whether we heard or not. This was a study session, she was supposed to walk out, there's a conversation, I believe there's a conflict, so was the rest of his body, and I'm putting on here, take a vote on it. Thank you.
Councilman, once you are next.
Yeah, thank you, um, we're not making any allegations or accusations, it's just that we're not, we don't feel comfortable, I think we have the right, if we don't feel comfortable with something.
Hundred percent, we're not doing anything wrong. All right, uh, Councilman, or Councilman, are you okay to amend your motion?
Yes.
Okay, and we're going to amend the motion to say, Councilman Sob, what would you like it to say?
I, uh, uh, recommend that the city and M, M, M R M A, um, remove the current law firm we have and seek another law firm for this case.
Okay. But yeah, still follow their recommendation for this current?
Uh, I'm, I'm R M A.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, any other discussion?
Counselor Chair. We might say is that, that look into the issue of, uh, you know, the. Communications over it because if, if we, to get another law firm may, in correction purposes in it, it may make things worse.
I know, but if there's, if there's, if, if the council members feel uncomfortable with a insurance company that's funding this law firm and they feel that this law firm is now, for whatever reason, having conversations with the opposed, you know, person in this, it's uncomfortable. Councilman, and I think that's ultimately what it comes back to. When I'm hearing from the discussion, and we're going to take it to a vote, end of the day.
Let's take it to a vote, I agree, okay?
Motion made by Councilman Constant, seconded by Councilman Sob, with an amendment to also, uh, removing the current law firm that we're using on this case and asking the administration to seek other attorneys, um, moving forward. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, motion carries. Thank you so much. Um, next up is a motion to adjourn the Dearborn Heights City Council's special meeting.
Counselor Chair.
Uh, Councilman Ahmad.
I moved that, uh, Dearborn Heights City Council, adjourn the Dearborn Heights City Council's special meeting at six twelve.
Motion made by Councilman Ahmad, seconded by Councilman Sob. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, motion carries. I usually go into a recess, but we have such a long meeting ahead, we are going to jump right into a regular, uh, a regular meeting. Next up, we have the regular meeting of the Dearborn Heights City Council called to order at six thirteen P M. Madam Clerk, may you please take roll call.
Hassan Ahmad.
Present.
Moby Dunne.
Here.
Nancy Breyer.
Here.
Robert Constant.
Present.
Denise Malanowski Maxwell.
Here.
Hassan Sob.
Excuse me.
Present.
Thank you.
I'm Winslow.
Present.
Mr. Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you very much. We have Mr. Haraj, who's at his first meeting here with us, who's going to lead us in the pledge of allegiance today. If you guys all may rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. I salute the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Haraj. Next up, we have the agenda approval.
Counselor Chair.
Councilman Ahmad.
I moved that the Dearborn Heights City Council approved the agenda for the regular meeting of April eighth, twenty twenty five, as submitted.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Ahmad, seconded by Councilwoman Breyer. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, motion carries. Next up is the approval of the minutes, minutes of the regular meeting of March twenty fifth, twenty twenty five.
Counselor Chair.
Councilman Sob.
Moved that Dearborn Heights City Council approved the minutes for the regular meeting of March twenty, twenty five, twenty twenty five, as outlined in four eight.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Sob, seconded by Councilwoman Breyer. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, motion carries. Next up is public hearings and public comments. You can speak about anything, you have either two minutes, I'm sorry. You either have two minutes in the beginning, three minutes at the end, Ray, can't do that, Ray. You know, you got two minutes in the beginning and three minutes at, at, uh, in the back end. I believe you, you, you asked for an additional minute.
Yes, sir.
You have three minutes, ma'am, please state your name, the city you reside in, the street that you live on.
Uh, Angela Venegas, uh, Dwight Street, Dearborn Heights, Michigan. Uh, I got a few things I like to bring up, one of the first things I like to bring up is the flooding that happened in the south end again. Um, I, I just think that at this point in time, I think the city really needs to step up and, and maybe if, uh, we can't get Wayne County to fix the problem with the flooding, I think maybe we ought to start sending Wayne County some bills and, you know, maybe pay for the damage and reimburse the residents for their property. I don't know if that's something we can do, hire an attorney, but I mean, to spend years with this stuff. And I would like to thank all the council members who are out there helping, cleaning up and assisting and donating their time, effort, money, whatever you guys did. You guys did a phenomenal job. Thank you, guys. And my always one and only complaint, Airbnbs.
Go to rentals.
Exactly. Um, I don't know if any of yous know, but we had a, an incident on Plainfield Street on three twenty nine. Um, it involved a home that was being rented as an Airbnb. I have the, uh, case report for the Dearborn Heights Police Department, um, which a large fight in the street ensued. Um, the caller stated there was a party at her residence and someone hit a firearm in the backyard. There are now six people in the yard trying to find it. Um, Joan stated that she didn't know any of the people who arrived and did not invite them, and she immediately ended the party. And it says officers stood by while all parties left the area. As, uh, I got in hold of Councilman, um, Bedune, um, I sent him videos. The next day I went to street knocking on residents' doors, eight out of, four out of eight residents answered their door. The last resident provided me with several videos of what happened on Plainfield Street that night. Um, I don't know how many of your residents experience or live next door to an Airbnb, I do. And, um, I've had prostitutes at my, next door to me one summer for, last summer for seven days. This can't continue to go on in our city, and I, I really hope and pray that your residents will all come together. We, we can't tolerate this kind of stuff in our city. And I also was hoping that the police chief would be here because I find that this report is not detailed enough. From what I understood, the police were outnumbered and they had to bring in the K nine to disperse the crowd. And I wanted to know if that was fact or not, it was just what I was told by residents. And Council, I, I'm just urging you guys to hurry up and let's get this ordinance moving forward on these Airbnbs. Another thing I want to bring up is the accidents that are happening continuously every weekend on Ford Road. We've had residents, we have children who have died, teenage children, young, young adults who have died. This past year, we had three, this past one, we had, um, three people who were sent to the hospital. I just think there's something that we need, we need, we need to do. And then I wanted to talk on some of the ordinances that Roger is, uh, doing, like, we have, he wants to do something on bullying. We already have state laws about bullying kids and that, because my three minutes is up already.
I'm going to give you another thirty more seconds.
And, and, and we have another truancy, he has something else he has going on, we already have a truancy state law. I just feel like, as a resident, we're spending a lot of our taxpayer money on redundant stuff that's already been covered and it just needs to be enforced, and I just don't understand what's going on. The city's in dire straits right now, and I just think he's wasting our, our, our money. Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Ms. Venegas, and I just want you guys to know that Mrs. Venegas went door to door to every single resident on Plainfield Street to see what was taking place that night. Um, you know, I was, I was dealing with some things at home, but she contacted me, continued to fill me in. And, you know, she's just a regular resident, a patriot, a public servant that just really wants to see its community do better. Angela, my head to you and a round of applause to the Republican. How you doing, sir, please state your name, the city you reside in, you have two minutes.
Mohamed Gianni, nineteen twenty seven, North the Evangeline, Dearborn Heights. Um, it's kind of, for me, is a, uh, updated, uh, concern as to the crosswalk, Crestwood. Uh, it's been a while since I've asked about it, and it's been a while since I've been to these meetings. But, um, I was, I was promised probably last June by school year it would be up and going, and then we ran into a residential problem, then after that it died, it like kind of went away. So what's, is any update on this crosswalk that was supposed to happen years ago?
This year, Mr. Deefson.
This year. Any, any particular month, any particular part, what, heart of the year, you're talking December of twenty twenty five, what are you talking?
Please, let's just, let's, yep.
Counsel, um, so, it's not on.
They said, that's what the paper says.
Oh, no light?
It's not on.
Okay.
It's on now.
Okay, so, um, um, because of the delay we had, we had to redesign it and it moved to a second location. That design is now completed, we're working with the schools to do the construction during the school recess and not to inter, interrupt with the flow, so during the school recesses, when it's scheduled to take place.
This summer?
This summer.
And, and who talked to the school?
I, I was there, I was in the meeting.
You were there?
Yeah.
Okay, so, is this really going to happen?
I mean, I called the meeting together, though.
How many times I've been up here and I've been promised it's going to happen, I hope so.
I got a good feeling, this year.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Gianni, for all that you do. For full disclosure, Mr. Gianni's been fighting for this light for four and a half years. His son was struck by a car going home right on Beach Daily. And so you could see, here we are, four and, four years later, and same resident, same complaint, no change. That's right. You doing, sir, please state your name, the city you reside in, the street that you live in, you got two minutes.
Before, before I start, I just want to put, tip my cap to Angela. This is not.
Round of applause, Angela.
This is not Angela's first rodeo mauling and, and working with city council people, she's done it for years. And, uh, sometimes I, I just loo, look back and say, man, she's got a lot of energy. And, and she really tries and look out for everyone in a city to make our city a much better looking city and safer city. So, thank you, Angela, for all you've done over the past four, five years. Uh, Ray Muscat, Havelock Street, uh, Dearborn Heights. Uh, I want to discuss eight A, uh, with our, uh, assessor. I hope you guys really pass this, this is a, a, a very good assessor. Anytime I ever spoke to a, a, uh, real estate agent and the assessor's name was brought up, they just really love her to death. People who have told me in the past, many times even when I was council, how respectfully they were treated at the assessor's department where they've never been treated like that before. So, we have a good assessor, I think, let's not, uh, throw any, any curveballs i- into it and, and approve our assessor because, uh, they are truly a good company. And, uh, piggybacking on Angela's statement, I think it's time that the state police and Wayne County Sheriff patrol Ford Road. This has gotten out of hand with deaths, people driving like, I, I just can't believe it. One, I put on Facebook where one woman actually hit, almost hit me in the back, swerved to my left, uh, ran a red light at Gully just to get a cup of coffee at Tim Hortons. Uh, you know, this is like two o'clock in the afternoon, this is not, you know, when no cars are around, th- there's cars all over the place. This is utterly ridiculous, the way people are driving. And, and we need to have more patrols and maybe we can give real tickets that the magistrate does not bring down to some sort of, uh, uh, impeding traffic. These people need to be hitting a, in a pocketbook, just like those who abuse the ordinances on blight. Way too many times ordinances have been abused, uh, and nothing has been done to these people. And I'm, I've, I'm up to here with it too, like a lot of people. We need to get real, true judgments against these people and with the traffic offenses. No more fooling around where the money gets to stay just in the city. Hit them hard in the pocketbook, make their insurance rates go up, maybe they'll start thinking about driving down the left half, down the center left li, turn lane when they're not supposed to, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ray. When the dandy lines start coming out, you best believe her is going to be calling all council members.
She will.
Yeah, she will. Soon as he sees Wilson. How you doing, ma'am?
Hi there. I was here last year and I waited for a year for you to call me, but it's okay. Anyway, I was here because, uh, um, it, this was a, a partial flooding situation.
Sorry, your name. Please state your name, the city you reside in, the street that you live on.
Oh, my God, I'm in South Dearborn Heights, it always gets forgotten, and I'm on, um, I'm on Culver, Suzanne Horshusky.
Yep, Suzanne.
Yeah, so anyway, I had asked the question about, um, when I got my new water heater and furnace, the furnace was required to be six inches up. The water heater was allowed to sit on the floor. And, and I asked that question last year to whomever makes, you know, it doesn't make sense to me because now they tell me I have to spend another five hundred to get it lifted off the floor if I, you know, so it doesn't make sense.
Can you do me a favor? Can you, John, can you, she, can you get her contact information as she fill up the, is the form next to you?
The form is right there on the corner.
Fill out that form, John, I mean, if we installed it, we should.
No, I didn't say you installed it, I'm saying that I, when I got my new one after the flood, the, the, you know, they came out and they approved it, uh, inspector. But, but, you know, the furnace has to be six, six inches or whatever it is, it has to be on, I'm saying, off the floor.
Yeah.
But yet they let them put the water heater right here on the floor. So it doesn't make sense, I mean, who, who could have let this go? I mean, somebody gets paid for this job, right, for the city? I don't mean to say that, but I'm a woman, I'm not a contractor, I mean, I'm not a plumber. So I'm just saying for everybody in the future, you know, make sure that their water heaters are up just as well as the furnace requirement, the permit.
Well, I, I, and if you don't mind, Suzanne, I would think that, that is being said because, because the water heater actually flames with hot water and it, um, I would, I mean, again, I'm not a contractor or builder or anything of that.
Oh, I don't know.
Think, because it's gas or this is just water, yeah, maybe.
Sitting on the floor, okay, well, anyway.
But I could be wrong.
That's okay.
Maybe Councilman Winslow can respond.
Am I not correct? It should be out the floor, just as though.
Yes, I knew it. I figured that.
You should have burned around a, burned around a hot water heater, it's closer to the floor than the furnace.
Yeah, it's like right there.
Okay, can you get, can you fill out that information right there, and those two guys right there? Those are going to be the dual guys that are going to help you.
Yeah, they're always helping me. I'm always, with the light bulbs in the city, he's getting that taken care of, by the way. And the other thing is, is the blight in our south end is terrible. And I know that, you know, this far, we're going to be voting and hopefully we'll see some of you guys down, taking a hike, take a walk down our neighborhoods. I mean, I don't mean to say that, but that's really what we want, you know?
Unfortunately, I'm sorry, I'm going to jump in, but.
Okay.
I do walk and I do, I do go to the south and I go and I walk.
You do.
And I see.
You're right, I do.
And I walk with, with residents there all the time, complain about sidewalks, the trees.
Good.
And blights, I'm always down there.
I know.
It's not fair for Councilman Winslow, Councilman Bedune, we were just out there, Councilman Ahmad just the other day. We were all down there when the floods happened, I mean, it's not, we weren't going.
Why don't you care? I don't, I wasn't talking about that part, I'm talking about even on our side, we're, we're further south.
Yeah, I have a house on Detroit, yeah, I know exactly where you're at, too.
Okay, good, well then.
Yeah.
Maybe we're just not home when you.
Yeah, no, unfortunately, we're not there all day, but I, I, I promise you, I do make effort to go there monthly.
That's good, and also we've had a lot of those, uh, these homes where people were renting them out for whatever they call them, Airbnbs.
Fourteen rentals.
And cars, and, and not only that, car businesses running them out of there, so.
Thank you, thank you, ma'am. Fill up that, that form right over there. Suzanne, right over here, Suzanne.
Oh, that part.
I want you.
Right at the desk.
How you doing, ma'am? Please state your name, the city you reside in, the street that you live on, you have two minutes.
I'm going to be talking fast, guys, you've got too many things on the agenda. Rachel Lapointe, Merrick Street, Dearborn Heights. Eight A, the assessor, absolutely hundred percent support, echo everything Ray said. Don't get rid of her, I might riot, um, she's amazing. Uh, nine D, you guys should be voting yes on. Listen to the experts, the fire department, who said where we should put the fire station. That is the only place we have the property and the availability to put a fire station near where they need to be. Then do a deed restriction for the rest of Warren Valley, done. Get the fire station, nothing else. Nine E, um, the motion, that is for the safe streets, I have no problems with the plan to hire Wade Trim in general. However, the motion referenced did not approve Wade Trim for as needed services, it only approved another company. Wade Trim was highlighted on the bid thing, but the motion does not include them for as needed engineering services. You guys should look into that, I would advise voting no to make sure that everything's straightened away. Now, oh, also, uh, with that grant, verify that it was not pulled because we use the words diversity, equity, and inclusion in that grant. And the federal government has been pulling grants with those key words in that. So it needs to be verified that it hasn't been pulled. Nine H, um, this is, I spoke to a couple of you about the water bills that we, uh, owe to Wayne County. We were improperly assigning other items to that GL line over the last six years. I have found evidence of that in the claims from twenty twenty one. So you guys need to do a full forensic audit of the water department fund, add the water rate study to it. Um, with the police contract, would love to. Um, with the police contract, would love to approve that. However, you guys need to get the budget amendment amount and an actuary report before approving it specifically for the backpan. If I may ask one more question regarding the ordinances which should go to a study session, I'm just curious which AI model. Uh, the corporation council used to draft them because they clearly were written with ChatGPT or similar item. Thank you.
Anyone else? How you doing, sir? Please, please state your name, the city you reside in, the street that you live on. You've got two minutes.
My name is Luigi Peruzzi. I live in Dearborn Heights on Plainfield Street. A house located directly across the street was sold last year and has been vacant since March of twenty twenty four. It has since been listed as an Airbnb. They've had five rentals in which two of the rentals resulted in police intervention. Um, as the young lady already talked about, uh, the party that was at the house. Uh, at nine P M, the neighborhood was full of cars and there was a, a minimum of a hundred teenage kids running up and down the street. Took five, five cops, K nine unit and an assist from Garden City to disperse the crowd and it wasn't fully dispersed until midnight. Um, well, I'm not trying to prevent someone from earning a living. I would like to prevent Airbnbs from becoming a party palace for an evening. At the expense of a quiet and friendly neighborhood. I'd like to suggest that at a minimum, all rentals are, uh. On a four day minimum contract. That would prevent rentals from being a one-off party like one that occurred on the weekend of the twenty ninth. Uh, another thing is that the, the owner or property manager does not come to the property. So while it's a little thing, the. The garbage cans don't get put away. One of, one of us neighbors has to go and shove them in the back. Um, don't feel that that's my responsibility or the guy across the street. The, the snow wasn't maintained in the winter and it remains to be seen how he's gonna do with the grass now that we're moving into grass cutting season. In closing, I'd like to see ordinances that are enforceable so that the neighborhood remains the place that young parents will choose to continue to raise their family.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. And I do want you to know that there is, this council has been fighting and saying to the administration. We no longer wanna have, um, any, any short-term rentals and four days minimum is too short. We're saying you gotta have a thousand days. Basically, it's impossible. You know, when you bought your house, you didn't say you wanted to buy an extra business. You wanted to buy into a residential neighborhood. You don't deserve to live next door to somebody that's not, you don't have to take in their trash bins and clean up their snow like. That was your neighbor, you'd say maybe, hey, I'm being a good Samaritan. But to come in and take care of somebody else's business, I, no, I don't, we already had, had the first reading. Yeah, and we've already had a first reading and, yep.
Stop that, the ordinance, the Monday after the test, it's always the first movement.
Correct. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Um, how you doing, sir? Please state your name, the city you reside in, the street that you live on?
Trupkowski, Columbia Street, Dearborn Heights, Wayne County, four eight one two seven. Good evening, everybody. Uh, nine D, the, uh, res- fire res- location for the fire station. Um. I can't see why the fire station can't be moved to the Canfield Recreation Property. Eliminate the Canfield Center since it's, it seems empty half the time I drive by there. Um, incorporate the Canfield Center into the Berwin Center. Had the recreation department ran out of the Berwin Center, if that's feasible. I don't see why not. And use that property that's already existent property that the city owns and rebuild your fire station at that location. Um, now I know that there's some engineering that needs to be, to happen over there because of the ground. Uh, it's, um, foundation re- um, restructuring, whatever do you have to do? But we've got the property. There's no sense in tearing up the golf course when that golf course can potentially. Add on another eighteen holes or another recreational type venue there. Uh, if you start building on that golf course, I'm afraid you're gonna take away from its value and its potential. Thank you.
Thank you, events. Uh, anyone else in the audience?
My name is, uh, Bill Caddo. I live on Centuria, Dearborn Heights. I'd like to know what's going on with all the water on the north end in the basements. It seemed like lately, every time they rained, people's getting water back up. I lived there thirty-five years, didn't have no problem with, nobody opened the floodgates. Now twice already. You know, what's going on in the north end?
So, I mean, I think Dearborn Heights, and I know Mr. Haraji talked to us about this, um. The, the, the flooding that's happening are, um, and to me, I think are many things. One. We're losing a lot of our catch basins because we're building so many different things on land and we're getting away a lot of our green space. It's happening. And so it's ha- so what you're seeing is you're gonna witness a lot of flooding.
Yeah, but why should we have to pay to fix our basement every time it rains?
Well, well.
You know what I mean? You guys should be planning that ahead before you let all these houses come in.
Well, well, that's, I'm, I'm just giving you an answer.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying.
Yeah. I'm, I'm just helping you answer. I, I think the second thing is, you're also starting to believe in, for everyone of those don't wanna believe in global warming. You're starting to see hundred-year storms that are no longer hundred-year storms. These storms are now becoming every year storm. Every two years, you're seeing a huge rainstorm.
Right.
It's like, you know, my street now has become a street where now it's never used to flood, floods all the time, like this weekend. You know, um, where, where my basement didn't flood this year, but it has, you know, in the last three years. My next-door neighbor flooded and all we had to do was rip everything out and hop and clean everything out.
And they need to put a ca- catch basis in the neighborhood so we don't have this problem then.
Yeah.
You know, my basement's finished. I don't wanna have to keep redoing every time it rains. You know what I mean? Turning my insurance company, then my, my rate's gonna go up. And before it's gonna get to the point where it's on, on the forebode to insure the house for that, you know what I mean?
Council chair. Be honest with you, I went to Centuria Street, you know, a young man that lives on the corner, this is the second time.
Yes.
Brand-new construction home.
I live right around the co- right at the same block.
He, he, or it's what came, I, I mean, I showed you guys the videos. I mean, well, it was like four feet of water.
Yeah.
I couldn't believe when I went down there and seen that, I walked the neighborhood. It's, 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 I, there's something wrong in that neighborhood.
Yes.
The neighborhood does not flood.
No.
Um, and it never did. And I mean, just to see the homes, the amount of water that went inside these homes is, is not normal. And I know there's construction going on right the street over. Um, and I was gonna reach out to the engineer and see, but it's honestly, I'm, I'm, I'm just as astonished as you are. I mean, he had over four feet of water in the basement. It was still coming out.
Did he gotta clean the mains sewers behind us every year or what?
I, I, I could not tell you, but this is the second time his basement has done that.
I know it.
And had never done it before.
I know. He's not happy.
No.
I know that.
That's okay.
Thanks.
Yes, sir.
Council chair?
Yep, councilman.
Thank you. Um, I agree with you. We, we do have more frequent large rainstorms, but this past weekend, we had like an inch of rain or maybe two.
Four inches.
That's not, that's not a massive rainstorm. I mean, uh, we're, we're, we're flooding. And we're flooding with one inch of rain. The people on. The people on Hanover Street, when it just starts to rain, they panic. Because just because half inch of rain. Or an inch of rain is disaster for them.
Yeah.
And, uh, uh, due respect, we do have a lot more big rainstorms, but there's, there is other issues that we have to take care of. And I think we're, the grant, a lot of the grant money we're getting. I think we're not putting it to the maximum use that we could.
I agree.
You know, we, we should, instead of, we recently received ten million dollars. And it was used to clear the banks of the creek starting in Wind Dot or E Course. And, uh, it was a, it's a bad project and it's never gonna make it to Dearborn Heights.
It never did.
No, it never will.
It's still going.
It's still going, but they said we'd get about four hundred thousand. That's it.
You, you know, I, I had this conversation, Councilman, if I may, uh, it's, Councilman Winsaw, if I may. We, we asked Wayne County for ten million dollars. This is very funny. And then we gave Wayne County back the ten million dollars. For them to work on what belongs to them. How does that even make any sense? You, you, that's like, you know, I tell you, Councilman Winsaw, give me, give me ten million. Then I give you back the ten million. They say, go buy new clothes. What, what did I get out of it? You know?
Agreed. It's been misfamed misinformation the past couple of years.
Council chair, before we move on, maybe, can we hear from Mr. Deep? And I understand the south end, why the flooding, but why it's in, uh, that area? Any idea what's going on?
I mean, it's not flooding.
Since you're the only expert here. So, Councilman, I believe Council Chair hit it right on those. We have developed the city quite a bit. Uh, uh, infrastructure hasn't been looked at in years. Uh, green space is, is depleted. Um, we have hard surfaces all over, so we need to look at, a comprehensive look at. What is the capacity of your existing infrastructure? So it, it is, it's a combination of two things. So, um, most of the areas since last Friday or last weekend. Uh, the, as far, as long, as, as early as today, all the homes that I've looked at with flooding, uh, have not been related to. Um, city, uh, uh, tra- you know, pipes. It's not a capacity issue. It's, it's just that we exceeded, we have. Storm systems that the, the ground is super saturated. We have areas, Robin Dale is one of them. I think you talked to him about that.
I have a question for you, Mr. Deep.
It's low.
Yes, sir. What's the one question that I ask you for the last four years, maybe every month or two?
Flooding.
No.
No.
Flooding, yes. What are we doing about our flooding? And I thought that you told us that we were looking at all these lines and. You had this whole thing being drawn up and it was gonna come before the council and we're looking at the downstream and the upstream and it's like.
Okay, so, so, so we are, this is not a, uh, uh, this is, this problem has been developing for the last sixty-plus years. The solution is not going to be an overnight solution and it's not going to be cheap. So we're looking at, at what we can afford to do. And, 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 and do it. Uh, you're not gonna be able to upgrade your entire underground system overnight. Uh, it's not even possible. Um, so we're looking at implementing things like green, uh, 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 pavement, uh, um, you know, uh, finger drains. We're trying to minimize. The load on our existing system because I can't go and update all the, the pipe sizes throughout. Storm is the biggest problem we have. It's not, it's not, it's capacity. So we're looking at comprehensive, but it's gotta take time. Uh, you can't just overnight say, I'm going to take all my twelve inches and make it twenty-four.
Mr. Deep, I'm sorry, I wanna interrupt just a second. We went, uh, we drove around, you and I and Councilman Ahmad, over the summer and looked at certain basins in the city. A lot of these new basins you're putting in the covers, they only have two holes on them. Restrict- I, I mean, I mean, you're restricting water flow. That's why streets are flooding also.
The restricted covers are intentionally restricted so the water doesn't end up in your basement, sir. If it is, if you are in CSO. Just so, so we know, if you are in the CSO, combined sewer overflow area, and we have six of them, just so we all know. We have six locations within the city. They have combined sewer overflow, meaning that if, if, if you don't flood the street, you flood your basement. So you restrict the flow. Intentionally, and those covers are restricted intentionally. As we, as we address them, and, uh, so we're in, uh, we're starting number three out of six. Separate them. When we separate the system, we will install pipes that do not flood your basement. So they will be separating sanitary from storm. And when we do that, we will remove those, uh, covers and add more drains.
So, so my thing is, the question to you is that, I know the, those covers are to restrict water.
Right.
The water flow into the system and to slow it down. The problem is we're having too is that the city's not sweeping the streets to clean these covers. Where water is actually going through.
That's, that's.
That's, that's an issue of its own.
That is.
And I know DPW director's here, but this is not something that just started since he's been here. This has been going on for years. So you drive now down, and I'm gonna use a perfect example, Wilson. It's, it's, it's a pa- it's a, uh, it's a gravel road. All that gravel is literally tying up the, the sewer cover.
Robin Dale, Robin Dale, I removed some of the stuff off of the catch basins myself and they were not CSO. They were running.
But to be honest with you two, I, I don't wanna put the whole blame on the city, but it's also the, the residents that have these basins front of your house. Please clean your basins because it does affect your neighborhood. I mean, I know some streets only have one, two basins. Just walk up to your curb and clean it. Throw it over to the side on the curb. I mean, I know the city, we're, we're there to clean, but the city's not coming around these days. And I'm probably saying it, but.
It, 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 it is a problem. So, yes, that's a.
I mean, I walked around the other day seeing basins. They had over a fo- of leaves and branches.
I have pictures of them on my phone. I, I cleaned some of them, yes.
Council chair? Uh, Mr. Deep.
Hold on, hang on. Sorry. Councilman, when the last connection.
Yeah, you know, and it is true with the restricted basins because I have one on my street and I know for a fact in the past, before I bought my house. We had trouble in my neighborhood with the basements flooding. And yeah, you might have water in your street for a while, but I'd rather look at it out my window than in my basement curb.
I agree. I agree. And then, so, so another thing you might wanna keep telling your neighbors, please do not remove those covers. Because when they do that, they're, they're, and they're flooding their neighbors. That water's end up in the basement. And I can't, you know, we can't police all these things because they're. I have people that removed, uh, just today, uh, the actual cover on the manhole was removed. And now that's, that's dangerous. You guys.
That's illegal.
Please, yes. And it's covered in water. You, you might lose a kid in that. You know, it's not, it's not good.
Go ahead, Councilman Ahmad. Mr. Deep, uh, the master plan that we're trying to get, does that cover any of these stuff?
So, so it is, it, it, yes, i- i- in a way, because you, when you look at your possible expansion or, or development. And you look at development options, uh, some of the, the, uh, uh, early findings that we're having, because I can't go back to nineteen sixty-three and, and, you know, how much open space we had. And how many permeable, you need to start looking at your standard and say, okay, I can't go back to sixty, forty development. We may have to look at some alternative like. Uh, other communities, Ann Arbor, um, um, uh, Royal Oak are looking at, uh, green infrastructure. Basically, try to reduce the load on your system. So new development will require finger drains or, you know, drainage, uh, green, uh, uh, um, you know, perme- permeable asphalt. As opposed to dumping more water in your, um, storm system. Things of that nature that we can do, short of trying to update all of our systems.
When you said they're looking, they addressed some of it, the master plan, would they look at the infrastructure? Is it just, uh, in a way?
Uh, yes, anyway, so, so when we start the infrastructure, what comes out of it is your, 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 um, um, plan for the next twenty years. So we will put in it, if we are gonna, uh, uh, adopt green infrastructure, we'll make that as part of our ordinance. So when people pull a permit. You know, from the building department, they, they know what to expect. That's what happened in, in Royal Oak and, and Ann Arbor. They know exactly. Ann Arbor goes a step further and say, green roofs. Not gonna go that crazy, but yeah.
But does it green roof too?
Yeah, you can put, uh, grass on your roof. Yeah.
Grass. Okay, so absorb, wow.
Yeah.
So since we mentioned the master plan, any update on the master plan?
Yes, so we have, we, RFQs are due tomorrow, today or tomorrow.
What?
It's out, out, out the bid, due tomorrow. This is the one that we had to re- to re-bid because it was on, uh, twenty days as opposed to twenty-one days. And the state made us go back to out the bid and put it twenty-one days.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. How you doing, ma'am? Please state your name, the city you reside in, the street that you live on. You have two minutes.
Uh, Kimberly Comer, Lincoln Park, Alper Avenue, and I'm the city assessor. This is just a public comment based on. Stuff I've been hearing at meetings and talking to people about the Airbnb issue that keeps happening over and over. It sounds like. We need commercial places for people to stay. And we don't have any hotels in the city and we don't have the capacity to build any hotels in the city as far as my understanding of what the ordinance and codes are. So I think when you're talking about the master plan, perhaps that's something to factor in, maybe an area where we can. Attract some kind of businesses where people can come stay in Dearborn Heights and it would get this commercial. Temporary stays out of the neighborhoods and into a more commercial area where you want people to come stay as opposed to your next-door neighbors. So that was all. Just.
Yeah, go ahead.
We have several hotels within a few miles of Dearborn Heights. They might not be within our city limits.
Sure.
Um, and like I've said in the past, a lot of the reason they choose these short-term rentals is there's no management on duty. They can get away with a lot more than they can at a hotel and put a lot more people there.
Sure.
It's not a vacation destination for Dearborn Heights. It's a party destination.
Sure, just a place for people to party away from people's houses.
A lot of them are local from neighborhoods around here. They don't travel to come here.
Sure.
Far.
Yeah, just, it'd be, new businesses are always good for the city. It's always good for our community to be investing more in and. Okay, sorry, echoes. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Everybody's favorite, Margaret King. Please state your name, even though I just said it. The street that you live on, the city you reside in.
Margaret King, Mayfair Street. I just wanna echo the flooding. I'm in the south end. I'm between Mayfair, I'm on Mayfair between Hanover and Powers. Hanover sucks. Um, every time it floods, I'm constantly watching the weather and constantly making sure, just the PTSD of not being able to get out of my neighborhood. Having to find all the high roads to get out of my neighborhood. If I need to get out of my neighborhood, it sucks. And I know it's been since, you know, nineteen sixty, but. As a resident, I don't really feel that we should have to deal with this. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Margaret.
Yeah.
Would you wanna talk about something that's happening tomorrow?
Yeah, um, tomorrow is the ghost bike for Joey. Um, I believe it starts at five thirty or five o'clock. Five thirty, five thirty it starts. So I'll do a twelve-mile ride on a bike for Joey. So that's the little boy that was hit and killed at party in Annapolis.
Sorry, Margaret, I know I said we're gonna be there, but we have a study session after the talk, so I'm.
The, the good news is, I spoke. The good news is, I spoke with the mother, Lady Smith, and my heart goes out to her and her family. She's actually gonna call us tomorrow on FaceTime to go over it. I let her know that we did have a budget hearing, so she is planning on FaceTiming us and so that we can pause our study session, watch it, be there with the residents and for the family of Mr. and Mrs. Smith.
Thank you so much, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's at the, where is it located?
The corner of Party in Annapolis, right across the street from Party Elementary School. Do we, we have an update on any of that stuff?
Let's, let's do a quick moment of silence on behalf of Joey Smith. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
How you doing, ma'am? You state your name, the city you reside in, and the street that you live on. You have two minutes.
Hi, my name is, good evening, everyone. Good evening, Mr. Council Chairperson and council members. My name is Cheryl Tipton. I'm the community liaison for Congresswoman Rashida Tlaib. I'm here to bring you greetings from the councilwoman, let you know she's hired to work in DC with concerns like social security, Medicare, Medicaid that are affecting many of us here. In case you don't know, we do have an office at seventy-eight hundred West Outer Drive, near Southfield Road. We'll open Monday through Friday from nine AM to five PM. Also, we have a town hall for Western Wayne, which is Northwest Detroit and Redford, Dearborn Heights, Livonia, so on. It's Wednesday, April twenty-third. I don't have enough flyers for everyone, but maybe you can take pictures because we are registering by QR code. But it's Wednesday, April twenty-third, from six to seven thirty PM at Thurston High School, two-six-two-five-five Schoolcraft Road in Redford. You're welcome to attend. I'm sure a lot of people in this room have questions, concerns that you wanna address directly to Congresswoman Tlaib. She will be there in person. This is not on the phone, okay? It's in person. So, we invite you to come and participate, just like you're doing here, but on a higher, the federal level.
Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you so much.
We have a copy if anybody wants to scan it.
It's online as well.
Okay.
Thank you. Or maybe if you wanna put it over there and people could scan it as they're leaving. Anyone else in the audience? Seeing none, we'll move it over to Zoom. We're gonna begin with Ash Othman.
Hi, council, how are you?
Good, how you doing? Please state your name, the city you reside in, and the street that you live on, please.
Ash Othman, Rochelle Street, Dearborn Heights. This one is actually for the police department, but also about something somebody else brought up. Ordinances with bullying. My daughter's been being bullied since September of this year. School board hasn't done anything about it. School district has it.
Somebody's being bullied?
My nine-year-old daughter who just turned nine.
Is being bullied?
Yep. Um, I've got nothing done through the school district at all. She does go across the school district, so I will put that out there. Nothing has been being done. Um, in December, I did contact somebody from the PD. Nothing was done. But I will say the other day I ran into an SRO. That was Officer Fayad. Um, I spoke with him several times down the past few days. I've also spoken with Officer Hogeish in the past few days. Um, I am now getting in touch more where the central office is actually trying to assist. Not saying anything's been done, but they are trying to assist. But I do have to shout out those two officers because without them, I'd probably be sitting through the same thing of nothing being done. So, there are state laws on bullying, but I will tell you, based on age, a lot of these schools don't care. They think kids should just ignore them. And that's what I've been told. And that's what my daughter's been told, is to ignore what happens.
I, I question Mrs. Othman. I'm sorry that your nine-year-old daughter's going through this. You said that you made a report with this to the central office with the Crystal School District?
Um, I didn't. I had a SRO who actually got in touch with them. I was dealing with the principal, vice principal. Um, we've been going through this since September. They have.
I'm, I'm, I'm so sorry. I mean, I'm gonna follow up for you, to be honest. I'll follow up. Yeah.
I appreciate that, Mo. I, I really do.
Have you tried to reach out to like, you know, trustee Amens, you know, trustee Sabah, trustee Nisha, Chanun, trustee Alziat, trustee Bedoun, any of them, superintendent Joe Masalim? I'm just curious.
Yep, so with Mr. Masalim, actually I have been in touch with his office. His office, I've now called three times and I've been told that he will contact me back. He has not contacted me back. And we're saying since September that I've called three times, never received a call back from him. But I do have to say, I have spoken with, I don't know what her position is on the school board, so I don't wanna say the wrong position. I have spoken with Najash Chanun. She has been nothing but great to me, so I definitely do appreciate that. Um, she definitely has tried to guide me the right way with this, so I do appreciate that. Um, but when we bring up bullying laws, I don't think they work with kids this young.
Thank you.
Chair?
Yep.
It's not just at Crestwood. Over at the Annapolis School District D seven, there's a little girl about the same age who's been going through this for over a year. Her last name is Smith.
No, don't say no names.
I'm sorry. Well.
It's a, it's a kid.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. And I'm sorry that all these families are dealing with this. Next up, we have, I'm gonna save Gary for the end. Next up, we're gonna go with Barb Rennie.
Good evening.
Hi, good evening. Can everybody hear me?
Yes, we can, loud and clear.
Okay, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I have a couple.
Two minutes. State your name, the city you reside in, the street that you live on.
Well, I sent you all an email, but I'm gonna cut this down real quick. I echo everything that Angela said about the Airbnb. I live on Detroit Street in Dearborn Heights. Sure, oh, whatever they're called, party houses. That's what I'm gonna call them. I also have one next door to me. We are so sick and tired of this. This debacle that happened on Plainfield, I can tell you, this is not a threat. This is a statement. Something happens next door to my house and I have a hundred kids bum rush in my house, I am not waiting for the police that are outnumbered. I will take it upon myself and I don't wanna hear, my poor baby, my poor baby wouldn't do that. No, you do not rent a house for fifteen girls. That's why you get a hotel. And just like this Kimberly or Miss Comer who wants to build a hotel around here, no, we're in a food desert down here. That's what we need. Uh, number two, uh, this invoice number nineteen, once again, why do we not have it itemized? We are once again paying for something that has to do with two neighbors, not the residents. Number three, I'm trying to make this fast. Since everyone seems to have a wish list, I would like to know when we can start fixing up outside of the police station for our fallen officers. I personally went out there last fall, weeded out everything. I know I got fifteen seconds, hang on. Uh, I weeded out everything. All we need is some lighting and I don't know if we have Tifa money, but the money's gotta come from somewhere. We are not respecting our fallen officers and this is BS. Just remember, everybody, this is the year that everybody's gonna promise you everything under the sun until November fourth. Make sure you listen and see. Oh, no, make sure you listen and see who's really behind you and who has been. All right, you guys, all have a good night. Thank you.
Thank you. And Barb, I want you to know, guys, I, I believe you raised some money and I was able to, you know, able to get us like, I think I like a twenty-five-hundred-dollar check or a fifteen-hundred-dollar check to also put that to fixing up that corner for the fallen officers. Um, I think you and I did that last year. I, we raised it through some businesses.
It's just, you know, it's, it's just pretty sad. It's been there since two thousand and three and it's like, it seems like once you lose an officer, you forget about it. They worked hard. They put their life on the line for us. The least we can do is make the outside of the police station very nice, put up some lighting, put up some, you know, water so we can have plants, somewhere for people to go.
Thank you.
They deserve better. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next up, we have Sukay GMCA. Coffee Mayor Civic Association, I think.
Hi, everybody. Sukaminsky, Ambrose Street, formerly Annapolis Street. And you guys are talking about flooding, but you're talking about building a fire station on land that is a flood plain at the golf course. And you're talking about putting more stress on the sewage system. I gotta believe there's someplace better. I don't want it on the golf course and I don't want it on Warren Road. Engineers said it should be at Beach Daily, Golfie Manor, the oldest civic association in the state of Michigan, five hundred and twelve houses, lots of voting here. We don't want it. We had our meeting last night. You better think long and hard. Now, Plainfield Street, I listened to the police radio. I was there. I drove there. The, there was four Dearborn Heights police, one Garden City, the K-9 dog, a hundred kids that ended up going towards the shopping center at Warren and Engster. They were at the gas station. Four kids were arrested. There was people at the dollar store. The police were tied up, including two sergeants, for over three hours. Plus, we have to pay Garden City for mutual aid. This is BS, guys. Plus, you're putting every resident at risk on an already burdened, understaffed police department on a Saturday night. No more horsing around. Get it done. I don't wanna hear anymore about it. I'm so mad, I can't even tell you guys. And then Roger, as far as your amendments, how would you like the school boards to tell the city what to do? Keep your nose where it belongs. You don't do enough to do your job. Get out of the school district's business. Thank you.
Thank you so much, guys. I do also wanna say to Barb Rennie, and I felt to mention, I did have a conversation with the Brian Sneer regarding fixing the memorial of the fallen officers. He did let me know about a cou- a couple of months ago. He said, I need the weather to break and when the weather breaks, I mean, a bunch of guys were, are gonna go out and clean and they do have the money for it, so I just wanted to bring that to your attention. Council chair?
So, I, we were mistaken, even further. Yes, councilman. Thank you. Um, several months ago, I put a resolution to the city council to immediately ban and put a moratorium on short-term rental properties and I was, it was put aside saying we're gonna come up with orders. We're just lucky that nothing really serious happened this past weekend. With some, you know, a, a police officer getting hurt or kids getting hurt or a neighbor or anything. I don't know why we didn't go ahead, my suggestion, and put a media ban on it and then see what happens, but so it's been months since then. We're just lucky that nothing happened and and we, unfortunately, we've had these residents live next door to us for two months more than they should have. I know, I don't know the legality of it, but I know we could do it, a moratorium, make it illegal. I said, make it illegal immediately on short-term rentals because we have no ordinance and you can't enforce anything you don't have an ordinance on. It must be illegal. I think we should make a motion tonight to, this point forward, make them illegal immediately after this meeting. I'm, I'm sick and tired of hearing all these complaints about it. I know, I have friends, and I told you, I witnessed a really bad incident at one of these short-term rentals. And it's not fair. I mean, everyone out here saying, oh, that's terrible, but live next door to one and then you'll be here every meeting complaining about it too. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, and, and the good news is, we're about to hear from Gary Miyaki, special legal counsel, who did the first proposal, first reading on, on it, um, councilman. And, you know, I, I just wanna entertain. I wanna play devil's advocate right now. Say we pass your resolution on the moratorium, okay? For the short-term rentals of Airbnb. Let's just say we did. Who's gonna force it? We had four officers there that couldn't even stop the Airbnb that took place currently.
Well, like I, like I said, is you, you, you employ, you don't employ anybody, you get your residents to report it first and then the building department goes out there and, and shuts it down, condemns the home or whatever shuts the home down. I mean, we, we have a city here and we should be able to control some people coming in from outside our city, coming in here trying to destroy our city. We should have some control. I don't care what it takes. I mean, the reason that happened and we couldn't control it is because we let it happen. We let that happen. We as, we as elected officials, let that happen this past weekend by not immediately banning them. If that was, if we had a ban and made them illegal, we could have the police out there two weeks ago, a month ago, two, three or four months ago when I first brought it up, and this never would've happened. I mean, we let it happen. It's our fault. We're, I'm sorry.
Can I, can I entertain it now?
Sure.
Thank you. I'm gonna go back to saying the hypothetical that we did follow because we didn't, like back to, backtracking to say, you know, that you also agreed to table it to make sure that we did it properly. Regardless if you put it forward, you also agreed to this entire body saying, we're gonna do it the right way. Or like, saying I put a, you know, I put together a resolution, we should've used it, but then you also agreed to, 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 uh, table it and to refer it to special legal counsel, makes it that you made the same decision as all of us. But what I will allow you to do is, as if nobody here on city council wanted to move forward with banning it and only you did because that's not how you're gonna paint that because every single person here on council, they agrees wholeheartedly that we don't want short-term rentals in the city.
I didn't say that.
I mean, you're painting that picture.
I didn't say you guys didn't agree to it.
I, so you said, the one that brought it up and then we shut it down a month ago as if the city council didn't want it. You, councilmen, referred it back to special legal counsel.
Well, you know why?
So, now we're waiting.
And then when you were talking, by the way.
And I let you finish. But, you know, I mean, too many times we kinda sat in this meeting where like, you're saying, well, I was the only one that didn't do it and everybody else did. You know, and it's kinda like, I, I can't tell you, one other council member that comes up here and says, well, I did this and everybody else didn't wanna do this. Like, but we're constantly saying things like, hey, we as the council working as a team. Instead, it's like, well, I put this resolution forward. Yes, you also referred it back to special legal counsel, which you're failing to state.
The reason I did is because it'd have been a six-to-one vote, like it's, is so many times where I'm the only one that votes no. It's the other six vote, yes. Off-course contract, commander officer's contract, so many of the worst, worst contracts we've ever had in the city. I'm the only one that voted no on them, approved by everyone. I'm just saying, I, I am the only one that was pushing that. Everyone else said, hey, no, slow down. We got, we got special counsel working on something.
Yeah.
And everyone's, all six of you are going, okay, Tom, that's it. I go, okay.
Yeah, because it would've violated the fair housing.
By the way, Tom, you put a resolution, again, that would've, that was affecting state and federal law, and then what were we gonna do? You know what we did when we put a moratorium that wasn't legal? The city was sued. You know who was a part of that at city council?
What else?
You and, and the, and the mayor were. And you know what happened? Taxpayers had to pay a law that you guys put into place. I can tell you, I wasn't on here because the experts told you, it is illegal, don't do it. The same special legal counsel, we have told you, don't do a, a, a moratorium on hookah lounges. Instead, you and, and, and everybody else voted yes to put a moratorium. You know what happened? The taxpayers paid it. So, what are we gonna say?
None of these taxpayers wanted them, no. I was speaking up for the taxpayers. How many here want more hookah lounges? Raise your hand.
I don't think anybody that stopped the conversation were having.
So, I'm representing the people.
But it's illegal.
I'm doing what the people want.
You're right. So, then you know what? You're right. But then you cost the taxpayers more money. So, instead of fixing their trees and fixing their roads, hey, well, I did what you wanted and we lost money.
I did it?
Council chair? Council chair, if you don't mind. I just wanna remind everybody on council and council that when Mr. Miyaki wrote the first draft last time, he said, if you don't have an ordinance that supports short-term rentals, then they're not allowed in the city. So, basically, they're not allowed, but we're trying to do it in a legal way. So, everybody was on board about not having the short-term rentals and we know the city does not approve it. And I guess ordinance was supposed to be go, go after them, but now technically, we're gonna go, you know, do it the right way. And I'm sorry.
This is, you know, that's what I said in my resolution. This was not city council's fault. I said, no city council.
My resolution said, we don't have an ordinance.
We don't have an ordinance, so you got, you can't have it. We don't have an ordinance, you can't have it.
Well, that's exactly what he said. You can't.
Council chair.
If we don't have an ordinance, it's not allowed in the city immediately. Not a month from now, six months from now.
Councilman, what's up? You all set?
Yes.
Thank you. I'm gonna go to special legal counsel.
May I make a comment not against my time related to this issue?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. What council chair Protem Ahmad stated is indeed correct. These sort of short-term rentals and this use was violated, you know, violates the current ordinances. It should end up being investigated and if appropriate, and I think there's a good likelihood it would be prosecuted. That's on the administration. So, you know, remember, I live on Plainfield Street, so, you know, obviously, this is a concern. We need to adopt the short-term rental ordinance and it needs to go through the process. But that does not prevent the administration from taking action with respect to this issue that took place on my street. So, um, I, I understand the council member's frustration, but But all of you basically have taken an appropriate step forward and it's a matter of hand, you know, not in in my view, humbly, I represent you, it's in my view, not a matter of 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 being critical of each other, but holding the administration to do what it is supposed to do. Now, with that being said, can I move on to my comment?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Gary Miyaki has for an additional minute. I will honor that for you. Please state your name.
The city reside in the street.
Gary Miyaki, Plainfield Street, Dearborn Heights. Uh my comments relate to uh items eleven B through H, nine I and nine H. These should be tabled until further information is received to justify approval. And some should be referred to study sessions and possibly closed sessions. Eleven B um uh through H are proposed ordinances. Without going into detail, they are messes in terms of form and content. Uh what Ms. LaPointe pointed out uh was a very valid concern, but it also ends up making these a mess. Uh but just a couple of examples, in case someone doesn't want to believe me. Eleven H is a proposed ordinance that purports to amend chapter twelve of the city charter. This is impossible because an ordinance cannot amend the city charter. Eleven B is another propos- in another proposed ordinance that purports to establish, quote, "a juvenile restorative diversion program." This may very well conflict with state law, given that the county juvenile courts have exclusive jurisdiction over juvenile offenders. Regardless, these items should be tabled and fully evaluated. Nine I is a proposed um is is the proposed uh police officers um collective bargaining agreement. This matter has been completely mishandled by the administration and that the city council was not consulted about this proposed agreement and its expected costs. The city's strategy in negotiating the proposed agreement before it was negotiated. The direct cost of this agreement and the cost indirectly stemming from it. In particular, as to this last item, the indirect costs include the automatic raises that will be given to the police supervisors, since their pay is based on a percentage above the patrol officer's pay. This matter should be tabled and referred both to a study session and a closed session. And finally, nine H is the CSO basin retention payment. This proposed three point seven million dollar payment needs to be analyzed and justified in detail, especially since we've learned of a five million dollar hole in our budget that the administration didn't seem to have the ability to let us know until very recently. There is a very involved history on this matter that Mr. Dancy and Mr. Debe are not fully aware of. Part of it relates to the county overcharging the city and both Mayor Pletko and the city council believing that we needed to to take action relative to that. If you want the history, I can provide it. Otherwise, please consider the fact that the twenty seventeen quarterly payment was a hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars, and that in twenty twenty-four, the purported appropriate payment is two hundred and one thousand dollars. Uh please refer this matter to a study session to discuss it and to uh have the administration um explain what they are doing in terms of the uh inappropriate costs and moving away from this way of operating things. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Gary. Anyone else in the audience? Anyone else on public comment?
Councilor.
Councilman.
I just want to give out a shout out to attorney, uh, yeah, I'm riding his dog, Rock. They're walking, but he has a he has a conference room inside, but I've been seeing Rock uh as he's walking his dog. So we have a guest. That's it.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Councilor.
Councilman.
Um, I'd like to comment on a statement made by um Councilman Beidun that because I voted to ban, uh, put a moratorium on hookah lounges, it cost the city taxpayers money that we could have used on other things. It didn't cost the city taxpayers anything. It's insurance, we have insurance for that. The insurance company paid that. It didn't take any money out of our budget, like he stated. He says it took money out of our tree trimming, not true. And uh and he mentioned a few other things. And those are totally false, untrue, and I don't know why he was saying it, but I I think I deserve an apology because it didn't cost the taxpayers one penny for that.
I wholeheartedly apologize, Councilman, but I just also want you to know that we did not, not this count, you were not the only council member that wanted to ban short-term rentals. And I kind of feel like you've done this many times, so maybe you should give an apology to to the rest of the council, not just to me. But if you don't want to, that's okay. I will apologize.
Well, something specific, and I will, I mean, I don't know what really what you're referring to, but if you give me some specific, specific, I'll I'll apologize for it.
And and the fact that you you're making it seem like only you were the only one that wanted to put your resolution forward and we all were against it. In reality, we're trying to protect the city and making sure from special legal counsel, which we all approved on saying, we believe that our special legal counsel is gonna move the city or give the city council the best direction. Well, I mean, it was not, it was nothing against not putting your resolution. If anything, I've supported almost every single one of your resolution. This one specific resolution was, by our special legal counsel said, hold up. You don't want to put yourselves in 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 harm's way to the city in harm's way. And and it was actually Gary that said, similar to the moratorium that we put on hookah lounges, which cost the city money. Regardless if it cost MMRMA, which we had to put back into MMRMA, we're still taking that and putting it in there to make sure that that is being filled in. But yes, we we are. And so I don't, I don't, I shouldn't ever have fed it towards you specifically, but the reality is, it does. Um so I I don't want to make this into a shouting match back and forth, but the reality is.
Well, hookah lounges and and short-term rentals are apples and oranges. Hookah lounges are allowed. Short-term rentals are not. Yeah, a little sapper right there.
Yeah, I I I agree with you on that. I'm not disagreeing with you, but I also want you to know that the entire city council also wants to ban short-term rentals, not just one councilman. That's that's what I'm getting at.
Okay, that's what you, if that's what everybody thought, I apologize for that. Thank you.
Yep.
I appreciate that.
But just not allowed, that's it.
Next up is number six, fund transfers and current claims.
Councilor.
Councilman.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approved the current claims in ACH Warrior Transfer six dash one through six dash sixteen and six dash seventeen through six dash thirty-seven as submitted.
Second. Motion made by Councilman Saab, seconded by Councilman Constant. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, motion carries. Next up is the new assessment contract with the Anthony Assessing Consulting, Inc.
Councilor.
Councilman.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approved the assessment contract renewal between the city and Anthony Foyoco Assessing Consultant Inc. In addition, authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the contract on behalf of the city, which will expire June thirty, twenty twenty-eight. Where the more authorize the mayor and controller or clerk to sign the necessary warrants and the treasure to issue payment from the account one oh one, two oh nine, eight one eight, zero 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 as outlined in eight slash A.
Motion made by Councilman Mads, seconded by Councilman Saab. Any discussion?
Councilor.
Councilman.
Uh from somebody that worked with the closely with the assessing with the this with this company, the assessor that we have here for at least four years. I worked closely with them. They're a group of professionals, dedicated with the strong ties to the community in the way they serve our residents. Uh I truly um urge all the council to approve this contract. As we, I just love the way they treat the residents, how they help them, and they're always there for them. They're fair, they're just, and they're ethical and truly professional.
Councilor.
Yep, Councilman.
Just to echo what Councilman Ahmad has said, whenever I send them deeds, have a question about legal descriptions, I just get a, an answer to my call or a callback immediately.
Councilor.
Do a very good job.
Yep. Councilman.
Honestly, I want to, you know, say also work in asking Kim, get answers. Kim is honest, it's always been helpful. She's always responsive. And she's always a pro. So I, we appreciate you too, Kim.
So it's Kim and Steph, not just Kim.
What Kim and Steph, absolutely, but Kim is the face of the city.
Thank you. Um I I also had a conversation with some people from the community that called me in today. Sam Miller being one of them who, you know, really assess a lot of things for our community and and works very closely. Uh and Sam is somebody that I take his word wholeheartedly on. And so, I mean, I know that, you know, Kimberly and her staff do a great job. I believe I've called her on on some occasions. And so we're looking for continued relationship with you. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, motion carries. Next up is the Commission on Disability Concerns Appointment.
Councilor. May I have just a short point of comment for the contract? Uh and I I appreciate everything that our assessor has done. Um if you look at the contract, um in section three of the, on the second uh page, line fourteen. Um this is prepared in two thousand nineteen and two thousand twenty-two by a previous corporation counsel, Gary Miyaki. It says, further, and in accordance with section five point one five of the city charter, the city assessor shall be responsible, shall be responsible to the mayor and shall serve at the discretion of the mayor for an indefinite term. So if you look at the language and the interpretation of five point one five, it supports the argument that both corporation counsel and the assessor terms do not expire and not subject to five point one five beginning, which talks about directors.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Mr. Fran, are you, are you talking in this contract?
Yes, this contract, which mirrors the previous contract in two thousand twenty-two and mirrors the contract from two thousand nineteen. Under section three, appointment of city assessor, if you go to the second page, down in the fourteenth line, where it starts off further, and in accordance with section five point one five of the city charter, the city assessor shall, chat city assessor shall be responsible to the mayor and shall serve at the discretion of the mayor for an indefinite term. That was approved and signed by three times. This is the third time, by city council, by the mayor, by the clerk. What, I'm sorry, I put some. No problem.
You said section fourteen?
No, I said section three. If you go to the second page, if you count fourteen lines down.
The contract that we have, here you wrote it before, that it's, their term is indefinite, but I still can't see it. I'm sorry. So you said.
No, no problem, sir. I can.
Page number? Second page.
What page?
Second page.
Or ours. No, this is a three-year contract from what I read.
It's a, there was a contract two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty-two, which had the same language. This is a contract from two thousand twenty-two to two thousand twenty-five. The second contract. This is the third, and I just copied it. It was on, already voted on.
Stay in item three. No, no, page two. Page two. So you go fourteen lines, you said?
Yeah, fourteen lines down.
One thirty-eight.
Where it starts further and in accordance with section five point one five. Of the city charter, the city assessor shall be responsible to the mayor and shall serve at the discretion of the mayor for an indefinite term, which supports our June twenty-fourth opinion letter from the attorneys Rancilio, which says the corporation counsel and assessor does not expire.
And clerk, is Gary still on? Hopefully, we can put it on to the next meeting.
You don't really.
I mean, the administration might have hired someone else.
No, 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 he he's saying with this contract, like, we don't need to renew. I see it. I see it. I mean, no, I mean, if that's the case, I don't like it either, but uh. I mean, that's fine. We can delete that out of the contract.
No, you you don't understand. It was in two thousand nineteen, it was approved three years, it was appointed. So, no, no, it's been voted on, approved by you as valid. So when Mr. Miyaki attacked me and said that my position expires and his assessor's position expires, he should have known, since he drafted this contract, that that's not the correct interpretation of five point one five. And I pointed it out.
But this is for the assessor, not the corporation counsel.
If you look at the charter, five point one five, it talks about the assessor and the corporation counsel.
Separate positions.
And in fact, when you did the last April.
Okay, one second.
You put the corporation counsel.
I understand, but it still says this according to five, section five point one five.
Right, and in five point one five is interpreted by the previous corporation counsel, says the term is indefinite.
It's not indefinite. Anyway, we just, we just voted on this. We all said, so we're moving on.
Yes, that's fine. I just want to point it out to the.
Um, moving to eight C. Councilor. It's so noted, yeah, so noted that I'd like that section to be removed. Madam clerk, can we do that?
The law, the charter says the law, it says the charter.
You can do that. I can remove it from the contract, Roger. I'm saying the law. Madam clerk, can we, can we go back? Suspend the rules. Okay. So do I have a motion to suspend the rule? Do I have a motion to suspend the rule?
I'll put a motion.
Motion by Councilman Saab, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes. So the ayes have it, uh, the rules are suspended. Council Saab, you have a motion?
I have a motion to approve.
No, to go back to that contract and remove the.
Yes, remove the.
I mean, we can just remove uh where it says uh.
Section, from section three.
Councilor.
Uh, I mean, we can just say, we can just remove uh for an indefinite term.
No, just re- remove the whole sentence.
We still have to go to accordance with section five, one point five.
Yes, but where it says the city assessor shall be responsible to the mayor and shall serve at the discretion of the mayor for an indefinite term. The whole sentence, I want.
I mean, technically, I mean, yeah, that's administration. She works for the administration.
Yeah, but now we're indefinite.
And that's what I'm saying, just take off indefinite terms.
Councilor, we rescind that motion that you just made and then re-adopt a new motion.
Yeah, we are adopting a new motion.
Okay.
Okay.
But you have to rescind the one that you made.
Do we need a motion to rescind?
Yes.
Motion to rescind.
Eight B. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Wensel. Uh all in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? The ayes have it.
Now we're on a clean slate and you guys can.
Okay, so we need to go out and do that motion again. So going back to eight B.
Councilor.
I'm sorry, not eight B. Going back to, actually, that was my motion. Uh going back to eight A, the new assessment contract. Uh.
I think if 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 we take it out of the contract now, I heard the Rogers comments. By taking it out of the contract now, I think we create more problems than we solve. So by taking it out of the contract now, that he was referencing that it was in the former contract.
Get us back on.
Making an argument, but I don't think by taking it out of the contract now uh uh does this any good or corrects any problem.
Thank you.
Can I jump in real quick?
Yes.
That's, you guys are.
Oh, Councilor, before we do anything, this was already voted on.
Yeah, we rescinded it.
We rescinded it.
Rescinded your vote?
Yes. So it comes to you, if you don't mind, Gary is on, if we can just hear from Gary.
It was voted on two thousand nineteen and two thousand twenty-two, and it's still in effect today. Now, you have another contract that goes forward when this one expires.
So by by changing it now or asking that it be changed, it doesn't, doesn't do us any good. I understand the argument, but it just doesn't do us any good.
It does because this new contract's effective currently. It's moving forward.
The argument is that that it was in the former.
Let's hear from Gary since he wrote the contract.
Okay, there you go.
Okay, I'm on.
Okay.
Um, I'm not sure what the issue is. I left the meeting to get some.
Yeah, Gary, so do you mind, Councilor?
Yeah, go ahead.
Uh Gary, so we're uh, we're voting on the contract for the assessor's office. On the second page, if you, I don't know, uh, do you have, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't have it in front of me.
I can read it for you. It says, further, in accordance with section five point one five of the city charter, the city assessor shall be responsible to the mayor and shall serve at the discretion of the mayor for an indefinite term. Does that make it sound like they have an ongoing contract forever?
No.
No, guys, that, I could have told you what that means is that 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 under the city, under this law or under this.
Let's get it, because is this guy saying something else?
All they mean is, no matter whomever that person is, they're gonna work on the discretion of the mayor. That doesn't mean what company you choose.
No, he's talking from like, as if this contract was indefinite.
Not Gary speaking.
Go ahead, Gary.
Okay.
Gary, go ahead.
So, seeing that the position is indefinite, it means that the city assessor, just like the corporation counsel, serves at the will and pleasure of the mayor. It does not, however, and you should also see the other language, that basically says that if the city assessor is not approved by the city council, just like in the case of the corporation counsel, the uh agreement will terminate unless the company comes up with another candidate acceptable to the city council and acceptable for appointment by the mayor and the city council. So by saying that the person serving as. So, by saying that the person serving as the assessor serves for an indefinite duration, it means that the person is an at-will employee or an at-will contractor, and they have no continuing tenure, just like for the corp counsel, there is no continuing tenure.
Okay, Gary, if we take off the four words for an indefinite term, is that, would that be still okay?
Um, I would prefer that it says that they're in for an indefinite term, but you, you could add the words indefinite and at-will to make it clear that they are at-will, because they are, by the city charter necessarily, they have to end up being at-will, all right?
The charter, Council Chair, does not say anything about at-will, and you're twisting the words. The words are clear, the contract has been approved two times, and it's still in effect currently today.
It's not going.
It's not expired, it's currently in effect today. And he could twist the words all he wants, but the language drafted by him is very clearly discretion of the mayor for an indefinite term. That means five point one five, and as we argued before, and we put forward back in June two thousand twenty-four, the position of assessor and the position of corporation counsels at the will of the mayor, once approved by city council, it's indefinite. Now, if it was never approved by city council from the beginning, that's a different story, it wouldn't be here. But once it's approved by city council, which it has been done, and I did not interrupt you, Mr. Miyaki.
You were not writing, you were telling the truth. You're getting paid a hundred and fifty dollars a year.
Gary, hang on, Gary.
And he is wrong.
Okay.
That's all I can say.
Uh, hang on, guys.
I'm gonna add that one.
Hang on.
There's a motion on the table.
Hang on, everybody just calm down for a second, just calm, that's just calm. I promised you on Facebook, when everybody's saying, oh, here goes the council again, just calm down. Gary, please go through the, I mean, Roger, please go through the chair, please.
I am, I'm putting you, sir.
Don't just say, you know, Council Chair, and continue to talk, wait for the permission to be granted, please. That's number one, number two. Add the word at-will and move on. Exactly. That's it, guys, we don't need to continue this bickering back and forth, what he said, it's over, it's easy. Very simple, would somebody like to add at-will to the contract?
Yes, yes.
Councilman Saab?
Yes, um, so we gotta put a new motion forward.
Well, let's keep the same motion, amend the contract.
We rescinded the motion, so we gotta.
You want me to do it again, since I did it the first time, Council?
Yeah. The addition of the contract at-will.
Council Chair, I'd like to move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approved the assessment contract renewal between the city and Anthony Fiocco Assessing Consultant, Inc. In addition, authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the contract on behalf of the city, which will expire June thirty, two thousand twenty-eight. Furthermore, authorize the mayor and comptroller or clerk to sign the necessary warrant and the treasure to issue payment from account one oh one, two oh nine, eight one eight zero zero zero, as outlined in eight dash A. And, and amend, uh, page second, uh, line sixteen, to add after the word term, add.
Indefinite.
At-will.
Indefinite, not.
No, add after indefinite term, at-will. Okay.
So why?
Council Chair.
Motion made by Councilman Ahmad, seconded by Councilman Saab. Are you rescinding it?
Yes.
Am I using?
Councilwoman.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, if I.
We're just going with Councilman Saab, because he approved it the first time.
Okay, well, you have to specify.
Council Chair, if I could hear the sentence, I, I just want that sentence to be read, and make sure that it makes sense.
Further, in accordance with section five point one five of the city charter, the city assessor shall be responsible to the mayor and shall serve at the discretion of the mayor for an indefinite term.
And shall be at-will.
And shall be at-will.
Period.
And shall.
And God.
Be.
At-will. At-will.
Okay. Motion made by Councilman Ahmad, seconded by Councilwoman Menilowski Maxwell. That appear, do you want me to.
That's fine, that's fine, that's fine.
Madam. Any more discussion?
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, Roger, thank you for the mistake, and now you're, you're all at-will.
You have to wait after you vote it.
The charter prevails, and it says it's indefinite.
Thank you.
It changes, so it still controls, and it shows.
The Commission on Disability Concerns Appointment.
Council Chair.
Councilman Saab.
I'm over at the Dearborn Heights City Council, concur with the mayor appointment of Philip Smith to the Commission on Disability Concerns, term to expire July twenty twenty-seven, as outlined in eight B.
Second. Motion made by Councilman Saab, seconded by Councilwoman Breyer. Any discussion? Seeing none, congratulations, Mr. Phil. Please state aye.
Aye.
Let's do that, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. Next. Yes. Yep, go ahead.
Thank you. Phil Smith, he's a marine veteran, and he's the father of Katie Smith and the grandfather of Joey Smith. I'm sorry, yeah, Phil Smith is a marine veteran, combat marine veteran, and he's the father of Katie Smith and the grandfather of Joey Smith, whose memorial will be tomorrow. I spoke with him several times in the last couple of months, years, or anyway. Um, he's also been put on the Veterans Affairs Commission, and he wants to know from the administration, what's up with the Veterans Affairs Commission? I don't know if that's something that I could communicate with Mariana tomorrow and find out, because he's, he's wondering, and he says, my name's now on the, on the Disability Concerns Commission. And he serves with the VFW under a disability concerns category there, so he's a really good candidate for this. I don't say that, but, okay, I'll, I'll talk to you tomorrow.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council Chair.
Thank you very much, Councilman, I echo everything Councilman wants to just said. Uh, next up is Human Resource Director, position salary increase.
I can leave for discussion?
No.
No.
All right, take it back.
All right, and then we're gonna read it?
No.
No, he's gonna read it, that on arrival. Thank you. Reports from city official, clerk senior, notice of public hearing for the two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six Corporation Fund Budget.
Council Chair.
Councilman?
I'm over at the Dearborn Heights City Council, authorize the public hearing for the proposed two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six Corporate Budget Fund for Tuesday, May sixth, two thousand twenty-five, and that the adoption of the budget be scheduled for Tuesday, May twenty-seventh of two thousand twenty-five, as outlined in nine A.
Second, motion made by Councilman Saab, seconded by Councilman Constant, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Councilwoman Breyer got it out first.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Next up is clerk senior, notice of public hearing for alley vacating Ford between Berwin and Norbourn.
Council Chair.
Councilman?
I'm over at the Dearborn Heights City Council, rescind the city council motion twenty-four dash four five three and approve the request to hold a public hearing scheduled for Tuesday, May sixth, at six P M. For consideration of an alley vaca.
Vacating.
Vacation, vacating. For the alley Ford Road between Berwin and Norbourn, as outlined, and nine B.
Second. Motion made by Councilman Saab, seconded by Councilman Constant. This is behind Al Sayin Meat Market, and we found out, all right, we found out that you actually have to have a public hearing before we can vacate an alley. And so there was a misstep, I won't blame anybody, but the good news is, our beautiful, amazing, wonderful assessor and clerk found us together. And, uh, we're, we're doing it properly, so thank you to our clerk, to our, our assessor, and, and, and for bringing this forward, and so we can properly do this. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. Next up is Council Chairman Badu and Crosswood High School Alumni Association Charitable Organization Verification.
Council Chair.
Councilwoman Menilowski Maxwell.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council moved that the request from the Crosswood High School Alumni Association within the city of Dearborn Heights, County of Wayne, be recognized as a nonprofit organization operating in the community for the purposes of obtaining charitable gaming licenses, be considered for approval as outlined in nine C.
Second. Motion made by Councilwoman Menilowski Maxwell, seconded by Councilman Ahmad. Any discussion? Uh, I will tell you that an organization reached out to me, and in order to be able to give away certain things for, you know, the five oh one C three to the, to the high schools, uh, it actually has to be mandated by the city legislators. And so this five oh one C three that wants to give back to, like, scholarships and award children from our district here at Crosswood, uh, they had, they, they following the proper steps, so I thank them for this, and, uh, hopefully this passes tonight. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. Next up, we have City Engineer Deeb, new fire station site.
Council Collection.
Look. What, Councilman Saab?
I'm over at the Dearborn Heights City Council, approve proposed site. Blank and authorize the initiation of design phase as outlined in nine D. Is it site number two?
We didn't choose yet, we're gonna choose.
That's, that's, that's why I left a blank.
This is proposed site blank. He, he's right, Councilman Saab's right there. You, can we get a second? We need to get a second on which one you're proposing.
Why not?
It's the recommendation, that it's number two, correct?
Okay.
So we can say.
Two A is Beach Daily Site.
Two A.
Uh, two A. Two A is Beach Daily.
Beach Daily.
And, and, and two B is Warren.
One is Warren, two is Beach Daily, two A is Beach Daily, but it's just north of the driveway. So we have a driveway to the maintenance yard, one on this side, one on that side. Because of the ability, as Councilman Wensel wanted to be able to expand, future expansion, to, to determine, to keep future expansions possible, the twenty-seven yard, we just, it's still on Beach Daily, just north of the driveway, as opposed to south of the driveway, closer to An Arbor Trail, if you will.
You mean?
It's, it's.
Doctor.
It's Beach Daily.
Okay. Okay, I'm gonna go with a motion by Councilman Saab, seconded by.
Second.
Councilman Constant. Um, I don't know which one we're choosing here, but I'm gonna go to listen to the Councilwoman Menilowski Maxwell.
Um, I have a question, I know where that location is, it's currently right by my home. What are they doing with all the wood pallets in a pile right now? Are they already beginning construction?
So, um.
Before we choose?
Three, so these pallets are temporary, uh, if you recall, last fall, uh, the county, um, environmental department came over and says that they found the Red Run drain, uh, that has been, that conveyed sanitary from Livonia to Detroit, and then it, it was discovered it was abandoned, but it was actually alive, and it happened to be inside the golf course, uh, pretty close to the front. So they hired a consultant to address and mitigate and remove that drain from dumping source, uh, what you see as equipment and construction pipes that were up on top also, um, um, uh, being used for that purpose. As of yesterday, I talked to the consultant, they're in the final stages, they're done, the work is done. Uh, they eliminated all that stuff that you saw, like, uh, chipping containers and pallets and stuff, it'll all be removed.
Because there's a big mound of pot, and also, too, um, after the storm the other day, that was all flooded, that's gonna be our new fire department flooding?
North, that, north of the, north of the, so it's outside the flood zone.
It was, it still was flooded, it was very badly flooded.
So that.
And I witnessed that myself.
This is the two A?
That's the south, no, that's two, go, go further down on your, uh, uh, material, further down. Further down. Wait till it loads. That's the site.
This is the site?
That's the site. Yep, north of the driveway, and so between, it's the same, on Beach Daily, just south.
Yeah, that was all flooded the other day.
Um, it is not in the flood zone.
That is one hundred percent flooded.
Yeah, it is.
One hundred percent.
I drove past there. And the right side, too, was flooded, well, that's Heinz anyways.
This right here, when we're, we're talking about on Beach Daily, right across from the homes that were recently at the practice field for Riverside Raven, right?
Right.
Mr. Deeb.
Sir, uh, uh, so there were two sites that were recommended by fire department, okay? So these sites were examined, beach or Warren Avenue, or what you have before you, I mean, unless there are other sites in the north side, I, I'm, I'm open, but for, for.
I hate to trade one problem for another. I mean, we've already got trouble with our homes.
This will be, this will be designed.
Current fire department, so.
It, it, look, I, what have I made, Councilwoman?
I'm done.
I, I just wanna say a couple of things here, Mr. Deeb.
Yes, sir.
First and foremost, you cannot build it, that is not buildable, okay? And let me tell you who told us. You were on the same meeting, when I was on that same meeting, when Wayne County said, you cannot build there, it's going to flood. That's number one, number two, I know you're gonna knock your head, but the reality is, it's going to flood.
Okay.
Okay? You're gonna tell me no, but in twenty years, all our kids are sitting here, they're gonna be dealing with the same exact thing.
Where would you?
We, 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 we're, we're, we're going backwards, guys.
Okay.
Okay, so let me tell you.
Okay.
This is a very tough decision, but it's a decision that we have to make. Just to say, hey, you know, we don't wanna build on the golf course, or we're gonna throw it across the street, and in ten, fifteen years, when the floor starts cracking and breaking the way it is right now, oh, we'll just deal with it, and hopefully the state will give us more money. No, man, we're putting people's lives in danger, why are we keep going backwards?
Okay, so.
Just hear me, hang on for a second, Mr. Deeb, I, I, I'm gonna let you speak. The truth is, you have three, you, you give us two options.
Yes.
Three options that only you guys wanted to see being done it. I think that the, the reality is, have we even considered looking at, one, somebody use Kenfield today? Maybe we expand Kenfield, hang on, hang on, you expand Kenfield, and you make the current fire station the complete parking lot. So you're not building on that anymore, you make Kenfield a bigger center, and you start utilizing it, and you have the fire station still there. But saying, hey, we're just gonna throw it in, in, in a place with no plumbing work, which is being flooded. I'm, I'm, I'm sorry.
All right, so three professional, four professional engineers looked at that site, all came with the same recommendations. That can be drained.
Was it Waytrim?
Work, no, no, they weren't even involved, Waytrim was not involved. It was G two, and it was the, uh, 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 other consultants, so, and myself. This site is, is, is workable. Now, the, the selection for that site, by the way, these were not the, the sites that we, the only sites we considered. The first, uh, option one was across the street on the county, uh, property, and the county, for a year, refused to give us that site. Um, uh, across the street from that, from that driveway, you have, you have an area that's part of the county parks, and, and that was high and dry, and it's accessible to Beach Daily, that's the preferred site. The county refused to give us that site. Uh, we took it all the way to the CEO of Wayne County, and they, they absolutely refused to give us that site. So we went back to option B, and option B was to look at property that's currently owned by the city. I, I'd just like to remind you, I didn't select those sites, the sites were selected by the fire department based on response time to the population, you're not listening to me, so it's.
How deep, how deep would be the flag?
The, the, we, we haven't designed it, I didn't wanna spend any money, just let me add one more thing. I'm working with a hundred percent design federal, uh, uh, grant, hundred percent. There's a half million dollar on the table, that we have spent all that time trying to select the site. And we, if I don't use that money, I'm gonna return it back to, uh, uh, President Trump, and we are gonna be without.
You know what, Mr. Deeb, that's not the city council's problem.
It's not.
It's not.
You know what? You guys cut that money almost three, four years ago, so don't come in towards last second like and say, well, if we don't use it, we're gonna.
It is not true, sir. It's not true.
When did you get it? Rashida Tlaib?
March of twenty-three and we had to go through the RFQ process.
Twenty twenty-five.
Listen to me. March twenty-three and we had to go, this is federal money, we had to do RFQ, which means interviews and selection. So, uh, and you can, you can have all you want. You, I, I'm, I'm making the recommendation based on the, the, uh, fire department selection of the area to serve the north end. It makes no difference to me where you put it. I just don't wanna lose the fund.
What's your deadline for that?
Why don't we, why don't we look at Field of Dreams?
Not big enough.
Why are you looking at Field of Dreams? I mean, you're going all the way that far back, now is to look at Field of Dreams?
All right.
Why don't you look at Field of Dreams?
I, I don't know.
I mean, we're using it for nothing. You're, you're still gonna keep the green space. You could push it away from all the homes. You could put it directly there, then you can actually build a park around there and make it a fa- a community that.
I will talk to the fire department. I'm not, I'm not, so, so the fire department brought some areas that they can respond to fire in the north end. And I took the engineering part. I just did the investigation. I'm not selecting sites. It makes, you know, I just. I'm just doing the, uh, the.
Who selected this site? The one right here.
Okay, so the, the response time, they gave me a, a, a z- zone. The fire department gave me, in order to respond in a timely fashion to the north end of Dearborn Heights, these are the areas that we need to consider. I looked at, uh, uh, options that are owned by the city and this is what we have. It, it makes.
So, Mr. Deeb, this is, this one and right here, is this, this is to the left of the golf, uh, to the banquet hall, right?
This is, this is, this is a prob- problematic site because, um, um, the council chair knows that, uh, we are currently looking at, uh, um, a possible shortage of parking in that parking lot. This is one of my options to expand.
Okay.
Um, I have, um, um, venues that are ready to open in two months. And, um, I'm looking at the, um, uh, uh, combination of required parking for that, for that development. Uh, we're short on parking. I also know that the, uh, schools are looking at sharing that some of our parking space. We are going to be in need of parking, so I do not recommend obligating that site for anything because that's my only fu- future expansion. You can't park on, um.
So just to be clear, that's Riverside to the right, then the golf course in the middle, then.
And then the neighborhood to the left and there is a, there is a sound, uh, there is a berm, a noise berm located on the west end of that green space, uh, which is currently still in place that is intended to separate, it's a separation between the, uh, parking area and the neighborhood. I do not recommend putting in a fire station.
So what about, what about this, uh, the site two?
Site two is south of that parking, so I was talking to the operator, the golf operator, and he said that after, uh, uh, March eleventh, comment by, uh, Councilman Wensel, he wanted to be able to res- preserve the ability to expand the, the golf operation to twenty-seven and later to thirty-six.
I agree with him.
Uh, and, and that, well, so what we have before you, the twenty-seven is a done deal. If we go with site two A, we can expand to twenty-seven. The thirty-six will have to, uh, do some modifications, uh, on the field to expand it. Doable? Yes. Um, is there a business case to, to go to thirty-six? I don't know on the golf.
Council Chair?
Yes, Council.
Uh, real quickly, I, I spoke with the former, uh, operator of the golf course and he, he told me that in the days he ran the golf course with thirty-six holes, the parking lot has never been more than half full. I agree. You know, so half of that parking lot is never used for golfing. I mean, uh, to eliminate a corner of that parking lot would not affect the golf.
What do you mean? You're gonna give them parking spots. We can build, we can, we could, we could engineer it so that there's some parking spots in the front for that.
Yeah, I mean, there's a lot of, there's a lot of green space there.
I agree.
Yes, Council Chair.
Councilwoman.
I have a question. Uh, Riverside, they're using that facility. Are they paying anything for the use of a parking area?
They're choosing to pick up for their kids.
You know, you have, sorry, uh, well, no, they are using it when they're pulling up. Do you want us to talk?
And when they go, well, the problem is, as he said, we have three businesses there. Two are about to open, one's there. We will be short, I believe, forty parking spaces.
Good news is we're out of, they're out of, they're out of, uh, uh, they're, they're out of school in the summer while people are golfing.
Yeah, but they're, the restaurant will be open, so will the hookah. And if they all happen to be open at the same time during the nine months that they're in school, then, then we have a serious issue. We would have to expand some more parking to the left in that burn area. Really.
Banquets are at night.
So, Council Chair. Council Chair, I, I like, Council Chair, I'd like to add, so the resolution to accept the grant for that was, uh, uh, finalized on September third, twenty twenty-four, so it hasn't been three years. It's been September twenty-four.
And when Rashida Tlaib gave us the five hundred thousand dollars.
They accepted it was on, uh, 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 resolution number twenty-four, four twenty-one.
What about when we get the fire station grant?
Fire station, so there are two. Actually, we have some for the design work and then some with state for the, for the.
How many, how many about the one that we, that we collected first for the design work that we were first collecting for? Cause I can pull that up for you if you'd like. Madam Clerk, can you pull that up for us?
Right there.
The one for the design work, cause I know that she just gave us an additional five hundred thousand dollars that they're referring to. But the original design work came in from the, from the original, uh, uh, money that, that Rashida first gave us.
It's, it's the same five hundred thousand. There's one five hundred thousand amount. And yes, just because she pushed through our application many years ago, the application process and the approval takes a long time. So really, the award that we received from Rashida Tlaib's office, actually awarding the grant, came on August twenty-seven, twenty twenty-four. That was the date and it was presented to council on September third for approval. So that was when we actually got the grant and from then on, we started the application.
Do you have the money now?
We have approval to use it. We never will see the money until we actually spend it. Again, it's a reimbursement grant.
Thank you very much. I, I, I could have sworn, I mean, I could be delusional, but I, I could have sworn Rashida gave it to us. My, I'm, I'm, maybe everybody's delusional right then. Um, no, the big check was a celebration after the fact, but it was given to us by Rashida almost three years ago, guys. And I'm gonna email Rashida and I'll share the email with you guys. Please do. Thank you.
All right. So again, uh, the, but this is, this is, has nothing to do with the site. I just wanted to make sure that I used that money before, before, um, uh.
Look, I'm gonna tell you right now, wh- what do you, I mean, why don't we hear from the council members? What do you think you would like to see the golf course? I mean, uh, the, the, the.
I'd like to see if we can have more choices.
That's a, that's a good one.
Council Chair.
Field of Dreams, where is that exactly?
Inster.
Inster Road.
Inster Road.
Why?
Inster between. Council Chair.
Yes. Let him finish. That counts one of my. Field of Dreams is, is between Inster and Ann Arbor Trail, right?
Yeah.
It's, and it belongs to the district, but.
Mr. Deeb, are you familiar with that Field of Dreams? No. I need, I need to, what, what, what I need to do, so before I say that, I know the location.
Field of Dreams is not only the city.
And I'm sure we can. Set back at the castle size. So what we're trying to do is build what we have today, four bay fire stations to accommodate large fire trucks, right? So I look at the, the, the circulation, how close it is to, to major streets, uh, easy in and out, you know, that kind of stuff, setback, uh, utilities, that, that sort of thing.
Council Chair.
Councilman.
So the thing here is that, yes, we need a fire station, but we also forget that we're putting public safety at risk. I mean, you gotta build this fire station for her. Somebody has a fire, a medical move. I mean, eventually a fire station, they're not gonna be able to work out of it. I mean, the more we delay it to try to this, uh, pick a spot and the longer this takes, it's, it's gonna affect, it's gonna affect the public. Public safety and respond, I mean. The fire, the, the fire station's falling apart.
Yeah, but we can't just rush it.
I, and I'm not trying to rush it, but, um, this has been going on for years and unfortunately, you know, there's issues in it with mold. It's not only that the structure is bad, it's also a health issue for the firefighters. The longer we hold on and delay it, I understand there's some people are hurt about the golf course and everything, to be honest with you, but it's serving tons of thousands of residents. But you also gotta take into consideration the firefighter's health and well-being. Now, if we go to the Field of Dreams and it comes back to the soil, they're, eh, 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 it's, it's not, it's not capable of holding the fire station. What do we do?
We didn't go there to know that.
But I'm saying, but what do we do? We're gonna keep going on and on and on and on?
No, Councilman, do you, I mean, do you not see the absence that they're giving us? A location that floods?
Do you have?
A, a location that, that, a location that floods and is also on a golf course, which we, I can tell you right now, we're not gonna build on.
I'm not disagreeing. What I'm saying is that the process is just taking way too long.
You know why?
Deeb, do you have a res- that response, uh, uh, the demographic response area? Cause we also don't wanna put one all the way on the other side of town where it's gonna take ten minutes to respond, somebody having heart attack.
So, so the circle, the response, the response time, which is how we determine where the location it needs to be, was given to us by, by the fire department.
Do you have?
Do we have that?
No, but, uh, I'm sure the fire chief is on, on Zoom. But, uh, they selected the quadrants, so I need to be in this quadrant to be able to respond to the population in that location. And that's how we started looking. And again, we selected Beach Daily because of that quadrant. And then Wayne County, you know, would have been better because it's a higher non, uh, uh, spot. Couldn't get it, um, um, I don't have enough money to go buy real estate somewhere else. So we looked at the, uh, golf course not to impact the operation. And here we are, we keep going back and forth and I, I, I didn't spend the design money because it's kind of, uh, fruitless to spend design on, on the property I don't, I, I, that I'm not sure where it's.
So Wayne County across the street wouldn't give us the property. Why?
Because they said they have, uh, plans, they wanna put a stable.
Stable with the horses.
They wanted to put a horse stable, well, among other things.
Okay, so then can we? Reach back out to them?
I, I, we, we went all the way to the CEO of Wayne County and then referred us back to the county, um, Patrick Cullen, uh, to the, um, uh, drink commission. Uh, there is a whole bunch of stuff that they told us, but that site, it's been sitting there empty for years.
We're gonna go there and we're gonna, we're gonna go back and forth on that. Then give us some more locations then. You're saying right now we're in time order, but then we're coming back.
I know, but I'm, 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 I'm also, what I'm saying is I'm not, I, I don't want it on the golf course, but I also don't want the firefighters if, with all the mold and God knows what else is in that building coming out of the ground.
We're having a discussion.
Well, I got a question.
That's what I'm saying though. The more that we, we tell them, hey, go search this site, and that site's not good, then what?
Well, I got a question. If we kick Warren, could we start right away?
Uh, so, so the, if you, so we do have the, so you guys approved in December the RFQs for all these spe- specialties, the services, the design, I think you approved the architectural firm. I did not give them the authorization to proceed because I need to, we need to agree on the location.
Let me ask you, if we go to Warren, if we go to Warren, we, we had a resident came out and spoke today from, you know, the Golf Human Association. And, you know, obviously, have we informed those residents that, you know, guaranteeing them that they won't flood? You know?
If you go on Warren.
If we build on that, on, on, on that phase on Warren, but not by, on the golf course, on Warren.
Okay. I mean, the site, the, the parcel A, um, again, the, uh, everyone I talked to, that site was wrong in every level. That is wrong from the circulation, it's wrong from parking, it's wrong from being close to the neighborhood. It's wrong on every level and I, I do not recommend that site. If you guys wanted to override all these professionals and do it, absolutely, it's your call.
Why don't we press it from here?
We have them in writing. That site is problematic. It's narrow and deep. You're gonna try to have fi- four bigs, fire engines trying to enter from that, from Warren Avenue. Uh, this site is, is not. I mean, is it doable? You, you guys can make that call, but I don't recommend it.
But so your only recommendation is to build on the golf course?
No, I'm recommending it Beach Daily. If you can convince Wayne County, absolutely, I'll be all for it. I, in fact, I prefer that. But I wasn't able, the mayor wasn't able.
Option.
Okay, so.
We're about going back to Kenfield.
Yeah.
Is that an option? Building on, it's almost.
So now my construction budget is pro- brought because now I need to prep the site, I need to pay for demolition, I need to pay for that.
No, keep Kenfield, build in the parking lot of Kenfield and when you, uh, knock down the fire station, you can make a parking lot there.
You know, I got a question on that.
Yeah, you just gotta show the fire station into a, I mean, the fire station to a parking.
So you move it to the parking lot and you make it parking.
I know, we're giving you some real good ideas.
Nah.
The, um, Camp.
I, I, okay, I, I.
Stable, remember Mike Mackey had to put so much cement in it. He had the same problem as the fire department, so we have the same problem in the parking lot if we build there.
At least we know now they can make sure the way they built it, they built it in a way that's not gonna sink.
I, I, I'll have to, so I haven't done a survey to find out if, if I can fit the footprint
Relax.
in, in the parking lot. I don't know if I can do that, but I, I can look at it. Um, I mean, we can look at it. I, I, I just hate to use that money that with the limited funding for, to start studying options. I can do that.
Okay, Councilman, uh.
Are you confident that the, the area that, that we talked about off of Beach Daily can be made so that it won't flood and then?
Yes, sir.
The engineer properly so that it?
I need to extend, I need to extend, uh, utilities to that area, but, um, um, I'm sure we can address it, yes.
Council Chair?
Yes, sir, Councilman Wanso.
The, the site up on, uh, Warren, west of the parking lot, I know it's, that'd be, um, you know, at least a hundred feet, maybe more. Um, you spoke about the footprint of the fire station, the, the existing fire station, that footprint as far as on Beach Daily, that can't be more than hundred fifty feet at the most.
So, but I don't wanna build it up to the residence backyard. So I'm trying to give, so, so if you look at that location, Councilman, it's, it has a buffer, a, a noise berm to try to protect that neighborhood from the existing operation. If I eliminate that, I'm going to put a fire station. I don't have a problem doing that. It's just not a good site. Uh, furthermore, that is my only expansion if that, if, if the venues open at the golf course and they are successful. The only option I have to expand parking is that green space. And if I take it now, I'm going to be shooting myself in the foot. I have no place to expand.
I swear, I promise you, I can promise you right now, you're never gonna have, you're never gonna have that many parking being used at the same time at the golf.
Um, Council, uh, even, even if you go, now, I, I had that from the, from the, uh, building department. My building department tells me today, if we, with the entire parking space open, they're short on parking based on what they just built today. So even today, without any events or without the schools being taken the section, they are short on parking today.
Why would they have, why were they allowed to expand that big?
Becau- well, well, because, because they, I don't know. So, so if that place.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Menalowski suggested it.
I mean, I don't know, I'm, I'm, I'm just, I, I, I checked through every department to make sure that I'm not making the wrong decision.
So Deeb, I, I do agree with you with this site. I mean, it's very close to the homes, to the left. I mean, if you look at it, I mean.
You could build a wall.
It's in their backyard, but imagine every time they wanna leave, they wanna put the siren on. You wanna live next to the fire station and hear that siren going back and forth two times a day?
Well, they don't, they don't.
Hold on, yeah, they don't.
Hold on, hold on.
They don't.
I'll tell you even.
Well, what they do, Beach Daily, they do all the time.
Yeah.
They got houses across the street there too, though.
Guys, they have. I know, but why, I mean, just saying, I mean, I.
I know, I thought of that.
I think the best way is just to.
Build a wall, fifteen foot high wall like they do on expressways.
Well, right now, there's houses across the street from the fire department. They hear it all the time.
And they, and they, and they. They do a very good job at just turning the lights on and turning, and then they put the sirens on. They usually, usually, you know, they do a very good job at that. They know how to really keep broke, you know, how to really kind of teach this, men and women.
With, with Council Chair, you know, now with the, um, with the current fire location, if they're, if they're leaving Beach Daily, going down Warren, right by them houses, they don't turn their sirens off. You know, you know, I mean, they still have them running.
Guys, if it's an emergency, it's emergency. You chose to live.
Council Chair, it seems those three sites were not agreeing, any, any of them. So it seems like everybody somehow liked Kenfield. So can we look into Kenfield? I, I, I don't know. If, if I'm wrong, please let me know. If you guys are okay with Kenfield.
I love Kenfield.
You guys are okay with Kenfield?
I am. We own the property.
Okay, let's move on. Let's look at Kenfield.
And you know what? We can, we can kind of manipulate the actual Kenfield Center, expand it a little bit.
And keep it, uh, no, we have to demolish.
No, we don't.
Since the people across the street are used to the siren, you just give it that Kenfield.
So, let's, let's, let's refer this back to the administration and let's take a look at this site. Uh, Mr. Deeb, I wanna thank you though, for real. I know that there's a lot of back and forth on this, but.
I wanna, this is a critical project for us. I don't wanna lose the funding. I have a hundred percent grant. I truly don't wanna.
How much grant do we have?
How much?
Five hundred thousand dollars.
Number of twenty twenty-five.
Well, I'm, I'm hoping. It's not, it's not linked to, uh, federal ARPA because I need to use it by twenty-six.
Can we jump on Kenfield right, real quick?
Uh, what, what I need to do, so the best thing we have currently is I have those, uh, as need or contracts that you approved the RFQ. So we can start looking at, I need to core the pavement, look at the, uh, boring, find out what the soil conditions are. If, if I do have the same, um, uh, what, um, uh, junk that we have currently in place, so I mean, all these things, it probably take at least a month between, between, by the time you mobilize, send someone out there, core the pavement, get some soil sample, analyze them, get the report back. Find out what the soil bearing, uh, uh, pressure is, what, you know, if I can put a building and what it will take. Uh, doable, yes. Um, uh, we'll try to rush it as much as we can, but, um, yes.
Okay.
Yeah. But about Field of Dreams, do you want me to consider that?
I mean, if there's drainage, because there, from what I'm hearing, there was a school there and they had to pare it down, but yeah, look into it. I mean, really.
Those two sides, look at them.
I mean, for me looking at it, I think it's too far, but.
Ask the fire department.
Fire department, if that's, if that's feasible for that location.
Way too far, are you?
You know, also the, the, uh, campsite, you know, I, I have a friend that's an engineer. He said, you could build on anything. You just drive your piles down deeper. I mean, your, 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 where your foundation. I mean, you build it on, you could, that's what they did, uh, right next to the Detroit River Renaissance Center. Those pile, those pilingings are driven way down the bedrock.
You know, and I, I think Councilman Sob once said that too, like, there was a way, like, you could still build an old.
You could build on any site.
Yeah.
If money was no object, but my problem is the money is an object and we also have the ten, ten million dollars that we were locked in with, um, 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 um.
Mr. Deeb, guys, let's, let's hold up for a second.
State.
Ten million dollars is still a lot of money, man. A lot of money.
Not enough.
Hey, man, West N F S by their fire station today, they're putting the roof on. Same money, same budget, same everything, same, uh, same, uh.
I'll put it out to bid. It's going out to bid, absolutely.
Okay, so are we referring this back to administration to look at the two sites?
Yeah, yeah, it was his motion.
Councilman Sob motion. Councilman Sob?
I wanna refer it back.
Uh, take a look at the two sites?
Yeah.
Thank you. Uh, is that gonna be seconded, Councilman Constant? Yes. Yes, alright, I amend their motion to refer back to look at the two sites, Kenfield and Field of Dreams.
Well, and get some assurance that.
Yeah.
Alright. Beach Daily site that we can build, none of us have the expertise to say, oh, we can't make it, so it doesn't.
Yeah, yeah, let's, let's just, let's just go ahead, because we spent a lot of time on this one, you know, so referring this back and just get some information. Thank you, Mr. Deep, but again, I mean, somebody that's, you know, you you're kind of jumping through these hoops, I know the hard work you're doing, so we really appreciate you.
Thank you.
Next up, city engineer deep safe street for all action plan projects.
Council chair.
Councilman. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Guys have a motion carry. Next up, city engineer deep safe street for all SS four A action plan.
Start council chair.
Yep.
I'm sorry, I moved to Durbin Heights City Council, approve the safe street for all SS four A action plan tasks. Uh, task assignment between the city and Waitrim for a total cost of four hundred ninety six thousand five hundred dollars and authorize the mayor. And the clerk to sign the contract on behalf of the city, in addition, authorize the mayor and the controller or clerk to sign a necessary warrants. And the treasurer to issue payment from account number one oh one four four zero nine eight one zero one three as outline ninety.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Saab, seconded by Councilwoman Breyer. Uh, my question here, and I know I said this, and I know George sent out an email. The GL account, is this coming from the grant money that we received for three hundred ninety five thousand?
Okay, so this is a, I I don't know what email you're referring to, but.
It's yours, it's yours, city engineer deep safe, yeah.
Yeah, so this, this money is, this is coming from, so we have, we have the grant and we also, it's a twenty eighty. Um, our um, uh reimbursement, so we get eighty percent. And the twenty is is authorized in, back in um August of twenty twenty four. We authorized it to use some of the uh act fifty one money, but yes, so it's.
So it's not, it's not coming from the fund balance?
No, no, no.
All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, motion carries, please, I asked, I know at the last meeting, moving forward. Every single account number needs to tell us what the balance is, where we're getting the money from, and 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 how much is being used. But moving forward, that information needs to be given to us.
Okay.
Alright.
Next up is city engineer deep twenty twenty three street paving repair contract, change order number two, addition one street recommendation.
Council chair.
Councilman Saab.
I'm over the Durbin Heights City Council, approve the change order number two for the twenty twenty three street break in contract. Uh, I'm sorry, street paving repair contract to add an Arbor Trail, as outlined enough.
Second. Motion made by Councilman Saab, seconded by Councilman Ahmad, any discussion on that? I will say thank you for this, I mean, the people of 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 the area, University Village, River Oaks, and in their group chats. I drove.
It's bad.
It is embarrassing, not bad, it's embarrassing. So I'm, I'm, hopefully this gets passed and we can promise the residents that we're doing our due diligence. All in favor?
Council chair, I have one question.
Yes.
Uh, just real quick, eight inch sidewalk concrete, pardon me, it's an eight inch concrete sidewalks?
No, the intersection, the uh, the um approaches are eight inches.
That's not a sidewalk, that's a, a, a.
Yeah, it's an approach.
Is being done, I'm sorry, council chair, is the work gonna be started this summer?
So, so it it it's for this year, uh but it, we're breaking it into two halves, it's such a long stretch. And it's a very challenging, and part of the reason why we're asking for a m- major company to do it, it's a single lane in each direction. It also has a a bridge deck over the uh.
If if you don't mind me asking.
Yes, sir.
I hate that I have to do this, but Councilman Wanso, former Councilman Wanso and I had a good conversation about this.
You must have.
Uh, I mean, Musket. What did I say? I am so sorry, I'm thinking of Wanso. I'm sorry, former Councilman Musket. I I'm so sorry, uh but we had a great conversation about this.
Yes, sir.
And, you know, I I see Waitrim here, I don't, you know, I don't wanna go in the back and forth, the truth is, Waitrim was in charge of Wilson. Waitrim was a lot of these different areas before you came on board, Wilson, you know, it's been eight years, seven years, it looks like crap. Not saying Van was here at the time, Waitrim was in charge, you know, Waitrim was in charge of the fire station that the subcontractor, a bunch of people. Uh, but but that's here nor there, and I don't wanna get into the we- the weeds of things. On, moving forward, on Ann Arbor Trail and any other roads that we do with any company that we hire, right, because they do the work and then like. The next council member deals with it, and the next mayor deals with it, and they're like, oh, the former administration did it, the former council did it. Let it, you know, let it be known. The rods need to be folded and submitted to city council. The 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 measurement, with a tape measurement of the thickness of the, of the, of of the concrete needs to be measured and submitted to city council. Not because, oh, Mr. Deep was there, or Mr. Deep's, I'm not saying you, I'm just, or Waitrim, or the the guy, Mr. Jamal, that works inside, no. The taxpayers' money, they elected these people, let them be the one to decide whether it was properly done or not. Because Wilson was also once done that way, and it looks like crap, and it needs to be redone.
I I, yeah, we we do that on a regular way, we do have inspectors.
I've never seen anything.
I don't, I don't, I can't speak for what happened in the past, but going under this watch, we actually have pretty good handle on what's out there. If you can find.
Not that I'm, I'm like, I'm engineer, send me a picture of the rod, show me across the entire street every time they pour, show us that.
Okay.
Show, like, show us the timestamp photo that says, hey, we put metal rods across the board and we didn't put, you know, four inches, we actually put our six inches of concrete. And show proof to the council.
Do a presentation, how about that?
No, no presentation.
Sure, pictures.
Yeah, perfect, and 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 just show us as processes going on. I don't wanna hear, oh, you know, they poured, and I don't know why they poured, and, you know, we didn't see the metal rods, but they're there, I promise you. Councilman Saab, before he was on council, show proof that there was no metal rods.
We have, okay, we'll show pictures.
Council chair, Mr. Deep has been sending us updates, so he can send them through the updates too.
Yeah, just, you send us the photos.
Alright.
Hopefully it's Durbin Heights and then another city.
We'll put, we'll put uh pictures in.
I wanna see you in every picture.
And I only do this for the protection of the residents.
Fine, that's fine, I don't.
Okay.
You're good.
All in favor, please state aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, I was supposed to amend that motion, but it's okay. Spending a lot of time here. Next up, Controller Shepard, Controller's Office project amendment, council chair. Councilman, Constance? Controller Shepard, nothing, dead on arrival.
Council chair.
Yes.
You know, just for, you know, for my information, the residents, is she still employed with the city?
Uh, I have not been told anything, I I mean, I've been told by uh somebody that she was walked out earlier, but I'm not sure.
She's still employed with the city, I'm sorry, council chair, um, she is still employed with the city, she did put in her resignation. She's gonna be leaving shortly, but she is still with the city.
Is she like still here with us?
Yes.
She online?
I don't know if she's online.
She's never missed a meeting, but she had a budget amendment.
She might be listening, but again, uh I wanna speak on this item, because I wanna reiterate that this is fringe benefit. That all the non-elect, I mean, all the non-union employees and elected officials get. So it is a contractual item, we found the money to cover the ten thousand dollars, sure, we can share it with everybody. I thought the elected officials had it since it applies to you as well. Um, but again, regardless of her leaving or not, this was a benefit that is provided to her as an employee. Um, so again, it wasn't in the budget, because we didn't know anyone was gonna be taking advantage of it last year when we built the budget. Um, so we're just asking for the budget amendment to cover that contractual obligation.
In the budget, because she wasn't with us at the time when we were approving the budget.
And we didn't know who was gonna, I mean, that she was gonna come and that she was gonna take advantage of that benefit, but it is a contractual mandated item.
Thank you. Next up is nine H Director Dancy. Please, hang on, guys, we, it was dead on arrival, we move on, give us the backup with with the contract, show everything in there. And I'm sure the council can make its decision then, just as information, if she does leave, she has to pay it back, just, just for. Thank you, next up is Director, is deep, guys, please, it's A fifteen, we still have.
No.
Twenty one more pages to go.
When H and I were recommended to just not do it, no.
Hang on, councilman, please. Thank you, next up is nine H D P W Director Dancy Wayne County C S O retention basis payment.
Council chair.
Councilwoman Breyer.
I'll make a motion that the Durbin Heights City Council approves the payment of Wayne County C S O retention basin operations and maintenance payments. For a total of three million, seven hundred and seven thousand, seven hundred eighty six dollars and sixty two cents. In addition, authorize the mayor and controller or clerk to sign the necessary warrants. Treasurer to issue payment from account five nine two dash five three seven dash nine two seven dot one zero zero is outlined in nine H.
Second, motion made by Councilwoman Breyer, seconded by Councilman Constant, any discussion?
Council chair, can we table this?
Uh, before we do that, I'm gonna open up discussion, I got a few things I wanna say, three things, and I'll keep it simple and sweet. If Wayne County wants their money, come here, come talk to us, three point seven million dollars, hey, you want it, come to the city council meeting, we'll talk to you, that's number one. Number two, I also heard from Mariana that this number was different, it's not three point seven million dollars. But, you know, she said it was more, I mean, and she said it was less, now I'm seeing that it is three point seven million dollars.
Almost three point eight.
You know, three point eight million dollars, uh and 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 lastly, you know what? If they deserve that money, they also deserve, maybe we can get something out of them, and we can negotiate something, instead of saying, you know what? Uh, we're just gonna give them the three point eight million dollars, maybe we tell them, you know what, hey, come look at the Ucross Creek a little bit more. I mean, it's not, it's not, it's not bad to ask, right, you missed the opportunity that you don't ask, go ahead.
Sorry, when you brought it up, it was three point nine, and we knew that there were a few invoices that had already been paid, so it was lowered from three point nine to three point seven. That was what I corrected you when you mentioned it last time.
Thank you.
Um, additionally, the county doesn't need to come and explain anything, because we have a contractual agreement, which is in the backup to your agenda item. So this is an agreement that has been in existence for a very long time, there is a very rich history uh behind it, as to why this payment stopped in two thousand sixteen. Mr. Miyaki was the one negotiating at the time, I'm sure he has a little bit more history with regards to that. But ultimately, the invoices are due, the contract has been signed and agreed by the city. Um, with regards to the money that is owed to us, that is true, the county does owe us money. But it is not with regards to this particular contract, is because of another item, unless I'm missing something that Gary Miyaki might know, but we've had conversations with them. And yes, they do owe us money for an over capture of a C S O E P A, uh but that's a completely separate topic than the one that we're presenting today.
Thank you.
I just, again, we have contractual obligations, so there are certain things that we have to pay, and that's why it's been presented to you at the time. We have received a demand letter from the county to pay this, it has been in our audit books from, for years. Um, so again, we've been aware of the situation for, for as long as I can remember, and at this point, we just wanna. Start over with the county, pay them off what they're owed, and uh move on from there.
Water, water account number, sorry.
It's from the water fund, so just so we're all aware, um it's not hitting the general fund, so it is hitting the water fund, which does have the funding in there. And again, it's been in our audit as a liability, and it's going to offset that liability, so moving forward, that liability, liability will go away. Because we will have paid it, um so.
I got questions, two questions for you, Mariana.
Yep.
My first question to you is, when we also brought it up and you said, you know, I said three point nine, you said three point eight, gave us about a hundred thousand. You also said that you've had this money being put in a restricted fund for many, many years and that we're not using it, now we're saying it's coming out of the water fund.
It's in a liability restricted account in the water fund, so yes, it is restricted, it is a liability that has been set by the auditors. Every single year with the amount that is due.
My, my second question to you is, the same way Wayne County said, I demand you guys to give us this money. But we know that they owe us money, where's the demand letter from us saying, we know you owe us money, why don't we just cancel each other out? That I'm saying, okay, well, I'm gonna pay you this, then you're gonna come back and you're gonna pay me this, why, cuz you know what's gonna happen with the other money that they owe us? It's gonna go back into the general fund, and God knows how it's gonna be spent. Why don't we just, why don't we just keep the water fund where we know we have money in it, come back and say. We're not gonna pay for this, until you tell us exactly how much we owe, if it's two hundred, three hundred, four hundred thousand dollars, let's not put it in the general fund, so that we could try to make ourselves. Look all pretty inside our general fund and say, let's keep, instead of taking money from our, our uh water fund. Why don't, why don't we just like stop robbing Peter to pay Paul?
Again, I don't understand what you you're implying by robbing Peter to pay Paul, this is a water expense, it's a water contract, it's always been in the water budget. So that's where this expense belongs. With regards to the money that is owed to us, we have had that conversation, the county can't release the money yet, because that debt hasn't been paid in full yet. So until they pay it, they cannot release the money that has been overcharged and.
Which one did they owe us?
They always, um, I'm so sorry, I don't have it on top of my mind, but I believe they owe us about. A million seven hundred, something like that, um.
What is the money owed for?
An over capture on an E P A C S O, that we were paying them for our services and they overcharge our community. But that doesn't mean that they're done with the project and other communities are still paying into it, so again, until the project is done, they won't be able to release the funds. So we, we're in conversation with them with regards to that, one hundred percent, we could demand a demand letter that on this date, when this. Contract is done, we're gonna get our money back, that is the next step that we should definitely move forward with. But again, they're separate issues to a certain extent, um if you wanna try to combine them and discuss that with the county, you're. You can try that, we attempted to, but that's how it was explained to us.
Who did you guys talk to?
A lot of them, there was a big meeting, but Elmi Castillo was there, um, I don't recall the names. Their lawyer has been involved and in communications, Patrick Cullen was there, three people from their finance department was there. Um, so, so yeah, there's, there's a lot of communications that we've been having with the team.
I'd like to add, I'd like to add one operational item, just so you can just, obviously, this is a forty year contract that was done thirty one years ago. Ninety four, Ruth Kenfield and Ed McNamara signed it, it's been amended three or four times. We made payments up until nine, uh uh two thousand and fourteen or two thousand and sixteen.
Sixteen.
So we made payment to two thousand sixteen, but just keep in mind one thing, this, uh while I disagree with the whole concept, why we did what we did. In ninety four, however, we did sign a forty year agreement, so it's an agreement in place that stated, among other things. And I put that in my two page, and I, trust me, I had to read a lot of history to try to figure out.
Thank you.
Because, because it, it really is mind boggling why we did what we did, but in, among other things, we pay Wayne County. To operate an R T B, a retention, retention treatment basin located right behind, I had to find that spot. Quite a bit, cuz it's secret, it's behind the um, uh hype center, there is a, 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 a retention basin underground, which basically. Ca- uh a capture overflow, so it doesn't charge uh uh Rossors into the, into the Rouge River. And treat it and send it, so what we were doing, we're paying the county, the county has met all their obligations, unfortunately, well. Fortunately, whatever, so they have done the work since the, the, the contract was entered into. So to say that, uh even as late as, as yesterday, the operator was discharging and they're sending us the report, so they have met their obligations. We, on the other hand, stopped making annual payment in twenty sixteen. And I can't find in these records a reason for, a good reason, why we stopped making the payment. But um um in that contract, there is a, a clause that stated, we can walk away from it with a two year notice. If we find someone else to operate the R T B for us, and apparently in twenty fourteen, exactly two years prior to the twenty sixteen. Um, um, we, the city of Durbin Heights, hired a, a solicited uh 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 company to operate that treatment basin. And had a, a resolution passed by the council and signed by the attorney, by, by the mayor back then. Uh, Mayor Palatko and the uh the C E O of that company, uh Waitrim, but they never implemented, so we do have a fine. We found a company to operate it for Wayne County and never told the county, and we stopped payment in sixteen. So I, I mean, we can, we can challenge it, but I, I mean, I'm not an attorney, I even asked anyone for an opinion. But it is a valid, hundred percent valid contract, they have met all their obligation, they operated the retention, they still do today. Um, and we just stopped making payments.
Council chair.
Yeah, councilman.
Could we amend it to take out the, you know, the, the two point eight million dollar liability we have with them? And and re- represent it or send it back to administration, just for the contract money that we owe? This, this, this three point seven, that includes a two point eight million dollar liability.
One million seven hundred. But I, what we can do, so I think what's happening here, uh Councilman Wanso, and I, that's if I may. The, the city is saying, let's pay this from the water fund, our, our, our G L account low. We'll get back a million dollars that we could put into that G L account, I think that's what's happening here now. What we can do is we can amend this budget and say, we can do that, under the condition that we don't, this money is not released. Until it's confirmed that, you know, or in writing that Wayne County will release our money as well, our basically one point one million.
Council chair, if I, what do you think?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, it's hand in hand, if we don't wanna pay them and then say, we'll pay you, we'll pay your money, it's six, nine months.
And then, and then that one point one should, I'm just saying one point one, but so it's one point seven hundred, or is it one point seven? Is it someone, uh?
The difference between the liability and the amount that is done?
How much do they owe us?
Oh, I can love it, sure.
I mean, I, I think that money should also kind of be like.
Should be. Council chair. Be separated, these two things should be.
I would wanna make sure that the county acknowledges the debt, and last time I spoke with them, they were like, well, we don't owe you. Anything, so we'd have to verify the debt is real, and they owe us. And they may have done that since I talked to them in the end of January, but I don't wanna be misleading you. Or saying that how this is guaranteed, okay, um I'd like to see it in writing. And I'd like to see an agreement that when it is settled this, that they say there's no other invoices that we forgot to give you. Or any other amounts out there that's, that may be popping up and put us more at risk, it has to be finalized, it both have to be. And we have to negotiate that separately, that's what they insist, but I don't see them saying, and maybe they have, Mariana, I might have missed it. Uh, that we definitely owe you this money, probably.
Then, then I don't, then I, I don't think I'm ready to give them their money then, you agree?
I, I, I'm not gonna say what to do, however, it's separate, as Miyaki said, it's separate. However, and Mariana knows, have they confirmed and acknowledged that they owe us this money?
So we haven't officially received confirmation from the county that they owe us this money. But it is also a liability on their audit, and the liability on their books that we have to confirm as well. Is one point three eight six six hundred and two, so that's the liability on their books of the over capture for the E P A levy. Um, so if you would like to get a letter with that number stating that they owe us that money, we can also do that. Which I said, we're also having conversations about that separate topic as well.
Let's, let's refer this until we can get something in writing showing that they know that they owe us and that they're gonna release it to us, and then we can come back and give them their money.
Correct, there's no way they can say they don't know, because it's on their audit, so.
Okay. Okay, so.
Recommend we refer it back.
Okay, refer back to administration, uh Councilman Constance, do you approve?
Yes.
All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, respect this council for that decision there. Human Resource Director Agnew, Durbin Heights Police Officers Association contract. Uh, anybody, and let's refer this one back to administration.
Council chair.
Yeah, can, if we can get a vote, so we can refer it back to actually a study session.
A study session and a um.
I wanna have a, I wanna have a study session. Let's refer this nine I. Hang on guys. Let's have a, let's refer this back to a study session, including, I wanna see the pension board there. And I'd also like to see Plant Moran Gap and whomever our controller is. Well, I need that motion to be read that way. Okay, council chair?
Councilman Ahmad. I'd like to make a motion to refer uh nine I, uh Dearborn Heights Police Officers Association contract uh back to uh to administration to set up a study session.
Two A study session.
Two A study session. What do you want?
With the controller?
With the controller.
Plant Moran Gap.
Plant Moran Gap.
And the pension board.
And the pension board.
Including the, including the c- command, uh patrol officers.
And including the union. Who do you want for, if the controller's not here, we don't have an anymore. Who do you want?
I mean, we want a com- I hope there's gonna be a controller.
Maybe the deputy?
Yeah, somebody from the game.
Nobody from the control in the office.
Okay, let's refer that. Uh and then motion made by councilman Ahmad, can we get a second? Yeah, well, I'm gonna open it up to this.
Oh, okay.
Seconded by councilman uh constant, any discussion? Go ahead, councilman, once off.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Does this, does this kinda action require an actuary because it?
That's why I sent the pension board. We're gonna take it to a study session. So I, I spoke with Lori. I, I, just for full disclosure, if I may, councilman, I got on phone with the, the command officer, Brian. I got, I, I'm sorry, the patrol officer reunion president, Brian Sneer. I got on a phone call with councilman Ahmad and I got on a phone call with Michelle and Brian, who is from Plant Moran Gap. And uh, you know, we had a really good conversation. And I believe Shan- Shannon Shepherd also sent an email saying that during these negotiation, uh I believe Roger was in there and another attorney and there was nobody from finance in there. Um so that's, that's alarming, you know?
No, council, that's not correct. Uh H R has been in there and uh count and and from the firefighters' contracts and the police officer contract. The uh H R and finance was aware of it and know whether they come or not, I can't make people come. But these contracts are based on one that was done six months before the firefighters and based on the firefighters' contracts that had Cindy King, that had Margaret uh Hazlitt involved, and is followed subsequent to that effect. We're looking at one percent difference between the four percent and five percent. We have to budget in paying.
You have the money for?
And paying for the police officer. We have to budget. It was budgeted at time and looked at.
Hang on, Roger, I'm not fighting you, man.
No, I'm just saying that.
Do we have the money for it?
I don't know. I'm not the assessor. I'm not the uh person. Yeah, I think we should. We should, uh you get plant rain. Have you seen a report saying we don't?
Yes, time around told us.
Weird. No, I didn't say told you. I said, have you shown it? Okay, if you look at the emails and you look at what mu- what money has not been taken out. If you look at the payments that made to three officers that didn't come on board, if you make, look at the factors of the two ordinance officers that haven't come on board. If you look at the other factors of the contracts of the police officer Swope and and Hart, did you factor that all in?
Yes.
No, you didn't. It's, it's not there.
Council chair?
Hang on, timeout, timeout, timeout.
I asked, when I, when I asked last meeting to, to Mariana about, do we have extra money from this? And he said, we've exhausted all of our money, including Swope, because he told me the buyout.
I get it. I get it. I understand what you're saying, but you are, you are leader here, right? So where is the written documentation showing that we haven't cut out any other chances? And when we talked about it last meeting, we talked about cutting back on some payments, other things that should have been taken out of the budget.
Hang on, one second. Good afternoon, council members. I spoke with council chair last week. He asked me to send this information to all the council members. This is related to agenda item nine I, the police officer's contract. He and I spoke a bit more in length about this, but basically this is going to take over one million from the fund balance right off the top since it is a retroactive for last year and this year. I've attached my basic calculations showing how I arrived at the number. My recommendation is for you to not approve this contract. Right. I also will like to reiterate that no one from finance was involved in these negotiations. No one informed me that the negotiations were going on. And I did find out about the T A until well after it was already signed. My understanding is the only people at the table were former chief swoop, corporation counsel, whomever that is, and a third party labor attorney. H R was not even in these negotiations, although I was informed that he was at least told about it.
Okay, now let me.
And that is why I'm hesitant to be able to attend. If you have any questions or any need to.
H R Cindy King was involved in all the negotiations. The fo- the, the next controller that came involved was all the negotiations. Deputy Controller was involved in negotiations. Now you have from August, I guess when this, this controller came in board, you have contract negotiations. You have officers showing up to city council meetings, arguing about the contract, protesting the contract. You hear all the emails back and forth. H R admittedly is informed. So you're gonna tell me as a controller, you don't check the past contract? You don't check the firefighters' contract? You don't see the percentage that we have to match the firefighters when we're dealing with comb and poem?
Okay, Roger.
The email, but the email is not accurate, it's not true.
Roger, Roger, slow down. Hang on. I just want you to know that Shannon.
I know and I responded to her. And I responded to her in other emails and said, that doesn't make any sense, right? Right.
Go ahead.
No, I'm not finished, but you keep cutting me off. What I'm saying is that you can't say as a controller, I come in and take over a job. I don't check all the eight union contracts we have. I don't check on the status of them. I don't keep in contact with H R. I don't know what's going on. It's not in a secret, not in a vacuum. So when you, you're doing that and you say something like that, it's irresponsible.
Why are you in the meetings then?
Why am I in the meetings? Because it's important for us to be there to look at the t- the terms and the contractual terms and the representations of the city. That's why I'm there. And tha- and and not only that, when I sit in a contract, I listen to what sick time is being taken, when vacation time is being, when, when it's being combined and the advantage and disadvantage to the city. And what our, and and overseeing what our lawyers do in terms of negotiations, which we sometimes disagree. And I bring back, I always involve the mayor, so the mayor knows everything that's going on.
Why isn't the mayor in there?
The mayor could come if he has to or he doesn't. He's informed. H R's informed. H R and controller work together.
Okay, I'm gonna give it to councilman Saab, then we're gonna make this.
I'm gonna say two things. Roger, I'm a finance expert. Second, this contract was negotiated in bad faith. This contract was literally put in place uh to try to string some people in and over to make it look like we got the money. I mean, we didn't even see nothing. I remember a certain officer telling us before former chief Swoploff saying, you guys should jump on. This is the best you're gonna get, the best you're gonna get feeding it. Where's the money coming from? You guys are asking for budget amendments. Where's this money coming from? The fund balance, right? Because you're saying that we're not hiring two officers that we designated money for, or three. We're not hiring them, but that money's still part of the budget for those officers. Not for, to add on to new contract.
Let's, let's, let's.
Go to the chair, please.
I'm not done. Roger, you, I'm, I, you know, I'm gonna give you no word for, for interrupting, honestly. Next meeting, I'm gonna put in a word for Roger for interrupting.
I appreciate it.
Thank you, guys.
When, when, when they come and say that, the last time we were here, we said, how many officers do you want? The chief is sitting, we're fully staffed. We're overstaffed. We got too many cars. That was a blunt lie. Go back and watch the budget meetings. Go back and watch the budget.
Don't respect each other.
I don't need to respect anybody. I'm just telling you, I'm speaking facts. No, no, he keeps interrupting. I didn't interrupt him. He keeps interrupting. This is all to address himself that he did something or he negotiated something. He's not a labor attorney. We pay fifteen other law firms because of him. Where are they at? Come speak on behalf of these contracts.
I don't know, but listen, we got a table to, to send this back to, uh to a study session. Hopefully this can happen next week, Tuesday. George, let's get with me and see if that's available. Um. Okay, we'll, we'll, we'll talk about it, but we'll get, we'll connect with each other in the morning. Um councilman Ahmad seconded by councilman Conson to refer this back.
For a study session.
For a study session.
Refer to.
For a study session.
For a study session.
Okay? Um all in favor, please state aye. Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. Thank you, guys. This is a long meeting. I T director Cooper Parks and Recreation Director Zabinski, purchase and payment of recreational digital display.
What's his name? Council chair?
I keep seeing Zabinski. I don't know why.
Council chair? Council chair?
Yes.
I moved that the Dearborn Heights City Council approved the purchase and payment of two Samsung U N seventy five D U seventy two zero zero F, one Samsung B E sixty five dash H and one Samsung B E fifty five D dash H digital displays for various parks and recreation buildings from uh S H I for a cost of twenty two forty three. In addition, authorize the mayor and controller or clerk to sign the necessary warrants and the treasure to issue payment from Parks and Recreation Account one oh one six nine two eight 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 seven zero 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 as outlined in nine dash J.
Second. Made by councilman Ahmad, again, seconded by councilman Conson. This has been like a nice duel over here. Any discussion? I have one. Is the money coming out of the fund balance?
Uh no, it's uh, council chair says from the Parks and Recreation.
The fund balance is your budget.
Yeah.
So it is budgeted, but it is coming from the fund balance.
Oh, so you're over budget?
No, 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 sorry. It's from the budget. I'm sorry. It's not additional to what the budget is. So it is from that general ledger, which has money remaining in it. Yep, I can tell you exactly how much is remaining. Oh, you opened it. Sorry, I just look in the G O S.
So I, I apologize about not putting them, that, that you said it in there. Uh currently, right now, there is twelve thousand three hundred seventy dollars and two cents in that account.
Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Um I have a question.
Yes.
Is this after, I'm sorry, is this, is this after we paid this or this is before?
This is before. That, that number I gave is before.
So these went out for bid?
Got the three quotes.
What companies were there? I'm trying to find them in here.
I attached all of them in there. S H I, C D W, and I believe Insight.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I, I got to it finally. I'm scrolling. It's like five hundred some pages here.
I read it.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please state aye.
I mean, which company did you recommend?
S H I.
Now, it seems that we're doing a lot of work with S H I.
What's that?
We're giving a lot of work to S H I. They're, they're, they're like um Best Buy for larger, you know, entities like us, you know, you can say. They just sell equipment. Uh where?
They do some services and everything, but they're, they're a national company.
I just, I, I, I see the S H I all the time. I was gonna do a little research on it, but I haven't had the chance to, but it seems like we're awarding them a lot of, lot of, lot of work.
S, S, or when I, when I go and get quotes for um business class equipment, S H I, C W, Insight, those are some of the three larger brands that are allowed to give government discounts.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm sorry, council chair.
All in favor, please state aye. Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. Good job, guys.
Thank you.
Next up is Lobby Director McCaffrey. I tried to talk to him a little bit.
Council chair?
Library budget amendment.
Council chair?
Councilman.
I moved that the Dearborn Heights City Council authorized the installation of carpet in the staff area of John F Kennedy Junior Library for a total cost of eleven thousand two ninety six to be done by library design.
We're nine K.
Oh, I'm sorry. Uh wow. I moved that the Dearborn Heights City Council approved the following amendments to the library budget as outlined in nine K. Reduce line seven three eight, seven three eight, nine eight one, capital outlet by twenty thousand. Two hundred thirteen thousand remaining.
Thank you for that.
Fund. Increase line seven three eight, seven three eight, seven oh six, zero three zero, retire repay out by twenty thousand. Twenty nine thirty five remaining in fund. Reduce line seven three eight, seven three eight, nine eight one, capital outlet by ten, by ten thousand, two hundred thirteen thousand remaining in fund. With the.
Yep.
It's the same account though.
Thirty thousand.
No, they're not. Yeah, from the first one. It's the same account.
Well, yeah, he's, he's, he's taking.
Yeah, just, just keep reading it, guys.
Yeah, but still says two thirteen, I hope, and says two thirteen at the third one.
Ooh, should be two.
Unless I'm uh, so it should be at one ninety three. Right?
Two oh three.
Yeah, two, no, because you're minusing.
Cause it was remaining on the top one. Two thirteen was remaining after the twenty.
All right, two, two, two oh three should be two.
So instead of just subtracting, and I just said there's two hundred thirteen thousand dollars remaining in the fund. There was two different amendments coming from that particular line account. One's twenty thousand and one's ten. That's for a total of thirty thousand dollars. So thirty thousand dollars.
No, I'm sorry, director. So after we take the thirty thousand, two hundred thirteen remains in the account?
No, you have to subtract.
Before.
So it'll be a two oh three.
So it'll be. Yeah, one ninety three after the twenty and then one eighty three after the ten.
Could, no. So what I'm saying is, reduce the third line item would bring it down to.
That's correct.
To the two oh three.
That's correct.
That's what I'm saying. Not the total math, but just based on the item we're reading in the capital outlet, it'd bring the remaining balance to two oh three then. And then the last item he has not read yet.
Other guys, it, it's actually one eighty three.
Yeah. After the thirty thousand, yes, but it's, it's broken down by line item though.
I was like looking at that, I was like, oh, am I missing a ten? Somebody else missing it.
Uh, uh director, so if I read the first line, reduce line seven three eight, seven three eight, nine eight one by twenty thousand. So after we take the twenty thousand, is two hundred thirteen remains in the funds or would be one ninety three?
So one ninety three.
So this should be one ninety three then.
So, so yes, you can.
So one ninety three remains in the fund.
Right.
Then if I jump back to third line, reduce line seven three eight, seven three eight, nine eight one, capital outlet by ten thousand, so now we're at one oh eight. I'm sorry, one eighty three.
One eighty three.
Remaining in the funds.
Yep.
Yeah.
Increase line seven three eight, seven three eight, eight eight six, programming by ten thousand. So that would be nine thousand, nine hundred and forty eight dollars and. No, nine thousand eight hundred. Nine hundred, oh, eight hundred, uh forty eight dollars and thirty six cents.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep. When I put the numbers in parentheses, it was in, in, an indicator of where it's at right now. Yeah. By the way, I just want you to know, I, I asked all directors to do that, and I believe we had something from George also. Director McCaffrey's the only one that did it. Uh Ronald Maupassant ahead for respecting. Thank you very much. Um motion made by councilman Ahmad.
Second.
Seconded by councilman Saab. Thank you, director, for doing that. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please state aye. Those opposed? The ayes have it. Nine L Library Director McCaffrey, John F Kennedy Junior Library Carpet Installation.
Council chair?
Councilwoman Breyer.
I'd like to make a motion that the Dearborn Heights City Council authorize the installation of carpet in the staff area of the John F Kennedy Junior Library for a total cost of eleven thousand, two hundred ninety six dollars to be done by library design. In addition, authorize payment from line seven three eight, seven three eight, nine three one, which has a remaining balance of fifty five thousand, three hundred seventy four dollars. It's outlined in nine L.
Second.
Motion made by Councilwoman Breyer, seconded by Councilman Saab. Any discussion? Good luck, Director McCaffrey. All in favor, please state aye. Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries.
Council chair?
Yes.
I'm so sorry. Just to go back to nine K, I think the second line, I have to say, when we increase it by twenty thousand, the remaining fund should be twenty two, nine thirty five. Madam clerk?
Okay, engineering them.
Okay.
Good job.
Next up is nine M. Library Director McCaffrey, disposal of equipment.
Council chair? I'm over the Dearborn Heights City Council, approve the disposal of the following library items outlined in nine M. Eight high stools, four frame prints and paintings, forty assorted kids, old kids chairs, two weathered outdoor benches, one model laptop cart. Second.
Motion made by Councilman Saab, seconded by Councilman Ahmad. Any discussion on that?
I have a question. Chair?
Yes.
Are any of these items usable enough so that we could put them in the August uh rush sale?
Um. Yes, but they'd be taking up kind of space we kind of need. Um I work, I like to do uh spring cleanings when we have the book sale, for instance, and offer them very cheap or free to the public uh during the book sale, uh cause it just kind of consumes space. But yes, actually, when we do that sale, cause we have given away stuff in, in August before, uh and we often do find stuff to go to that sale and donate.
Do we have room in the basement here in this building?
Actually, a lot of it's coming from the basement, cause we we need to clear space out, so that's.
We need money. I'm just looking for sources.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It um, yeah, we do sell it to uh, you know, for you can't sell it for a lot, cause a lot of these are pretty old used chairs. We're talking, we make a few hundred bucks.
There are only a couple items that looked of interest anyhow.
Yep. Okay.
Thank you. All in favor, please state aye. Those opposed? The ayes have it. Orange, Department Enforcement, Animal Control Director LaFige.
Council chair?
Orange's budget amendment.
I moved that the Dearborn Heights City Council approved the following amendment to the ordinance bu- department budget as outlined in nine dash N, reducing account. dash N, reducing account number one oh one, four two six, seven zero seven, one zero zero, which is the account name part-time. Current budget nineteen thousand, reduce it by four thousand nine hundred and twenty dollars. amended budget would be fourteen thousand and eighty dollars. Um, and, uh, increasing account number one oh one, four two six, seven oh nine, zero 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 overtime, current budget fifteen thousand, increasing by four thousand nine hundred and twenty dollars, amended budget would be nineteen thousand nine hundred and twenty dollars.
Second. Motion made by Councilman Ahmad, seconded by Councilman Constant. Any discussion? I have. I thought we no longer had part-time budget because we've exhausted all of our, our entire budget, so is this coming from the fund balance?
Overtime is what has been kind of paused because most overtime is maxed out. So what he's doing here is that he's grabbing money from the part-time salaries, which we typically hire in Orans during the year, uh, summertime to do more sweeps. Um, and we're grabbing a portion of that money and putting it into overtime so that the current employees can also do sweeps and, um, continue to do the work that they need to do.
So we're shorting out the summertime blight employees we're gonna have.
The director's coming, so I know he has a plan for how he's going to staff that and the part-timer that he's gonna hire.
We will still leave ten thousand dollars in our part-time budget for our part-timer to start May first, and that'll get us to the new budget, uh, July first. And right now, we have nine hundred dollars left in our overtime budget, and we're getting a ton of call-ins for animal attacks. Um, vicious dogs. Um, we had two just Thursday alone, um, so.
Pit bulls, ones I called in on?
Yeah, pit bulls, you name it. Uh, so, we have to, plus we got the, uh, Pelham Trailer Park, uh, coming up. That's on Fridays. Our guys are off, so they have to go to overtime for that, for court. So this'll, this'll get me my overtime through July first.
Thank you, Councilor. Thank you for being creative. Councilor Chair.
I'm sorry, Director, you said how much we have in the part-time budget right now?
Um, nineteen thousand, yeah.
Yeah, by nineteen, now we're taking forty-nine.
It's forty, yeah.
You said, mentioned, you mentioned something about nine or ten thousand.
You made a mistake.
I'm sorry.
You, you said part-time, you have ten thousand in it.
What I'm saying is we'll, we'll have enough, what, I didn't have the exact, well, plenty to cover our part-timer for the, uh, two months until the new budget.
Okay.
Like I said, we'll plenty in there, but it'll give us a little extra if we need it for anything else. Like I said, we do need to cover overtime.
So after this amendment, we should have fourteen thousand in our part-time budget.
I believe so, yes.
Okay, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you.
Next up is Parks and Recreation Director Zubinski.
No.
The boss. The boss.
The boss.
I'm sorry, guys, man. Hang on, Zubinski, Parks and Recreation Budget Amendment. The boss, please forgive me. Director Z, I'm calling you Director Z.
Um, so, so we found some money, he asked us to find some money. Did we pay for this? And, and we did through some, uh, through a, a city account, city-owned property account. And that will cover our.
Where did we get the money from?
Um,
It's from the city-owned properties account, one oh one, two hundred, nine four nine, zero zero zero.
Did you sell the property?
No, that's the one we typically use to purchase properties. Um, so we're taking some of that money to try to cover some of these items.
What do we have in there?
Seventy-five thousand dollars, which haven't been used.
Seventy-five, you're requesting ten thousand.
Eighty-five. Eighty-five, yeah, yeah, almost eighty-six.
So, again, this part of it is gonna be covered by the Wayne County reimbursement millage, so if you see there's another reimbursement there for a hundred and sixty-three thousand, forty-four thousand of that is gonna be covered by that reimbursement, which is shown in the increase there.
But originally, when you put this motion forward, it said the recreation budget, and it wasn't from the recreation budget, it was the fund balance.
Correct, and now we have found the money from the city-owned property, but. You asked us to find money.
That we saved to buy property because somebody lied on a motion that they put in front of us?
It wasn't a lie, as I explained before, the motion was approved the last fiscal year, the money was there the last fiscal year when the motion was approved to purchase those items. That was not a lie, it was just a miscalculation during the budget because it was approved on June something, I think it's on the backup as well, June twentieth or something. So it just didn't carry over when the budget season was happening prior to that June date. It's a budget amendment that's necessary.
The director was up here at the meeting, it said she had after the money in her recreation budget. That's what she said.
In the fiscal year where the expense was approved, she was right.
But currently, this is in a, in a litigation issue, I don't even know why it's here.
It's here because if we don't use the money by June, we're gonna lose the forty-four thousand from the grant. So what's in litigation is the change order, but the contract for the original work of the sixty-two thousand was approved by council and signed in a contract, so we have contractual obligations for that.
Is what we're in court for also included in this?
No. That's the seven thousand change order, this is the original amount, as you can see it in the backup.
Okay.
I, I wanna see that anyway. I, I, I got the lawsuit. I got the lawsuit.
Again, the lawsuit is a demand for payment, so this would cover part of that payment, it will not make them whole, but it would, it's a portion of it.
Sixty-eight hundred is what you'd have to come back, the change order we never.
Correct.
All right, uh, any other discussion on this one?
Can we read it?
Who's, who's reading it, actually?
Nobody read it yet, but. What, wait, wait, I'm sorry, should we read it first or?
Read it, yeah.
Okay, Councilor Chair.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approved the following amendment to the Parks and Recreation Budget as outlined in nine dash O, account number one oh one, six nine one, six, not me, nine eight one, zero zero zero, capital outlay, current budget is zero, requested amount eighty-five thousand, eight hundred and twenty-eight and forty cents. amended budget would be eighty-five, eight hundred, twenty, twenty-eight and forty cents. Uh, account number one oh one, zero zero zero, six eight four, seven hundred. Embrace County Parks, current budget zero, requested amount one sixty-three, zero thirty-one dollars, amended budget would be a hundred and sixty-three thousand, thirty-one dollars. Account number one oh one, two hundred, nine four nine, zero zero zero, city-owned property, current budget seventy-five thousand. Requested amount reduced by forty-one thousand, two oh four and forty cents, amended budget would be twenty-one thousand, three oh four and thirty-five cents.
I think what you say is outlined in nine, all that covers it.
Yeah.
Motion made by Councilman Ahmad, second. Seconded by Councilman Constant. Any discussion? I'm just a little confused.
Yeah, me too.
The current budget is.
There's no current budget, guys, guys, slow down.
The current budget is zero, we're requesting eighty-five. The reimbursement to the county parks is zero, but we're requesting a hundred and sixty-three thousand. Okay? Then, we're taking from city-owned property, seventy-five.
No, current budget's seventy-five, we're taking, uh.
Seventy-five in there and we're leaving forty-one in there.
No, 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 we're taking forty-one.
I'm sorry, no.
Yes, their amended budget is forty-one.
We're taking forty-one, so.
You're right, you're right.
The remaining budget. Twenty-one thousand is what's left in there.
So how are we, our current budget is zero, but we're requesting eighty-five thousand dollars, how is that possible? You have no money, what are you saying?
I'm requesting it.
So, the first item is the expense accounts, so our total expenses right now are eighty-five thousand, eight hundred and twenty-eight thousand and forty cents. We are offsetting that with a revenue account, which is the Wayne County Park Millages, which is a hundred and sixty-three thousand, zero three one. Of that, forty-four thousand is to offset an expense that we currently have incurred, which is for the Wayne County Marquee, I mean, sorry, uh, Park Millage Marquee. Um, so that forty-four thousand is coming from there, that's to offset that eighty-five. And then the additional forty-one thousand, two hundred and four is what's coming from the city-owned properties to offset the expense. There will be an additional revenue remaining of around a hundred and fifteen thousand, which is what our current Wayne County Park Millage is left, which has also been spent, uh, but for the.
Okay.
Ben Houghton Park. So, so it's two revenue account increases for two Wayne County Park Millage grants.
Councilor Chair.
Councilman Saab.
So, you know, the, the thing is with this is that you're gonna go ahead and approve this. They're gonna come back in five months, say, well, we had this already approved motion from a year ago that was not paid. We're gonna have the money for it, it's gotta come out of fund balance. And we're taking away from our parks.
But we're adding on to, I mean, you know what? I know this sounds a little crazy, but if we're gonna look at like a fire station at Anfield. Maybe we don't, maybe we don't move forward with this, we might, you know, maybe, maybe Mr. Deep comes back and says, you know, you could do it there, and then the ten million dollars covers that, and you're not having to use our park money. I'm just kinda thinking.
I'm sorry, I don't understand how the ten million would impact the parks at all. This is work that has already been done, as you're aware, the contract was already approved and awarded. We're just asking for approval for final payment, the reimbursement from the county.
My brain is moving at a, a long meaning.
I, I, I'm sorry.
Do you mind, uh, Madam, uh, Chief of Staff? I, I'm, I'm kinda confused too, I'm sorry. So, with between the eighty-five thousand and one sixty-three, that's two hundred and forty-eight thousand, eight hundred and fifty-nine dollars. So what exactly those gonna cover, again?
So, okay, you have to look at them separately, so when you balance a budget, you increase expenses and you increase revenues, so it balances it out, right?
Okay.
You don't necessarily always have to decrease, like you've seen in the prior examples. This is one of those examples, I'm not decreasing one by one, I'm adding revenue instead.
Yeah.
So the one hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars is two grant, two awards from Wayne County Park Millage that we received that have already been approved by council.
Okay.
The forty-four thousand for the Wayne County Marquee and a hundred and fifteen thousand or so for the Ben Houghton Park.
Okay.
So that's what that one hundred and sixty-three represents.
Got you, okay.
It's those motions that have already been approved. So that's a revenue that you didn't have before, right? It was zero, so now you have an additional one hundred and sixty-three thousand.
Correct, okay.
Of that, I'm gonna grab forty-four thousand and pay the invoice for the marquee sign with the, for the sixty-three thousand.
Okay.
And then I'm gonna grab the forty-four thousand in revenues that I didn't have before to offset that expense. And then I am doing a budget amendment where I'm grabbing forty-one thousand, two hundred and four from the city-owned properties budget that is already budgeted, and I'm using it for the expenses for the park.
And what does it say in the notes, number three, amended budget takes into account the budget amendment for controller education already reduced by ten thousand?
So when you asked us to put the totals, I was assuming, expecting that the ten thousand dollars would have been approved. If that's not the case, then the amended budget is going to be thirty-one thousand, three hundred and four, since it hadn't, it didn't actually get approved. It, just the order of things, I assumed it was thirty-one minus ten.
Yeah, but why, why would, uh, something like the ten thousand be from the Parks and Recreation Budget? Even if it's approved?
It, it's not from the Parks and Recreation Budget, again, I grabbed ten thousand dollars from city-owned properties for the ten thousand dollars in the Controller's Office, and I grabbed forty-one thousand for the Parks and Recreation.
Hmm. Okay, so you're trying to move it to the department?
Correct.
Okay, so now, if, since we're not moving it.
The amended budget is going to be thirty-one thousand.
So thirty-one thousand, so, uh, I guess I have to amend my motion, Councilor. Okay.
Sorry, before I amend it, I have a question. Do we already have the hundred and sixty-three thousand in, in our account?
Again, grants, and I'm sorry, meant to clarify that earlier, grants are reimbursable. So once you incur the expense and you show proof that this is the expense that you have and the invoice that has been paid, then the grant awardee reimburses you, so you pretty much do a drawdown, that's what it's called in, in grants. You do a drawdown where you say, here's proof that I've paid for this item, please reimburse me, they apply to this grant. So then they give you the money back after that, but we have an agreement saying that the money is there for us to do that request.
Okay, I think we got stung on that a couple times this past year, didn't we, with grant, the money that was, we budgeted in, we didn't get it. That's how we got ourselves a little bit.
When you have a grant agreement, typically no, unless you don't meet the deadlines that they have, which in this case is June, there's no reason why the awarded grantee shouldn't give it to you.
So where's the mon, the hundred and sixty-three thousand gonna come from in the meantime?
Your fund balance, which is why I'm asking for the amendment for the forty-one thousand dollars.
Thank you. So, this is all baked up belief money, then, then, and if, let's just say we don't, let's just say we don't get the grant money. And, and the council is gonna be like, well, how come the money, you guys approved it?
I, again, I don't see why that would be a, a situation, we have an agreement with them.
Why is the ten thousand dollars for the amended budget to take into account for the controller's education already reduced by ten thousand? Why is that being like just rolled in there all naturally?
Because you were gonna do the math, and if you did the math of seventy-five minus forty-one, it wouldn't have been twenty-one, so I was explaining why it's not twenty-one, because I was taking into account the additional ten from the prior budget amendment.
But even still, even.
Just like the, the director did a few minutes, like.
Even, even the math don't add up here, even without the ten thousand, there's still, it should be, like, if you take forty-one thousand, it should be, that takes you down to, uh.
I'm an engineer.
I'm sorry, I, I'm not a math expert, I'm sure the controller can.
Takes you down, if, when you take the forty-one thousand, that which is, which includes the ten thousand of the, for the controller, that takes you down to thirty-three thousand, seven ninety-five for the amended budget. Not to twenty-one thousand.
I don't recall if there was something else in the Controller's Department that was taking a little bit more, I can go back and look at the budget. But again, ultimately, whatever amount we take, that's what they're gonna put in the budget, so when you do a general ledger in the budget amendment, you don't put the remaining amount, you just put what you're taking out or what you're increasing, so really, the only number that you need to know is what you're increasing or what is decreasing, which is the requested amount.
I'm, 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 I'm okay with tabling this, yeah.
Again, I'm just urging you, and the reason that this is in front of you.
By the way, we could vote on it and it couldn't be denied. There's a motion on the table.
And the only reason I'm urging this, and, and I made the recommendation to grab the money from another budgeted line item, is because I fear losing the forty-four thousand, so that is what? Hmm?
We spent the forty-four million.
We're expecting it, yes, we have an agreement for it, but if we don't issue our payment or do our drawdown by June, we will lose it.
Let me ask you a question, and you know what else we're gonna lose? We continue to use our fund balance, we're gonna, we're, we're gonna continue to put ourselves in a deficit. And we keep saying temporarily use this money, tempor, how do you plan on revenueing more money to fill the fund balance? Can you give us that?
So again, this is the best we can do, this is where we found the money within the budget, not coming from the fund balance. So, I, I heard you and I understand, and this is our solution to not have to use fund balance. And, and again, it's, it's an existing contract, it's, it's work that's been done.
That's, you know, I don't think, I mean, Wayne County's about to get three point eight million dollars, the, the existing contract, they're gonna be fined. I mean, I cannot come and tell you, Mariana, cause you're at the executive situation, we're at the legislative, right, we're saying to you, we know as a fiduciary duty to the taxpayers and to the city of Dearborn Heights, what the taxpayers do, but the entire city, we know that one, these numbers don't add up, cause all these numbers are incorrect. Two, you're trying to slip in a ten thousand dollar thing for, for the control that we just voted on.
You can remove that, that, again, it was assuming that it was gonna get.
It, it's still very ugly that this, these things are, but you're saying we can remove it, yeah, we can remove it, no. And, and then lastly, our fund balance went from twelve million dollars to three million dollars because you guys just continued to throw things at us. So I think now right here, we're saying like, we both know, Mariana, as a chief of staff of the city of Dearborn Heights, we both know the city can't afford this. So trying to spin it in a, in a way like, oh, no, it's okay, just do it, like, that's not fair to the residents, man, like, it's, we're not being truthful leaders to residents.
Well, you can afford this, like, this is how you're gonna afford this, you're, you're doing a budget amendment from one line item to another. So it, it is not a million dollars that I'm requesting here, it's simply a small amount for an existing grant and an existing contract. But it's up to the council to decide.
I'm gonna take it, I'm gonna take it for a vote.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. And, and it's nothing towards you, by the way, this is strictly, this is just.
We, we argue too much on this.
Oh, it's still in April, we can. We'll have a next meeting. All in favor, please state aye. Those opposed? No.
No.
Man, please take roll call.
Denise Melonowski, may I?
No.
Hassan Saab?
No.
Hassan Ahmad?
No.
Nancy Breyer?
Yes.
Tom Wenzel?
Um, I wanna take this, you know, back to the administration, write numbers.
Yeah, but that's, they, they need to.
We get back on the table, this is the yes.
No. No.
Robert Constan?
Yes.
And Moby June?
No.
Motion.
Bring it back.
Two.
Make it bring it back, yeah, bring it back with the numbers. Uh, uh, Police Chief, next up, I'm sorry. Next up is nine P, Police Chief Hader, MOU between the city and leaders advancing the helping communities, LAHC.
Counsel, Hassan Ahmad.
Yes, it's the president of the LAHC.
Counselor Chair, I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approved the memorandum of understanding between, MOU between the city and. The leaders advancing and helping communities, LAHC, outlining the task agreed upon by the city. And LAHC, with regards to identifying and providing services to individuals who have recently survived. A non-fated drug overdose and face a high risk of future mortality, there are no financial payment. Which will be made between the two parties. In addition, authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the MOU on behalf of the city. Which will begin in March twenty twenty-five and expires in nine months with the option to extend as outlined in nine dash P.
Second.
But is on board, I will, motion made by Councilman Ahmad, seconded by Councilman Constant. Any discussion?
Counselor Chair?
Yes, sir.
I literally take pride in leading this organization and like it says in the motion, there's no expense to the city. Basically, it's a nonprofit that's gonna help uh, people. Who went through overdose in the community, so I do thank the staff of LAHC and for, for bringing this uh, program forward. And addressing some issues that we have in our city. Thank you very much.
I wanna thank the chief over there.
Thank you. Any other discussions or kudos? Hearing none, all in favor, please stay at eye.
Eye.
Those opposed? The eyes have it, motion carried. Next up is Tax Increasement Finance Authority. Administrator Roscoe, Tifa Budget twenty twenty-five, twenty.
Counsel Chair?
Chair, Councilwoman Breyer, sorry, Councilman.
I'd like to make a motion that the Dearborn Heights City Council concur with the tax increment financial authority, known as Tifa. For approval of the twenty twenty-five dash twenty twenty-six Tifa budget as outlined in nine Q.
Second, motion made by Councilwoman Breyer, seconded by Councilman Constant. Any discussion?
Counselor Chair?
Councilman.
Are we getting that boiler before we approve or?
Well, the good thing is it's a documented where you can go ahead and make some budget amendments. I will say to um. Tom Roscoe, you, you did a great job, great presentation today. You really are awesome to the city of Dearborn Heights. You're my second favorite Tom, because Tom Wenzel's up here. Uh, but the good news is, I, Dearborn Heights is really lucky. Any other discussion?
Counselor Chair?
Yep, Councilman.
I, I, I watched that on Zoom and uh, his presentation was really good and he does so much behind the scenes. Things that we don't even know all the stuff he does and he manages that money so meticulously and.
He should be our comptroller.
And he did, he did a really great job on that presentation.
Does him and his team do a great job. They really do.
Everybody there.
All right, all, thank you, anyone else? Hearing none, all in favor, please stay at eye.
Eye.
Those opposed? The eyes have it, motion carries. Next up, Orison, the resolution, Councilman Reso- Councilman Wenzel's Resolution Regarding Boards and Commission Fundraising.
Counselor Chair?
Yep, that's you.
Yeah. Um. I'd like to motion that Dearborn Heights City Council approve the following resolution regarding boards and commissions fundraising as outlined in eleven A.
You wanna read it all?
I'll read it, okay.
Yep.
Dearborn Heights, official city commissions are vital element to our city's government. All of our commissions and various commissioners. Work, and various commissioners work hard to perform the duty that is vital to our city. In some cases, raising funds to help them perform their duties more efficiently is vital. Therefore, I'm submitting the following resolution. Whereas fundraising is vital to some commissions' operation, therefore, the following procedures must be followed. General ledger must be established through the comptroller's office. To reduce red tape, this mandate will be handled through the treasurer's office, the treasurer. Office will work with the comptroller to establish this general ledger. I, I spoke to the treasurer and she's fine with taking on this chat task. Uh, a receipt code must be created through the treasurer's office, all checks must be payable through the, to the city of Dearborn Heights. All funds raised must be deposited into the city deposits, the city of Dearborn Heights Treasurer's Office. The treasurer shall keep a running balance of funds available to each commission's account. Requests for dispersments of funds must be made to the comptroller's office. Requests must be made in written form and approved and signed by the chairperson. And treasurer of the particular commission requesting disbursement of funds. All funds raised and dispersed must be for the sole purpose of maintaining and operating functions for that particular commission.
Thank you, sir. Motion made by Councilman's uh, Tom Wenzel, seconded by.
Right.
Seconded by Councilman Saab. Or Council, yeah, I'll give you Saab. I gave her the last one, I'm, I'm over Saab. I'm gonna stop you, Ellen. Any, any discussion on this?
Counselor Chair?
Yes, sir, Councilman.
You know, in, in the past, we've had some, you know, some commissions don't need, don't need any money, uh, fundraising, but there, there are several that do to perform their duties. Um, uh, we, they have fundraisers and we were told that uh, you can't do it, you have to have a certain kind of. Town set up through the state or something. And I think, you know, uh, our, our Culture Relation Commission, they were the first ones to uh, bring this up, they wanted to raise funds and. Uh, the only problem with that was they wanted to have their own bank account and it's gotta go through the city. So I think, you know, every, every commission should be able to uh, do fundraising for the sole purpose of operating and maintaining their commission.
I, I wholeheartedly agree. And I was on the CCRC when uh, things like this took place and, you know, they straight up told us no. Like, what? Uh, so what, what Leslie Willis, at the time, Trustee Willis did was she created solid, called PMT. Yeah. Um, and what she does now, she raises it to her nonprofit, right, to help assist to the CCRC. I believe you did the same thing with Jamie's Kids, right?
Right.
You know, and that's unfair, like, allow these commissioners to be able to do the same thing. Anyway, that's here nor there. Um, I think this is a great initiative and so I thank you, Councilman, thank you. Um, any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please stay at eye.
Eye.
Eye. Those opposed? The eyes have it, motion carries. Here we go.
Counselor Chair?
Councilman?
I would like to, the next one.
Can you turn your mic on?
Oh, I don't know.
Be nice.
Um, the next, I would like to table the, um, all these ordinances, study session or get more clarification. I believe uh, eleven B, C, D, E, F, G, H. Up H. Their schools, not us.
Yeah, well, I think we're overreaching and uh, not trying enough clarification on this.
Sure.
Yes. Hang on, hang on. Hang on. For her, before we get to a discussion, let us have a motion on the table. Okay, so you're saying you wanna table eleven B to eleven H?
Correct.
Counselor Chair, Madam Clerk, I'm sorry, Madam Clerk, can we table them all at the same time or we have to table it one by one?
Hmm.
Well, first of all, the last two are on light and.
Yes.
I'm not, they're not, had to do with the schools. That's more like.
Okay, let's just, let me just go one by one.
Yeah, I think.
Then we'll go from there. Chief, if you wanna speak up real quick on, on what you have to say.
So wh- when we first, when I first took over as chief, this is one of the things that the school superintendents reached out to me. About a program that was presented in back in two thousand nineteen, that they said both Chief Swope and Hart paid no attention to this program. For the last month and a half, myself and members from the department have met up with Annapolis, Crestwood, and Robesaw. We've had sit downs with the superintendents about the problems that we're having with juveniles in their court, in their, in their schools. These are the ordinances that we came up with based on the intel gathering from the superintendent, the principals. And the problems they were having in their school. Uh, every single school district superintendent was with open arms hugging us after the meeting. They loved the idea that we were bringing to the table. This is not gonna cost the city any type of money, it's not gonna cost us zero dollars.
Chief, I got a question, I don't mean to interrupt you. Did you read these resolutions yourself?
Yes, well, uh, when, when Rima wrote these, when Rima Yatufi, the, the prosecutor, wrote these ordinance, these are state ordinance.
Who wrote these?
Rima Yatufi, she's one of the.
Yeah, Fufi?
Yeah, she's one of the prosecutors that's came on with the city. These are state ordinances that were written, that we presented these and emailed to all the superintendents for them to review them. And to modify them. They all had input at all of this. They were not left in the dark. We worked on this for a month and a half with every suit. Matter of fact, I, I was told to call the superintendents and have them come here today. I told them I didn't wanna do that to these guys. These guys were educators and, and they have things to do. I didn't wanna keep them here till nine thirty, you know, to sit here and have to go through all this.
Then you know, you know what you need to do is, we need to do, I mean, this is my opinion, at the end of the day, the council can make the full decision. I, I think. These need to go to a study session, because when I read them, I'm gonna be completely honest with you, because we're not well, well-written resolution. I mean, I know you don't wanna hear that, but these are. Hamadi, you gotta read some of these things, there, some of these things are like.
So, what, what's troubling, again, I ask you, what, what, what is?
I just don't feel like these were formally written properly. I, I do not believe these were formally written properly. Um, I don't know, maybe Rima, maybe had the paralegal do it, maybe somebody else kinda also, maybe, maybe some of the, uh, the input that came in from. The superintendent's not, maybe this makes sense, because maybe they give some input and, and now violates certain laws, because you can't have certain things that are put in certain ways. And I'm, I'm not telling you, I don't wanna support this. Tell you, we just, we have to, we have to clean it up a little bit, really not clean. Hang on, hang on, Roger, please.
From what I understand, most of these are in place in the state laws.
And then you don't need them.
So, we know, we need them on a city level so we can enforce them, because the state's not enforcing them.
Any state statute is, is, is trumps anything that proceeds anything to the city.
If a state statute is built for the state, we as little, local ordinance can issue ordinance on a city level to enforce them. The state's not enforcing these right now.
No, you can enforce whatever the state law is.
And I can also enforce city, city ordinance, that's why we want these in the city ordinance, so we can enforce them and have them presented in front of our judge. Instead of having it taken downtown. I mean, this is, this is something that, it's, this wasn't something where we went in the kitchen and grabbed some. You know, some water, some sugar, some salt, and started making something. We've, we've been working on this for the last month and a half. We, we've reached out to different cities, we sat down with Dearborn, we sat down with Redford, we sat down with all their court section departments and, and, and they gave us the playbook.
Counselor Chair, if I may?
Hang on one second, Roger, I'm gonna get to you, I heard you, I promise you I didn't forget.
Thank you.
I promise you.
Thank you, sir.
Counselor Chair?
Well, hang on. Are you all sat here?
Yeah, I mean, if, if that's what you guys wanna do, sit down, have a study session.
Yeah, and, and really, and really, Hamadi, Chief. I should say, forgive me, I should be calling you.
Fine.
Respectfully, Chief.
You're fine.
I wish that you, I mean, I know the administration, Roger, definitely isn't, consult the council, at least reach out to the council chair. Say, hey, man, we're doing this thing, like, I'm getting people's opinion, what do you think? You know, Councilman, uh, you know, Ahmad, Councilman Wenzel, Councilwoman Melonowski Max, or Councilwoman. Engage us, you know, don't just, because I'm gonna be honest with you. You know, I, I, I don't wanna throw anybody under the bus. But I think you need to reread some of these resolutions for yourself, um, and, and really take a look at them. And, and that's me being like a true brother and telling you to really reread them a little bit. Just take my advice on that, I promise you. And if you wanna talk off record, we can later.
Okay.
Counselor Chair? Just uh, reread them, read some of them.
I could tell you, some of our superintendents thought we were being too light on them. I'm gonna leave it at that.
Go ahead, Roger, if I may, a little more historical perspective, um, Judge Turfy actually came when I started. Had been trying for two and a half years to get something to deal with the juvenile issue. I was told by my previous counsel that we don't have a juvenile problem in Dearborn Heights. When I met with the superintendents, I ha- we have eleven-year-olds, twelve-year-olds vaping. They, they get a ten-day suspension, we had them vaping with marijuana, they get a thirty-day suspension. We have truancy problems, we have the bullying and cyberbullying, we have school threats. This is what the superintendents came, I've met with them three times prior to Chief Hider coming in, I met with Kim Worthy. Initially, we were denied having a juvenile court, then they gave us an approval, I met with the juvenile. Um, Bob Heimbach, Hervé Jenkins, who I worked with as prosecutors. To identify what we can focus on and not interfere with the state cases. Because without a, a city ordinance, otherwise the state prosecutors handle it and they take it downtown to juvenile court. Which unfortunately, and not, any disrespect, it was taken eight to ten months before, and then by that, by that time, the issue was gone. Or had somehow disappeared and it wasn't solving or giving any, um, any. Uh, support to what's called restorative justice counselors, which the courts are, which the schools are putting in, in their programs now. So our program is a diversion program to develop the restorative justice. That we don't hit the students with large fines or incarcerate them, but we can put some diversion to help and assist them. So I'm just giving background, you know, you know, Counselor Chair, I don't respect you, I never would do that, but please let me finish. I am just trying to explain where these came from. Now, Captain Gazowski, uh, a bunch of officers within the department that, that run our detective bureaus. Very familiar, looked at every one of these ordinances. And everyone put their comments and changes to comment, edit where it is. He, and, and Chief is right, it mirrors the state. However, if you take a state statute, we are not gonna prosecute it in Dearborn Heights, it's gonna go downtown. Now the schools, I'm talking about juveniles eleven years old with marijuana in the vaping, it's out of control. So I'm saying to you, and what the chief is saying to you, this is a need.
You're, you're.
This citizens, I, you know, I don't disrespect you by interrupting you, I have the floor, if you can just give me that respect.
We're not in a courtroom.
So what I'm saying is that, if you wanna do a study session, fine. Let the superintendents come in, but don't knock the language because Gary Mackey says it, he told me he doesn't think we have a juvenile problem in Dearborn Heights. I said, yes, we do. Our schools tell us.
He's wrong.
So, uh, the language was crafted not by myself alone, with Rima Yafufi, with the superintendent, with the detectives. With the police, with Chief Hider to come up with the language here. There's no AI, as somebody said. Now, my experience, I'm a former uh, Attorney General, um, employee with uh, Child Protective Services, I have five years working with juveniles. I have su- uh, uh, superinten- I've worked with substance abuse programs, I've worked with spiritual substance abuse programs and within the schools. And I've been a former prosecutor, working with juveniles and what's called chins and nita services. So the background coming to this is not some haphazard. It's not some haphazard throwing this together.
Mr. Ferenha.
Okay?
Where we agree.
That's how respectfully called you.
Counselor, Counselor.
Okay?
Counselor Chair? Mr. Ferenha.
It's accomplished things, so it takes, it takes, it takes energy, it takes experience.
Okay, Roger. I heard, I, we've heard you for the last eight minutes.
I know, I know, I just. I know, if I don't say it, nobody else is gonna say it. I respect you, guys, I know what you, your heart, no, I would say this, Counselor Chair, you care. You care for the people, you care for the people, the weakest people you care for, but thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Counselor Chair. Mr. Ferenha, we agree a hundred percent with whatever you're saying, but we still, we're changing laws here for the city. So we need, we need a study session, that's all we're asking for.
I'm, I'm agreeing with.
So we can.
Vaping it up a little bit more, I mean, that's it.
That's fine.
That's it, that's all. I disagree with you that the eleven-year-old that's vaping should be.
The reason why it's on the.
You don't gotta keep dragging and dragging.
The reason why it's on the agenda, that you can have your input, this is the first reading.
That's my.
Otherwise, it just sits there, doesn't say.
Brought out.
Doesn't say first reading.
No, this is.
You brought a good uh.
I think all the representatives here are represented from. They all say first reading.
Get all the representatives here.
The first time, reform all back to a study session.
Okay, let's reform all to a study session.
Yes.
We're gonna bring, I'll reach out to the superintendents as well, me and George will send an email, please, George.
I, I, I don't understand how the superintendents being present is gonna change the laws. They're not the experts. I'm not the expert, the lawyers put this together.
And I don't think the lawyers did a good job, to be honest with you.
Now, how you, how could you challenge?
Point of order, everyone. To be honest with you, Chief, I'm not gonna go back to cross-reference this, I'm not cross-referencing.
But we're not the experts.
Chief, point of order, man, I'm asking you respect the chairman, please. Point of order, we're gonna take this to a study session, I don't know why everybody's so offended if the council wants to have an input on it, it's not that serious.
It's not.
Really not that serious, guy. Councilman Wenzel, do you wanna have an input on it?
I'll take it to a study session.
Okay, Councilman, would you like a study, would you like an input, would you like an input, I'd like an input, would you like an input?
Yes.
Councilman, would you like an input on these in order?
Whatever you guys.
Counselor Chair, I'd like the attorney to write these.
I'm here. You did not write these, you just sent them. Come on, point of order, would you like an opinion on this? Roger, please, point of order.
And they keep, let me just add something, and I, I'm sure the chief will agree, the problem is, when these go down to juvenile court downtown. They have kids committing murder, shootings, they.
I, I agree, I don't, we all just wanna have an opinion, especially you as our lawyer, it's, it's our lawyer on the council, you wanna have an opinion on it?
Yeah, I have an opinion already, I read them, but yes.
Yes, okay, thank you. So we would just wanna propose for a study session?
We're not saying no, guys, everybody's over their head with it.
Please, Roger, you've said way too much.
No, no, I was just gonna say.
Please, please, please. Please, point of order, Roger, please, point of order, eleven B to eleven H. Is that what it is? We'll table those.
Eleven F.
Yes, we're leaving.
Eleven G is the line, like.
Yeah, we can read them for.
Eleven, oh, to eleven G. Right by first.
Okay, F.
Okay?
Till eleven F, Counselor.
I'm sorry. What do you mean?
Yeah, till, till eleven F for table.
Till eleven F.
Now we're moving. To eleven F. Yeah, now we're.
Yeah, now we're moving to eleven G. Okay. To eleven F, to table those, can I get a motion?
I put a motion forward to table.
Eleven B to eleven.
Eleven B to eleven F.
Eleven F, second. Motion made by councilman, to, to table, to send to a study session. Welcome the superintendent, the chief, the, the attorneys that also assisted Mrs., uh. I don't want to see her. Yeah, Miss LaFufi.
And Mohammed Hassan.
Mohammed, who, see, whoever else is working on.
Is that paralegal?
I assume the paralegal worked on this. Um.
He all worked.
Um, all in favor, please.
Do you want them named in the motion? Those who are going to be invited, just.
Roger knows, Roger knows who to count.
No, 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 name them. Please name them. Name them. I want them named, because I want them here.
So we're going to refer to a study session. Proposed ordinance twenty five oh three. Well, you know what it is. Eleven B through eleven.
Thank you. All in favor, please state aye. Those opposed. Guys have a motion carries. This is nothing against you, chief. This is nothing against you, Roger. This is nothing against the attorney that helped put this together. This is nothing against the superintendents. This is the same, but let's just tighten it up a little bit. That's all.
Council chair, who was the second on that?
Councilman Ahmad.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Now. Eleven G.
Eleven G.
Next up, we have eleven G. Council, go ahead, councilman.
All right. I'd like to make a motion as a Dearborn Heights City Council move. That proposed ordinance H dash twenty five dash zero eight. An ordinance for the city of Dearborn Heights. Establishing procedures for the abatement of blight. Addressing causes of blight and blight factors. And establishing procedures for the enforcement. Of minimum housing standards, including notice of violation procedures for rooming houses. Be it ordained by the city council of the city of Dearborn Heights. With the charter of the city of Dearborn Heights, Michigan, part one, is hereby amended as follows. Article seven entitled blight. Section seven dash three oh two entitled cause of blight or blight fact. Hereby amended. Article nine entitled minimum housing standards. Division nine entitled rooming houses, section seven dash six hundred. Entitled notice of violation procedures is hereby, is hereby amended, be considered read for the first time, as outlined in eleven G.
Second motion made by councilwoman Breyer, seconded by councilman Constan. All of.
Discussion?
Yeah, I'll build up some discussion.
Council chair.
Yep.
Uh, Mr. Farina, so I, I asked you a question. So I just have a question. It says here the cost of abatement of the blight. Including a hundred and fifty dollars administration, administrative fee will be assessed against the owner. So who, it depends like on, uh, I mean, who assessed that? The building department or the ordinance?
The ordinance department, um, but we, we put in, um, I, I specifically left it the way it was. We can raise that because, uh. Uh, councilman Winslow had talked about, you guys had talked about putting more little sterner fines in this. This was reviewed by, um, uh.
No, I'm not talking about the fines. I'm talking about the abatement itself. If the city itself went and took care of the problem. So it depends like, how do we set the prices?
The ordinance, we follow what's here and you, and the prices are laid out for blight, for grass, for different things like that. We all, we already have the ordinance tickets.
I don't, I didn't see that. That's what I'm asking.
Oh, okay. Um, I, I, I apologize if I didn't attach it to it. I will attach it. But what the current ordinance violations are. Which cover the, uh, no CFOs, uh, or sorry, the blight. The grass, the, um, the garbage left, the rodents. That's all in the ordinance that's covered. And we have set price for them. Uh, but I will include a copy of it. I thought.
So I'm saying, what if, like, there's already a, a schedule of fine.
Right.
I'm not talking about fines. I'm talking about the job itself. Like, see if the city needs to go cut grass for somebody because they didn't take care of it. Depends on the law, like if the law, small, like this small, of a size, they're going to charge this much. Who, who, like, who, who sets those prices?
You have, you have, um, uh, RFP that went out for grass, companies that do the grass cutting for the city. We have to, have to do it. We then put it on, those prices are usually pretty high. We put it on the taxes. If they don't pay it, we attach it to the taxes. And then, and that's how we collect it.
I know, but at least. Can we, uh.
Um, because what happens is, you know, whatever the grass company charges us, we put on their taxes and there's different size lots and there's different prices.
No, I understand, but at least we, we need to have some sort of prices. I mean.
Um, they don't know the size of the lot or how bad it is.
That's what I'm thinking, at least. I mean, what if not just, not talking about grass, we're about like moving stuff.
Well, yeah, they, they have to assess.
They're going to hire some people, send them and they're going to.
Right, then we build, we put it on the taxes for the homeowners. Like if they have to clean out it and tear down a garage or anything like that, which they've had to do. Gets a tax, uh, attached to their, um, as a lien. Uh, if they don't remedy that situation. And if they default on it, that, uh, we then post it. We do, uh, three, um. Three notices, we post it on the property. If they don't come in within thirty days, it's then sent over to the controller's office. Where it's put on the list and then it's, if they don't come in at that point, it's attached to the taxes through the treasury.
Any more discussion from council members? Do you guys need to see the stuff, uh, Mr. Farina is talking about before we go on this?
Council portam.
Yes, sir.
What I did is I, I put, um, I put red and black to show the changes, um, in the first order, the first time I sent this out in October. Um, of two thousand twenty four, I've made the change. I made this all black, but I can go back to getting you the red and black.
Please.
So you can just verify your changes. You might have.
All the other stuff that we're talking about, if you don't mind.
I will redo it for you. That's.
Okay, uh, councilwoman, uh, would you like to, uh.
Refer it back.
Refer it back to administration, okay?
Yeah.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by councilwoman Menalowski Maxwell. Uh, you have more?
No, I mean, does this require a charter amendment?
We're not amending the charter. I apologize. It's just the ordinance, adding to the ordinance. We're, we're not amending the charter.
Okay, that's what it says in the backup.
It, it, it was a quite likely a mistake, but however, I would, your permission, council. Chair and council, council chair pro tempore. I will put it red and black so you can see. The changes again. I sent it in October, but I'll.
Please, we hold the backup, Mr. Farina.
Yeah, that's what I thought would be helpful.
Council chair, so we are, we're tabling this eleven G. We've got finished the vote. Finished the thing. Any more discussion? Let's take it to all, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Yeah, we did already.
Council chair.
It's okay.
Yeah.
You're going to refer back to.
Well, yeah, councilman, council, councilwoman Breyer. Amended, and I have a second by councilwoman.
We were wondering, because once we do pass it, we need a black and white version from Unicode. So we were going to wonder, but we'll address that later.
Correct.
Okay, once it comes back.
All right, so we're referring back to the administration. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Council chair.
You want to speak over here?
Okay, we're moving to eleven H.
I got it. Okay, go ahead.
First reading of proposed ordinance H twenty five oh nine amendment to nuisance, amatement ordinance. Nu-.
Nuisance.
Nuisance. Yeah. Uh, do I have a motion?
Council chair. Councilman or Constan?
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council. Move that proposed ordinance H dash twenty five oh nine in ordinance for the. City of Dearborn Heights establishing procedures for nuisance abatement. Providing for definitions of nuisances. Prohibitions, enforcement mechanisms, and the issuance of notices to abate. Be it ordained by the city council of the city of Dearborn Heights. At the charter of the city of Dearborn Heights. Uh, Michigan, part one. Section twelve. Entitled special abatement is hereby amended as follows. Section twelve point one entitled hazards and new, nuisances is hereby amended by adding to it. And by adding under chap- chapter twelve. The following three sections to be designated as sections. Twelve point one five entitled prohibited nuisance, nuisances. Section twelve point six entitled repeat offenders. And section twelve point seventeen entitled enforcement. Be considered read for the first time as outlined in eleven H.
Second.
Do we have a motion by councilman Constan, seconded by, um, councilwoman Nancy Breyer? Any discussion?
Counsel. Chair.
Please go.
Uh, this is a charter amendment. This has to go to vote.
I, I apologize if this is, I should have said, uh, ordinance.
Okay, well, then we need to refer this back because it says charter and I don't want to be.
I'll, I'll take that language out. I apologize.
But let's just refer eleven H back to the administration.
Right.
All right.
Uh, councilman Constan, would you like to amend your motion?
Well, we can make the motion that the ordinance of the city of Dearborn Heights. Instead of the word charter.
Let's refer this back to administration. Let's get it done right.
Referring it back.
Aye. I mean, this is, you know.
Agree.
All right. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. The ayes have it, motion carries. Next up, business license renewal for Irwin's Auto Sales.
Council chair.
Councilman Saab.
I'm with the Dearborn Heights City Council. I approve the business license renewal for Er- Er- Ernie's.
Irwin.
Irwin. Auto Sales Inc., uh, two, three, seven, zero, six Van Born is outlined as thirteen.
Second, second. Councilman Saab, seconded by councilman Ahmad.
She was at Irwin's or Irwin's? Irwin's.
Irwin's, guys, Irwin's.
I was right.
Yeah, she said Erwines. It's not, it's Irwin's.
Irwin's.
All right, motion made by councilman. Any discussion?
Council chair.
Yes, sir. Inspector.
I went by there and, um. I go by there quite a bit and I, 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 there has to be some kind of ordinance violations, um. I bought a car from them before, but, um. That's beside the point, um.
How was the car? Was it a good car?
Yeah, I had it for a long time. This is like. Fifteen years ago. But, um. They, they parked their cars on the approach. Um, they, they have, uh, they stack their cars in their parking lot. Nothing against it, but they, they, they stack them where they can't fit another car in there. And I believe that's an ordinance violation. The, the building itself is maintained. Uh, fair, fairly well. Um, it's, it's, it's not the cleanest it could be, but it's, it's not terrible. But I was just wondering if they've had any violations as far as the amount of cars they have in there and.
My father's office was right next door to that and amongst other problems, the problem is, they ever have a fire or anything? The, the cars are stacked probably ten deep. That's number one. And number two. They, they've had many, many ordinance violations. Um. But, you know, we're, we're renewing their business license.
I, I'm, I'm all for tabling this until we can hear back from our, uh, our ordinance officer. We're tabling them a lot tonight. Might as well just keep it real.
Well, if there's a question, it's the right thing to do.
I agree. All right, I mean, would you like to, uh, amend your motion, councilman, stop the tables?
I'll, I'm under tables.
All right.
Right, a second.
You're the inspector. Keep an eye on this one for us, huh?
Yep, oh, I thought I would.
Good job. Thank you, councilman Wansel for that. Thank you, councilman Constan for your comments. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor. We say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Motion table.
And we let, the council chair, can we let the ordinance director know?
Yeah, well, I, I have, I'm sure he will follow up with them tomorrow. Thank you. Yeah, Ford Lanes Inc.
Council chair.
Everybody wants this.
I'm with the Dearborn Heights City Council. I approve the business license renewal of a Ford Lanes Inc. At twenty three, one hundred Van Born is outlined in thirteen B.
Second.
Motion made by councilman Saab, seconded by. Councilwoman Breyer. Councilwoman Breyer. Uh, any discussion?
Council chair.
Yep.
I'd like to hear from councilman Wansel.
Oh, yeah.
When someone visited our site.
I did. I, I visited several times and when I seen this up there, I went back through there a few days ago and, uh. Asked to see the kitchen and kitchen was really, really neat and clean. The floor was clean. The restrooms are clean. Uh, the only, the only problem I had was I think their lanes are defective because last time I bowled there, I bowled like a ninety nine.
I don't know. I mean, we got, we got a resident here that says absolutely not. He, well, I'm sure he goes, uh.
Council chair.
Yeah, yeah, we did some research.
Can we refer this back to that college skills there?
But everything's clean there. It's, it's a really clean establishment. The parking lots maintain immaculately, uh. I mean, it, it's all updated. Everything's updated really, really there.
Do you want to, do you want to table until you get a three hundred?
I know. I could rig, rig it so I get it.
I'm having too much fun. I'm getting worried. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. The ayes have it, motion carries. Business license applications, Revive Golf Management LLC, DVA, Warren Valley Golf.
Council chair. I'm with Dearborn Heights City Council. I approve the business license application for Revive Golf Management LLC, doing business as. Warren Valley Golf Course at twenty six, one forty Warren Avenue is outlined in thirteen B.
Second.
Made by councilman Saab, seconded by councilman Constan. Sorry, councilman.
That's all right.
Councilman Con, uh, Wansel, were you able to look at this?
Yeah, he, um, I've been there several times and I, I was there earlier this year too and, uh. The, uh, the way that they approach, uh, golfing is state of the art. You know, they've got.
Did you see the, you see this, did you see the plane view of the golf course?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Fluttered?
Yeah, the, 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 the flood. Yeah.
Hold on, I get to, uh.
Yeah, you know, they have the, uh, the tracking devices on all the golf carts, you know, where the holes are. You don't get lost, uh. The golf course is maintained, you know, you can't, I don't think you can maintain any better. You know, for what they've got there, they're doing a fantastic job. You know, Jason Purcell, he's. He's very passionate about the course and the designer. And, uh, I mean, it floods, right? And they, they just flooded. I think, I don't know if they're open yet, um, but he said it'd be a few days. And, uh, but you know what? It's, it's been there for a hundred years. It's flooded for a hundred years. So, you know, I mean, you can't complain about it. I mean, it's, it's, it is what it is. You're not going to stop it.
It's a valley made to flood, guys. Yes. Councilman Wansel, my question is, how good are your, uh, golf?
I'm terrible golfer. So last time I. Well, he drives the cart. Last time I went golf, wasn't there, but the last time I, I was golfing, I had like a perfect game going, but I made my last putt and it hit the windmill thing was going around.
So we're going to deny after that?
You need a good teacher, recommend council chair by doing.
Yeah, I'm your guide.
I still, I still have a pump in my head. He asked me for the opinion and I had to go.
That was a true outing.
Yeah. He said, you're outing. Yeah. And and it's sitting to my left. You're right. No, it's to my left, I took the I took the putt back and he got slapped in the head and he fell to the ground. He said, what are you doing? No.
Any discussion on this? All in favor, please state aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, next up, guys, council members. I'm gonna start Councilman Wonsol first, okay? We're gonna whip right through this. Comments from council members? Councilman Wonsol first.
All right, uh, this weekend, April twelfth, at Annapolis High School, they have a breakfast with the bunny. And I'm not sure the time, I'm sure you go on the website, you'll find it. Later that day, they have a craft show on April eight, on the same day, April twelfth. Also, on April twelfth, the city of Dearborn Heights is holding its uh annual Easter egg hunt. And that could be all, there's all kinds of activities on this, more than I've ever seen before. They're doing a great job with that. Congratulations. And um as far as the the traffic going on, you know, why can't we have the highest fines for track violations in the country? I mean, why can't we? We I mean, we find out who's ever got the highest, we double it or something. I mean, we should hit these people with a pocketbook, you know? That's one thing, I mean, you if kids find out, or even adults, I I live on a corner and there was an older guy just ran the stop sign. I mean, might have touched his face a little bit, I'd yell at him. He looks at me and I watch him, next intersection, he sees me, he runs that one. You know, I'm standing in the street and he keeps running, I'm just to show me up or maybe that's what he always does. But uh that's why, I mean, we should look into the fines and uh how fast we can implement these fines like instantly, you know? And um my hat goes off to the DPW, uh the Courier in Hanover Street, the flooding problem, we were there last week, you guys were all there. We all, you know, pitched in, helped out, and uh I went by there, the streets are clean. Good job, uh Director Dancy. And um this Saturday also, there's a lot of things going on. Uh, at eleven o'clock at the uh step post, we're doing a cleanup project along the fence line there, if anyone wants to volunteer for that. And uh two more things, real quickly, um I was I was asked about if someone could put beehives on the incinerator property where the posed retention basin is. I told him I'd find out, I don't know who I talked to about that, but someone wants to put beehives there. Uh, which is a you know, a good thing because they pollinate, help, you know, nature. And this Saturday also, Jamie's Kids is is partnering with the Fairlane Eagles of Dearborn Heights. And we're doing a telegraph cleanup project. The Eagles have had this property from Van Born Road to Michigan Avenue for a few years. And three times a year, they go out, they clean up, they they're supplied with vests and bags and you bag it up and the and the M doc comes out and picks the stuff up, but if anybody's interested in that, they can get ahold of me from Jamie's Kids, or they can meet at the Fairlane Eagles on Van Born Road, two zero seven three eight Van Born at eight thirty AM. It's it just take a couple hours. It's a really worthwhile project cleaning up our city. Thank you.
All right, I'll go now, or you know, go ahead, Councilman.
Thank you, Council Chair. Uh, so April is uh Arab American Heritage Month, uh so I would like to recognize all the Arab American that did so much for our country. I'd like to salute Council Chair and Councilman Sob uh for serving and all the Arab American staff in the city. Uh, Mr. Deeb, I can't, I don't know if I can uh name them all, but thank you so much for all you do. I salute you guys. And uh the following Sunday is Easter Sunday, so I'd like to wish a very happy Easter for everybody observing. Thank you, Council Chair.
Thank you. Uh, quickly, um I wanna first say that the breakfast with the bunny was something that, you know, um I I I've I've spoken with the uh ones that were helping put this together. I was actually able to make a nice donation uh to them. And they are working currently, I'm still looking for boxes of pancake mix. If anybody wants to be there, either donate, I was able to sign a contribution of two hundred dollars or to be able to donate some box.
I'll match two hundred.
Okay, I'll let her know. Uh, she's doing a phenomenal job. And then the step post, I also had the pleasure where they reached out to me and I only remember this because Councilman Wonsol just brought up, they had uh their event for opening night, or the the Tigers game was there, I was able to donate some uh hot dogs to them from Ashums. On Hasha Market, I actually donated all the hot dogs to them. And then the spring craft show, Justin Jacobs, a good friend of mine, uh also reached out to me and so I was able to contribute towards that. And they also need some more assistance, including the 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 classes uh of the graduated classes of twenty twenty-five for Westwood, I believe it's Robishaw, Crestwood and uh D seven are also looking for sponsors and donors. If anybody's able to assist them, please do. I want to recognize the robotics team at Crestwood High School. They just won the National Convention for Robotics. They are going to Texas. Congratulations to them. Uh, they are the only state in Michigan, it is here in Dearborn Heights. I'm sorry, the only school in Michigan. Uh, they are now going to the final round of the championship. Uh, and they will be doing in Crestwood, that was also, so this is a very expensive wait for me. Uh, because I was able to uh make a contribution and then they're asking people from Dearborn Heights to fly out to Houston to support them uh for their event.
We going?
Um, I I I I have made a very generous contribution to them, uh which you should match on that one.
No.
Um, but uh in reality is uh they want people there, they want people to show up. I don't know if I can afford to do both, but if anybody can still support them, please do. Reach out to all these uh individuals for the breakfast with the bunny, step post which still needs assistance, uh the spring craft that's taking place, and then also the robotics team. These are, these are, this is our backbone, this is our future. So if we wanna invest in our future, we need to start with investing in our children. Um, and then also, I wanna just really talk a little bit about the Airbnb incident that happened um on Plainfield. Short-term rental. Around the block from my home. Um, and there were close to, from the photos that I saw, fifty people in a thousand square foot home, fifty, five zero. How is that even possible? And it was cold. Um, you know, they're between outside and inside and 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 mind you, we're talking residential. But like this short-term rental issue is really affecting our neighborhoods and it's happening on a Saturday night in the heart of Dearborn Heights. This never happened. It's never happened before. I mean, kids are always gonna be kids, but to be able to rent out a home and to stuff a bunch of people in there, we don't know if there was drugs being done, we don't know if there was underage drinkers. This isn't fair. This isn't fair to the neighbors, this isn't fair to the parents. We gotta start enforcing this. I don't know how, but we need to figure this out. So I I know that Gary is sending over that resolution for the separating to the zoning or the planning, I believe. And then it's gonna come back to the council for final approval, but we really need to hit them in the pockets. And then lastly, weather's gonna start be breaking. It's gonna be, you know, uh Easter Sunday is gonna be the following week. Let's let's all come together and and remind our friends, families and neighbors and children, please don't speak. Please don't. I can tell you right now, kind of like Councilman, uh Wonsol was talking, how he looks at his neighbor, the guy that was flying through the stop sign. Should see how I how I talk to them. I mean, I'm not the nicest guy when they're speeding because my son's running his bike now on the street. My dog is sometimes gets loose and if he goes running, here I am chasing it. Can you imagine the car that's going thirty, forty, fifty miles per hour? I mean, we need to do better.
Council Chair.
Yes, I'm sorry, I don't mean to, but I mean, he he did mention the short-term rental again, but the thing is, like we said, like there there's no ordinance for it, so it's it's illegal to be in the city. So I think the Orders Department needs to start working on it, or maybe the Building Department and send all these uh units letters saying, you know, they're gonna start finding them. So they don't, they don't need to wait on the ordinance. They need to start acting right now. So I don't know if you wanna have maybe George send an email to the director or you wanna contact the director?
I can send an email in the morning.
In the police department. I think it's ordinance for.
Well, I'm I'm all set here. Who's next?
I am.
Go ahead.
A few things. First of all, I wanna wish everybody, you know, like Councilman Ahmad said, it's Arab American Heritage Month. Thank you for everybody that serves, works and moves our communities forward. Uh, a few things I wanna talk about the flood. You know, after the flood, um Council, Council Chair Moby Doon, Atana Madam myself, we reached out uh to Wayne County to get supplies as fast as we can, and the only way we could get them was to personally drive out there, load them up in our trucks and deliver them to the fire department.
And at the Ian Center.
And the Ian Center, but I uh and that was great. And I'm and I'm sure a lot of people on Facebook reached out to me and messaged me if it was available and they went and got some stuff and everything. But I wanna put a few things out there that that happened over the few weeks. They they really upset me. We didn't do this for recognition. We didn't put photos out there of us own homes or taking pictures of people's homes and all that. We didn't. We put that we were at the fire station, everything. There was a resident on Facebook that called us three Arab Americans, a bunch of roaches, that what we're doing with this stuff. She thought it was okay. Then she wants to question what we do for a living, how we spend, just questions that not the average senior in Dearborn Heights question and say, but her dry apology means absolutely nothing to me. Um, and I say it how it is with her racial comments, and she was laughing about it really. And there were some people trying to defend her and justify her. And it's wrong. Their words is actually a racial word for Arab Americans. And what we did, we did it in our own time. City wasn't paying us our own cost, our own vehicles. Nobody helped us out from the city. Gave it to residents. All we got is like, you guys can take your bucket and add them with the rest of the buckets. That's what we got. Well, here, the administration got praised for the hard hard work they did. And uh we didn't see nothing. The only thing I seen was the mayor sat in front row seat at a Tigers game.
At noon.
At noon, enjoying a Tigers game while half of the city, while the corner of the city is still flooded. But again, we were called roaches for helping our residents. And this person divides the city, says, well, we're part of forty-one A five, you guys are part of forty-one two seven. No, this is Dearborn Heights. I don't care. Stop dividing us. I don't care what area you live in, it affects all of us. My s- my neighborhood, my streets, everything were flooded too. You're not the only person in Dearborn Heights flooded. Northside people had four feet of water um off of Warren, and there'd be literally four feet of waters. I didn't see them on council, going out there, just going after the council people, you know? I helped out a few residents financially on my own, including one of them was on oxygen. Didn't see me going out there, pointing their name, their home, what's going on with their home, anything on Facebook. You do that out of the goodness of your heart. You don't do it for publicity or likes. And people need to realize sometimes that Facebook is not a, not an official department of the city. No, but it is what it is on that. Second of all, please, man, clean in front of your homes. I know a lot of people have basins in front of their houses, just clean the lids. Clean them. It makes a difference. Clean them. Um, also, campaigning is not allowed in city facilities. You cannot go to senior centers, you could, this was male. You cannot take people to senior centers, you cannot bring people to senior centers for campaigning.
Not an electric fish, you cannot be at the Ian.
You cannot be at the Ian Center, at the Berwin Center and nowhere else. You 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 cannot.
I talked to Jesse.
I don't, well, you cannot. It's actually illegal.
You went last.
I I wasn't campaigning.
Neither was you.
That was campaigning. And you gotta be over fifty, over or less. And but anyway, long story short, just to put that out there to any candidate running.
I was actually, you never went through a new campaign?
No, I went there once.
Yes, you did.
I went there before the campaign season started, while you of us, chair volleyball, one time.
Exactly.
It was before the campaign started. And then uh last speeding, stall your kids at home. You guys are giving everybody these fast cars, slow down, especially the neighborhood summers get, summers around the corner, slow down. That's it.
Thank you. Any other council members?
Council Chair.
Councilman uh.
All right.
Councilwoman Breyer, is that announcement or are you speaking?
I've got both. I've got a comment first.
The two comment, this is uh announcement. Do comments first.
That's what I'm gonna do.
Okay.
All right, uh Mr. Deeb and I met over at um Inster Road in Annapolis area, and we viewed the property and it's more than three hundred foot frontage for a possible farmer's market. Over six hundred foot frontage that's level with few trees. There's additional land there. It would be ideal, quite deep.
Have you reached out to Councilman Wonsol maybe?
I intend to, and I was gonna ask if anybody wanted to help me get something going on that.
Councilman Wonsol.
Yeah, yeah.
All right.
Definitely.
That that was my comment.
And I and I'd love to help you too.
Oh, sounds good.
I can reach out to my buddy Mopass, helps run uh the the farmer's market in Dearborn. And they they do it every year in that one lot. I'm gonna actually, I'm gonna have him reach out to you.
Sounds good.
Yeah, and he'll call all the individuals that set up. The least they don't do it in Dearborn, they they can do it on the south.
Get our vendors, yeah, yeah. All right.
We got the wheels turning on that already.
With Mopass?
No, with the 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 farmer's market.
Do you have a location?
We have a couple places, yeah, we got a couple, we're looking into. City, one's one's a city-owned property. And uh another one's Tiffa owned. So we got a couple, we're looking at a couple areas.
Uh, I'd love to be informed.
Yeah, sure, we get, we nail down, we we got a couple residents that are really well-informed and have a lot of connections in that in that area, so we nail something down. When we get the preliminary down, we'll let let you know for sure.
Thank you. Are you also comments here?
On comments, yes.
Okay, uh, Councilman Constant.
Thank you, Council Chair. I'm just reading here, and thank you, Councilman Ahmad. I wasn't aware that April was uh National Arab American Heritage Month. Is that it? April was chosen because the beginning of spring symbolizing hope, growth and new beginnings. I know yesterday, uh Benjamin Netanyahu was at the White House. Uh, they're again discussing this ridiculous idea that uh Israel is gonna turn over the Gaza Strip to the US, and Gaza was a resort. It was a uh developed, beautiful area. Um, again, just ask everyone to speak out to their elected officials and and uh stop the terrible suffering of the um Arab American people in the Middle East and elsewhere. And uh join with uh Councilman, uh Council Chair Moby Doon, reminding everyone to slow down and wish everyone a happy uh Holy Week and a happy Easter for those who celebrate. Thank you.
Also, I forgot to say a peace shirt, everybody. Any more comments from council members? I guess we're going.
Announcement?
To a public.
No, announcements.
Announcement.
Okay, Council Chair or Council family?
Go ahead, Councilman. Do you, do you have?
Go ahead, Nancy.
I I just wanted to make you aware that we will be having our E Course Creek meeting on the fourth uh Wednesday, which would be the twenty-third of this month, but on the twenty-fourth, our VPW Director John Dancy has agreed to be our speaker at seven PM, and both events are at three three, three five South Beach Daily, and everybody is welcome.
Thank you, Councilwoman, Director.
Uh, so hello, Council Chair and Mayor. Just wanna talk about a couple of items. First off, this Thursday uh from ten to eight, this Friday from ten to four, and Saturday from ten to four, the Friends of the Library will be having their book sale at Carolyn Candy Library. Uh, we've had lots of materials stored up over the past few months. Uh, we'll also be selling some access library furniture in stock, so come on out. Uh, also this spring, we've started a seed program uh for the first year. Uh, each year, seed libraries throughout the state come together to promote growing, saving and sharing seeds. Uh, this year's seed for distribution is the Little Finger Baby Carrot. Uh, they reach their full size of three to four inches in just sixty-five days. Uh, so come on out and get some seeds. Um, we've been giving away hundreds of them, so kinda popular to try this one, I guess. Uh, for Mother's Day, we have a couple of craft activities. Wednesday, May seventh, at Carolyn Candy Library, from four to five PM, we will be making shadow boxes for moms uh filled with memories that you bring to the craft. Uh, and Thursday, May eighth, from three thirty to four thirty, at John F. Kennedy Junior Library, uh we'll be giving our Mother's Day watercolor card. Uh, come in, uh make a card for mom. Uh, please register online at dhlibrary.org. Um, and finally, I wanted to thank uh Dancy Breyer for mentioning the passing of one of our full-time staff uh due to a medical emergency at the last meeting. Uh, Robert Putler had been serving the Dearborn Heights Library for the past twenty years. He was known for his puppet shows, his programs and his work with animals. He was a steady presence at our library and will be missed by our staff, our patrons and his friends and family. Uh, we will be having memorial service for him and other employees who have passed uh while working for the city over the years uh in mid-May. Uh, if I may, I would like to request a moment of silence on his behalf and all those who have passed uh in the city's service. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, thanks for your time, uh and see you at the library.
Thank you, Director.
Thank you.
Uh, Madam Clerk, can you unmute Madam Treasurer? I think she has an announcement. Thank you. Um, Councilwoman Breyer also has an announcement.
I did.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was. Forgive me.
No problem.
Hello, good evening, everyone, Honorable Counsel. Um, I just wanna go back to just give you some historical perspective, some information that I think is important to that Wayne County invoice that was before you, for that uh three point seven million, I believe, was the invoice. I want you to know that back in twenty-one, twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two, that at the time, um he was the Budget and Compliance Director, Hassan Jamal and myself, we actually worked on that together and had made the discovery of the over-captured Wayne County CSO. At that time, it was approximately one point six million, if I recall, but I I have all the email correspondences that I saved. But what I think is really important is that we actually, or I have, the emails from Mr. John Sledz, that's S L E D Z, uh with Wayne County that acknowledged that that money is due to the city. At that time, when I alerted, um that would have been the administration to the mayor's office, I was told it was gonna be handled. That's been several years, so I don't need a response. I will get that forwarded to all of you tomorrow, as well as the city attorney and the uh administration again, because I really feel that should be applied towards that invoice. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Treasurer. Madam Clerk?
Real quick, Lindsay, City Clerk, just a reminder to those turning in packets for local uh office, they are due by four o'clock on April twenty-second. You do have to call and make an appointment, seven nine one three four three three. Don't wait till the last minute because we do have to check each and every signature, and if you don't have enough, then we can't put you on the on the ballot. Okay, um. April twenty-fifth by four o'clock is the written withdrawal request for partisan and nonpartisan candidates are due, so if anybody that does file and wants to withdraw, they have until April twenty-fifth at four o'clock to do that. Um, I do wanna mention um the the ghost bike that will be the ceremony for that tomorrow. I did have the opportunity, I can't make it tomorrow, so I've been in contact with Joey's mom, Katie, and I met her up there on, I think it was Sunday.
Saturday, I believe you went.
Did I go Saturday? No, it was this weekend, okay, Saturday, and my heart goes out to anyone that has lost a child, especially in that manner. Um we stayed there for two hours and just reminisced about Joey, and it was enlightening, you know, just just.
God bless you, Madam Treasurer.
You know, and I do wanna say, the traffic there, one in five cars stopped at the light or at the at the stop sign. So, um
You know.
Stop at, follow the rules, you know, so I think she called you and told you about the one license plate too, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so, thank you.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Okay.
Director Z.
Yes.
So. By the way, Derek Lighters, I'm sorry that you've come into the like the yaskle, please forgive me.
Well, here's how it goes. Um, you probably all got in your mailbox, so you're all invited, of course, to the the Great Egg Hunt. It's one of the first um events that uh I'm gonna call it the new recreation department is putting together. Uh, incredible events for all the kids. This is just the beginning. Um, I can tell you, I I'm working on Christmas at this point already. That's how developed everything is, Christmas, Halloween, all those things that the children in this city will see incredible things. And when we talk about Canfield Center, uh it was a little bit disheartening the way people described it. Some people look at Canfield as what it is, but I look at things at what it can be. Canfield Center is gonna become our event center. All of our major events will occur there. And uh and I guess that all starts with kind of, I'm gonna pull a rabbit out of my hat to make that happen, because we have some pretty tight budgets here. But uh Canfield will be hosting all of our children's events, um and they're gonna be pretty, pretty amazing. Cities, no city will have anything like we will have.
I like I like this guy already.
And but what all brings it all together, I can say this, several council meetings ago, uh uh Council Chair Bedu, you you kinda summed it up. You said Dearborn Heights used to always be thought of as the best place to live. And then you said, and what happened? Well, I remember that Dearborn Heights. And I can tell you that I'm here to make your dream come true, and I will. If anyone can do it, I can do it, and we're working very hard. We're we're working against everything we're doing in the future. We're upgrading, you know, the young center, we're all over the place, we're looking at parks, I I'm virtually everywhere. Um but in a couple of years, you're probably gonna look at the city and look at those parks, and you're gonna say, wow, it's all happening. It's all coming together and uh I'm working, obviously, with with uh DPW and and uh the uh city engineer, amazing things are planned for the city. Um and we're we're moving fast. Right now, I'm working on backlog, kinda cleaning up some some old business that really takes a lot of our time, but at the same time, we're moving forward with all these great events. So just want you to know, we're working on it every day and you're gonna be seeing it. And uh come by Sunday and you'll see what we can do with the very little uh out of Canfield, but it's gonna be a good time for everybody.
Council Chair?
Director, thank you for all the stuff and all the planning, uh thank you for all you do, but the previous director, before she left, we discussed stuff with her that she was gonna be planning some stuff for the Eid, for other holidays. I noticed, I know there's another Eid coming up in June, but probably that's too short of a notice. Can we plan something for maybe next year?
For which event?
It's Eid al Fitr, like after Ramadan Eid, it's like the holiday.
Oh, okay. Uh yeah, we certainly can. We certainly can, yes. I mean, we we posted a lot of those, but that is part of the overall uh plan for uh Canfield Center, and you'll see it, and we can add that easily. Um and uh when we get into the study sections, sessions, maybe next week, I'll start to show you all those pieces and how they're all gonna come together. And I'll be able to take a little and make it look like we spent a fortune. So I mean, so you'll be able to see a a little snapshot of it, just give me a little support and and just watch what happens.
I'll send you an email, tell you exactly what they're called, and maybe you can do your own.
Okay. All right, certainly.
Director Z is uh former State Representative, Gino Paladore's brother-in-law. Betty Paladore's brother-in-law.
Councilman, Councilman Robert Conson knows everything about everybody.
He he invented ancestry dot com.
Thank you.
Council Chair? Don't forget, that's a voting location too.
Which one?
Cambridge.
Yeah. Yes. We have it blocked. Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, any other announcements? Seeing none?
Motion to adjourn?
No, I opened up to of the of the comments, seeing none. You went on Zoom, seeing none.
Motion to adjourn.
Everybody.
Uh uh motion by Councilman Ahmad, and by Councilman Sob, all in favor, please state aye. Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries.
Right.